Welcome to the Tuesday, April 22, 2025, regular meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. For detailed information on meeting procedures, please review the full printed meeting agenda provided. Manager Leonard, will you please call the roll?
Of course. Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt?
Here.
Commissioner Abrams?
Here.
Commissioner Dish?
Here.
Commissioner Mills?
Here.
Commissioner Wetherby?
Here.
Commissioner Adams?
Commissioner Norton?
Here.
We have a call.
Great, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Mills. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's saying none, the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 15, 2025, moved by Commissioner Hammerschmidt and then seconded by Commissioner Wetherby. Thank you. Any discussion of the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With that, we're going to go right into public comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on issues not listed as a public hearing. This evening, the commission will discuss Chapter Four of the draft for the comprehensive land use plan. We kindly ask that you focus your comprehensive plan comments on those specific sections. In the following weeks, as we get into goals, strategies, and future land use map, we will dedicate one session to each of those remaining chapters. The public will have the opportunity to make comments on those chapters as well. So we'll first hear from those present, then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star nine if on the phone or use Raise Hand Fisher in Zoom for phone access. Please call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name on Zoom, and you'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak, and please move to a quiet area and mute any background noise. And for all participants, please speak your name and address at the beginning of the comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mary Durfee, 1052 Olivia. As you know, I've been concerned about infrastructure and how it affects the ability to accommodate densification. And I notice in Chapter Four, it's specific to Strategies 12.1, and it lists coordinate and align infrastructure investment with land use and growth. And I really appreciate this being here, but I would like to see a little more detail. And I realize that this is more of an aspirational document. I've been listening, even if I'm not here, I listen to your entire meeting on Zoom every single week. So I have been listening carefully to your comments, and so I realize that this is somewhat aspirational. But I also realize that this aspirational document will lead the way for zoning changes and how that ultimately gets operationalized. And I would really plead with you to really consider how our infrastructure is able to adapt to the type of densification that's planned. We have lots of densification. I walked down Dewey yesterday. You know, I've just been walking various streets to see what apartments look like when they're intermixed with houses, and there's lots of that on Dewey. But it happened gradually over time, and I wonder how much pent-up demand there is in some of these neighborhoods where things could happen very rapidly. So I would ask you, please, to phase this gradually, so I don't have sewer water in my basement again, that we don't have stormwater problems. We've had endless stormwater problems. We used to have individuals who lived in various houses who took care of clearing out their stormwater drains every time there was predicted to be a big rain. Well, those are no rental units, and no one's coming out there to clean that out. And I realize the city has lots of neighborhoods that probably have more problems than ours. But who's going to be doing that in the future, and who's cleaning out those drains and making sure that we don't have water in our basements, particularly as you cover more of the land with non-porous surfaces? So I would please ask you to consider this in a very incremental and thoughtful way, which I know you will do. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Will Leaf, and I want to talk about this one section in Chapter Four, which is, I think, called flexibility and land use. And I think it'd be helpful to distinguish two different kinds of flexibility. One type of flexibility could be flexibility in use. You could allow, for example, in the transition district, both light industrial, commercial, and residential together. And I think this flexibility is great. It allows people to walk from their homes to nearby businesses. It doesn't try to anticipate what will be the dominant land use 10 years from now, which, as we know, can be very hard. So I'm all for that, and I think it's great that that's in the plan. There's also a different type of flexibility, which would be flexibility in nuisance standard. And this is one that hasn't been talked about very much, but it is referenced in the plan. I believe that section says that in this proposed flex district, there would be flexibility prioritized to minimize complaints within this district. And I believe the intention of this district is to attract industrial employment uses along with circular economy uses, like recycling centers and storage for thrift shops, is what it says in the plan. So I think some of these circular economy uses could be great, and you can contain recycling centers in a responsible way. But if you Google Ruby Recycling or some of these other recycling centers in Wayne County that are often, could also be called scrap metal places, they are often very noxious and have environmental harms. So I think that to say that South Industrial and Research Park and these areas need to attract more industrial employment, and we should consider loosening our nuisance standards to attract that employment, is not necessary or wise. So I suggest focusing on this flexibility and use concept, but not in these nuisance standards or performance standards. And what that means in practice, I think, is dropping this idea of the flex district and instead zoning those areas transition. And I know this body already rejected a very similar employment district, but it'd be nice to reject it again. Because I think while it does allow housing in theory, in practice, the plan calls for a separate district, and the rationale for the district says that housing will be restricted in it. And I think that's a big missed opportunity, because these are the areas where developers are likely to build a lot of housing, and it might be much less controversial than in some other parts of the city. So, oh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Welcome.
Hi, my name's Ben Murvac from 1547 Granger. I was born and raised in Ann Arbor, and I'm an infrequent visitor to City Hall and actually a first-time speaker at anything like this. But I thought this was important enough to come out for. So as a new homeowner, I have kind of two points I wanted to bring up. One, kind of general comments on engagement, and then a few things about residential zoning introduced in Chapter Four. So as far as engagement goes, I think I'm reasonably well-informed. But without a neighbor's email, I would never have known anything about the existence of the comprehensive plan or this process of making improvements to it. This suggests to me that there may not have been enough engagement thus far with the community. If you want to engage with people more, and I think you should, consider making an effort to meet people where they're at rather than having them come to you. Three meetings at libraries is a good start, but I don't think it's sufficient. People may be unaware, unavailable, or unable to come to you. You could consider spreading the word through things like school newsletters, holding meetings at schools, brief one-on-one interactions at cafes, providing people with a flyer, or engaging online at many existing platforms out there. More specific to residential zoning in Chapter Four, I think the one-size-fits-all plan works poorly for clothing, so why should it work for city planning? There's language in the policy that's vague and at times contradictory. Some specific examples, page 52, "We should maintain low-rise development that's not a drastic change in scale from what exists in neighborhoods now." But then we go on to advocate for four-story apartment buildings, which, in my opinion, is the definition of a drastic change in scale. We also talk about medium-density housing, like duplexes, triplexes, fitting in well in existing neighborhoods and providing a gentle amount of density. But while harmonizing small-to-medium-scale housing units would be reasonable, in my opinion, under a one-size-fits-all policy, there's limited control over what gets designed or built in a space, and developers could very easily demolish a single-family home and build a four-story concrete cube on every available inch of space. Developments like that could dwarf nearby homes, block the light in backyard gardens, or rooftop solar panels, limit citizens' ability to quietly enjoy our property, and overall negatively impact our neighborhoods. So I encourage you not to completely dismantle the current system, but consider keeping at least two residential zones that cater to our city's complex needs, and more precisely define what can be built where, thereby preventing massive shifts in scale and these four-story apartments from dominating our beautiful neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Marissa McConnell, and I'm a homeowner in Lower Burns Park, where I live with my husband and my one-year-old. I just wanted to briefly voice my support for the comprehensive plan. This is also my first time attending one of these meetings, and I, like many other Ann Arbor residents, am a working parent. There are many working families in our neighborhood and throughout the city who support the comprehensive plan but simply don't have the flexibility or the time to attend these meetings. I just wanted to emphasize, as we all know here, we are facing a housing crisis here in Ann Arbor. Young families, students, and longtime residents are all being priced out. My home, I bought it like three years ago, and it's already gone up, like $150,000 in value. That's just insane to me. And, you know, the fact is, we cannot address affordability without allowing more housing to be built. Any suggestion otherwise is just not, does not line up with the facts here. So incremental upzoning such as that is being suggested by this comprehensive plan does not mean that there will be sudden large-scale development. It means that there's just going to be more flexibility, more options, and a gradual change. Denser neighborhoods can still be beautiful, livable, and environmentally responsible. I just feel like I need to say that because there's a lot of misinformation being shared on a lift serve in the neighborhood that I live in, talking about fear-mongering, for lack of a better word, around what will happen if the comprehensive plan moves forward and these changes that we're wanting to make are implemented. Lastly, I just wanted to say that this is a generational decision. Doing nothing right now is not a neutral thing. It only worsens the problem. And I urge the commission to move forward with upzoning and help make Ann Arbor a place for more people to call home. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marsha Polenbergrenzi. I live on South First Street. As you know, South First Street, Ashley, have had the mix of the old houses that then got knocked down in places, and you have these awful brick buildings. Well, they're, you know, cinder block instead. What I'm pleading for is integrity of neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are really important. So that's my first statement. My second is the focus should be on the downtown. Our downtown is lamentable. When I moved here in 1986, you could buy clothing downstairs, downtown, you could buy, you could go to the Five and Dimes store. The city services were there. Right now, they're not. So the idea of bringing more people into the poor doesn't solve the basic problem of rents that are too high for stores. I used to be part of an art gallery. We couldn't afford the rent, so we dissolved. I mean, the things that made Ann Arbor quirky and wonderful are disappearing, have disappeared. And I think that the integrity of the downtown needs to be worked on. There are too many empty storefronts right now, and the question is why? And when we talk about building up and how the ground floor will be more storefronts, we can't fill the storefronts that are there because the rents are too high. So I think there are a lot of concerns that I have. I want Ann Arbor to be a fun place with activities that welcome everyone. I think that putting four-story buildings next to two-story homes is a disaster for the neighborhood that is involved. I have been told that because I live in a historic district, we're protected, but what about everyone else? So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donna Babcock. I'm at 1890 Upland Drive. I'm asking that you please pause the comprehensive land use plan. This is a municipal document that's being paid for by Ann Arbor taxpayers, and you've hired an experienced consultant that's providing a structure, a very nice graphic structure of hierarchy of dominant, subdominant, and subordinate. The text, though, seems to not be without a slant or bias. As you have a chance, if we look at Interface's portfolio, we can see plans that have been done for other cities, and we can see them, they're delivering up fact-based information that we can check on, and we're not seeing that in Ann Arbor's plan. Also, and I'm not focusing on four, but I'm making comments that are more general, and I had to bring my own graphics with me. This is, I printed out the plan and went through it, and I just want to say, so I'm an artist. I come from a family of artists. I'm very, this is really terrible. This is a serious municipal document. This deserves a serious cover. It's just a simple, you have it, the City of Ann Arbor Comprehensive Plan and the date, and the city seal. That's all it needs. Ann Arbor for All is the mayor's campaign slogan. It has no business. It's propaganda. It's on every single page of the 109 pages of this document. That's propaganda. And maybe worse, if not worse. These cartoonish things, this is condescending and childish. We're a much better educated city. We don't need that. So if all those cartoons could be removed, it's just childish. And I'm not going to get into the chapters, except I want to say, here, your council resolutions, that'll be filled in when the plan nears completion, your acknowledgements. I'm a little bit concerned about these acknowledgements. You say, "Community members, thank you to all the community members who participated in the comprehensive plan process. Your input, ideas, continued engagement have been invaluable in shaping a shared vision for the future of Ann Arbor." Except we're all aware that several of these people don't live in Ann Arbor. They're not Ann Arbor taxpayers, so it's not a shared vision. And so I believe that anyone who took part in this process, who was not a citizen or taxpayer in Ann Arbor, should have an asterisk by their name. And anyone who will eventually benefit from any zoning changes needs a double asterisk. Okay? And then I want to talk about this. Okay. This is a visual document, too. Who in heaven's name picked maybe the most unattractive photo I've ever seen of Ann Arbor? This looks like Gotham. Six.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Stalberg, head of it 1202 Traver Street, right in the heart of Lower Town. I'd like to talk about reconciling some of the various things that have been said. But I want to start with something that's spread throughout the plan, the draft plan, including Chapter Four. When the city first was deciding who to pick for their consultant, they formed a committee. One person from each ward was on that committee, plus a mayor's pick. Those people chose to have a survey, a statistically valid survey. They said that they wanted that. They asked for that. The city refused to do that. Please remove almost all of what you have in the "we have heard" sections, because the survey that you're basing the data in there is not a valid, statistically valid survey. You've got a small number of people. The way the comments were brought in is not valid to put that in a comprehensive plan as data, something that might say 59%, 59% what, not of a statistically valid survey. City Council passed a resolution, eight to three. You decided as a body not to take that up. One of the things that that resolution said was, at this point in time in the process, you can have more details or less details. Somehow, this has morphed into the talking points in the ether. All the details come later. Last night, Commissioner and Councilmember Dish said, when talking about some specific items in that resolution, including half blocks, full blocks, step backs, parcel assemblies, quote, "None of those will be figured out until the zoning." No, it is totally appropriate to have some of the details now or less of the details now. I'm in the camp that looks for a lot more details now. The zoning code is based on the comprehensive plan. They are different documents, but they are inseparable. The zoning code must be based on the comprehensive plan. In terms of increased affordability, Commissioner and Councilmember Dish said, simply by adding supply, the units will come in at market rate and will slow the rate of rental increase. If we deregulate and allow the market to decide where the units are coming from, it seems pretty close to we're going to have high-end units, and we got a little bit in the affordable housing fund. We really are missing the middle. We might have missing-middle housing types in the comprehensive plan, but we will not have missing-middle pricing. Slowing the rate of growth means a $2,100 studio apartment might be only $250 the next year instead of $2,200. A million-dollar condo might be only $1,500 the next year instead of 1.1 billion. The slowing the rate of growth in the high-end housing market does not help the middle. Those segments must be directly addressed. They are not being addressed. Councilmember Briggs last night said there's confusion in the community about what is the comprehensive plan and what is zoning. Well, the mayor- Well, the mayor's got it wrong. So yes, it is confusing. Look at his Facebook page. He's got it wrong. Let's admit that this is confusing and be a little easier on the people who don't understand this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ralph McKee, and I'm a bit behind on this process. I just started reading your product today. So excuse me for that. I'm not going to focus on Chapter Four. I'm going to start at the beginning. The, I have a couple of specific points and then a couple of general points. Let's start with the specific ones. There are a number of statements in just the part that I skimmed through a half an hour ago that's talking about building more housing will contribute to affordable housing by contributing to the Affordable Housing Fund. I've seen that statement. I've heard that statement hundreds of times, and it really needs to be put in context. One unit of new housing, the contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund is, would take 2,000 years to build one unit. It's minuscule, .0005. So if you have a 200-unit housing, a big development, that's going to take 10 years, a decade, to produce one unit out of the, into the, out of the taxes that that unit pays into the Affordable Housing Fund. That context needs to be provided, because that statement otherwise is severely disingenuous, major league disingenuous. The next point, the, there's a cartoon or, you know, I guess I'd call it that, a strip, comic strip, on small business needs environment for, to grow. I agree with that. And TC-1 did the opposite of that, made every, every single business on those strips vulnerable to being displaced. You're deciding no innovation district. Well, that's strike two. No employee district, that's strike three. If you're talking about making an environment for, for small businesses to grow, the things that you're doing are the opposite. And the other thing, if you look at, say, Packard, York, et cetera, et cetera, if that's made into a, okay, we can build seven stories here, those businesses will also be vulnerable. So I think you have to be really careful about matching the deeds with the words that are in the plan, and that's not being done yet. I have one other, a more general point. Neighborhood residents have been meeting in various places. I think you've figured that out already. And I went to one meeting in Water Hill. There are people there that could reach a consensus if they were given a chance. But you didn't, none of this engagement has met with any neighborhood associations or neighborhood where people can get together and talk about it. There is a consensus that is possible to be reached, but this process didn't even try to attempt to do that, and that failed. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, thanks. Hi. Steve Guttermann, 551 South Ashley Street. I also own rental properties at 713 and 715 Miller. And just in general, on the, one of the chief rationales for increased density, it's not a simple supply-and-demand curve meetup when you're in a market like Ann Arbor or just about any other market in the country, which is a very desirable market to live in. To the best of my knowledge, there is zero evidence that the increase in units in both rental and ownership housing in the past several years has had any negative pressure on housing costs in the city. There is no evidence, as far as I'm aware, that it's going to have negative pressure in the future. Aside from the set-aside units, based on percentage of area median income, none of the units that have been built in the high-rises over the past several years are affordable to middle, lower-middle-class incomes. None. So I don't, I would like to see actual evidence as we are continuing to move headlong into the super densification of this city. Thus far, I've not seen any of it. A more general comment is the term "affordable housing." It's a very poorly defined term. I think in many people's minds, affordable housing means housing that is workforce-affordable, affordable to workers, postal workers, teachers, et cetera. What we're often talking about when we say affordable housing is actually very low-income to no-income and often supportive housing that is highly subsidized. So the housing that the Ann Arbor Housing Commission provides, that is affordable housing. We really need some clarification on terms, because everyone uses the term "affordable housing" very loosely. It means very different things depending on the context. Another semantic issue is zoning. Zoning has been getting a super bad rap the last few years. Getting rid of zoning or significantly changing zoning has been seen as, you know, the answer to creating more affordable housing in this country. And the term "exclusionary zoning," which is pretty pejorative sounding, gets attached a lot. Well, zoning is exclusionary. It is by definition exclusionary, all zoning. So the zoning that prevents a gas station from being built next to my house is exclusionary zoning, et cetera, and yours as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Welcome.
Hi, I'll be brief. My name is Rick Reynolds. I live at 2101 Devonshire Road. I just wanted to express my support for all the work that you guys are doing and have put into this process. We obviously have an affordability problem in this city, as there is in cities across the country. I've lived all over the country with my career. I've been here 20 years. I live in a beautiful neighborhood. I believe that neighborhood would still be beautiful if there were logical additions to it to provide additional housing. And I just wanted to express my support for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Hello, Mr. Garber.
Thank you, Charlie. Nice to see you back again. Yep. And Planning Commission, Ken Garber, 28 Haverhill Court. I will speak to Chapter Four. And like Mr. Reynolds, I want to express my appreciation for all the work you're doing. You're reading, meeting now on a weekly basis, apparently, for very long meetings. And I know this is not easy with most of you, all of you holding jobs, many of you with kids and other responsibilities. So anyway, one of the staff's questions in your packet tonight is the following. Numerous objectives reference decarbonization as a goal. Is this the right specificity level for future land-use decision-making? I would argue for more specificity. Nowhere is there any mention of natural gas or heat pumps. That's despite goals in the A2-0 Plan like this one on page 32. Quote, "All new residential and commercial buildings are designed and built to operate without the use of natural gas, reducing the increased costs associated with retrofitting existing systems," end quote. Similar wording should be in the comp plan. If you want, just borrow it from A2-0. You might argue that this is not a land-use issue. True, but neither is building energy efficiency. And there's a half dozen references to that in the draft comp plan. Sustainable is one of the four basic plan values, and buildings are responsible for two-thirds of the city's greenhouse gas emissions. So the plan should be explicit about what should be done with those buildings. Energy efficiency isn't enough. I'll remind you that the comp plan, among the plans that the comp plan will be replacing is the Ann Arbor Sustainability Framework. One goal in the framework is, quote, "to eliminate net greenhouse gas emissions in our community," end quote. This was written 12 years ago. The current plan, draft plan, refers to reducing carbon emissions. So we've gone from eliminating to reducing. Now, eliminating that emissions may seem impossible, but it's still the proper goal. That's because CO2 stays in the atmosphere for centuries. Global heating worsens with every cubic meter of fossil gas that we burn, and our carbon budget for a stable climate is already gone. The only question now is how bad is it going to get? Reducing emissions just means the rate of temperature rise is less, but will still go up. So in terms of climate, the draft comp plan is a regression and a retreat from our existing goals, as set forth in one of the plans it's replacing. Do we really want to go backwards on climate? Finally, I'd like to express my appreciation to Planner Bennett for all the work she's done on the plan. I know she's putting in extremely long hours. And unlike most of us, she has to endure very public criticism of the content and the aesthetics of her work, which after all is just a draft plan. And I know she's bearing under, she's been very stoic under this barrage. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Okay, with that, do we have any remote callers on the line?
We do.
Great.
Mary Henderson, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hello, my name is Mary Henderson. I live at 1416 Brooklyn. I'm opposed to the elimination of single-family and duplex zoning in Ann Arbor, and this is what is proposed in the comprehensive plan. I want to start by encouraging anyone who has concerns about the comprehensive plan and the lack of community engagement to consider signing the electronic petition that is circulating, asking the city to suspend the planning process until all residents are fully informed about the plan. To get the link, please email a2n2contact@gmail.com. That's A as in Apple, the number two, N as in Nancy, the number two, contact@gmail.com. Trolls have set up a fake website purporting to be the website of the Ann Arbor Neighborhood Network, A2N2. And they've also set up a fake petition that mirrors the A2N2 petition. So please be sure that you get the petition link through a2n2contact@gmail.com. Otherwise, you may feel that you've signed the petition, but it may be the fake petition. A2N2 does not presently have a website, so any A2N2 website you find is fake. With regard to community engagement, on page 27 of the comp plan, the biggest number to pop out is the 3,100-plus surveys. I obtained a copy of that survey, and there is absolutely nothing in the survey that relates to zoning, eliminating zoning, adding duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, or apartment buildings in residential areas, or adding any other kind of density in neighborhoods. It's mostly questions like, how long have you lived in Ann Arbor? Do you own or rent? Do you have children? Where do you shop? It's basically just a demographic survey. The word "zone" and "zoning" do not show up anywhere in the survey. The word "density" does not show up anywhere. The word "duplex" shows up only once, under the question of what type of housing do you live in. The words "triplex" and "quadplex" do not show up anywhere either. In fact, there's so little in the survey that bears any relationship to the comp plan that I contacted the planning staff to make sure that I have the correct survey. The planning department didn't dispute my points, and their response was that, quote, "The summary of results you were reviewing in the draft plan comes from other exercises we conducted with the public," end quote. So with that being the case, the 3,100-plus surveys should not be cited in the comp plan as community engagement. I'd also like to note that the Planning Commission and the Ann Arbor City Council have gone to great lengths to prevent residents from deducing that the comp plan will eliminate single-family and duplex zoning. Nowhere in the 124-page document is it mentioned that one outcome of the comp plan will be elimination of single-family and duplex zoning. If the Ann Arbor City Council and the Planning Commission think eliminating single-family and duplex zoning is good for the city, and is what the majority of residents want, then why are they not coming right out and stating that will be one consequence of the plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other callers?
Adam Juskevich, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hello, this is Adam Juskevich calling from 1430 Las Vegas Drive in the Fourth Ward. Not that it should matter, but in lieu of having an asterisk next to my name, I'm a homeowner born and raised in Ann Arbor. I actually like the cartoons, photographs, and graphics. A dry wall of text is not something people are going to read. I think this approach is more accessible. In general, I support this plan, though I think it does not go far enough in terms of allowing more density within my own neighborhood, particularly with council's recent resolution. I was hoping for something more radical. But I am ecstatic that we are following many other cities in eliminating exclusionary single-family zoning, and this is a dramatic improvement over our broken status quo in the face of a severe shortage of homes. I like the way Chapter Four is broken down into sections of related goals. It makes it easy to follow the rationales and how they map back to the overall values. I like what the plan is saying here and agree with the goals overall. I want to focus on a couple of specific goals that jumped out to me and some ways I see them complementing each other. I think they also need to be emphasized more heavily, especially considering council's recent resolution to eliminate, to limit the possible density growth within low-rise residential areas. First of all, under Goal Four, encourage walkable, connected neighborhoods with access to basic needs and amenities. This has three strategies around repurposing underutilized public land, focusing density along transit corridors where there is existing infrastructure and amenities to support it, and adding limited, small-scale commercial uses within residential districts, and, quote, "improved mobility options for neighborhoods where commercial amenities are unlikely," unquote. I think there's another opportunity here. Look at using underutilized public land, new acquisitions of open space, and public benefits from developers to create some of these improved mobility options. I'm particularly thinking about things like linear parks or paved and lighted cut-throughs that provide more direct pedestrian and bicycle access between the interior of a neighborhood and nearby major corridors, the amenities and bus stops. These would also give people living in denser developments along the corridors more direct access to parks and schools located in the interior of their neighborhoods. These would be particularly useful in some of our mid-century neighborhoods like my own that have winding, disconnected streets and calls to sack. These street layouts do a good job of calming car traffic, but can make pedestrian trips unnecessarily long and indirect. A related goal is Goal Nine, invest in a street and transportation system that responds to land use and prioritizes safe and equitable access. I don't think it can be overstated how essential this goal is as our city grows. It's a geometry problem. We simply must de-emphasize cars as we get around within Ann Arbor. Particularly as we're planning to put the majority of new homes along high-traffic car sewers, it's not equitable without a major focus and commitment to making those corridors safe. We seem to be protecting neighborhood character at the expense of putting more people in harm's way with traffic violence, air pollution, and noise pollution. These corridors are our most dangerous streets. Pushing our density mainly to areas with the most heavy impacts from cars without taking serious decisive steps to mitigate those impacts isn't accessible, isn't acceptable. How can we make sure these mitigations happen? If we will be lining these corridors with homes, it's more important than ever. Interrupting your dinner to hear from all of us tonight.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Sarosi, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ann Sarosi. I live at 1322 Brooklyn. Thank you for all your work. I'm just getting acclimated to this proposal. I hadn't heard about it before, even though I think I keep in touch with things. We don't really have a hometown newspaper anymore, so it's a neighborhood, it's neighborhood talking, you know, neighbors talking to each other. I like the idea of having some densification in the city. I think, you know, we can go into how pretty some of these buildings are, but they won't, we have to admit, they won't lower the prices, as a couple of the commentators, they won't lower the prices to make it more affordable for the middle-income folks or the young, you know, young families. And some densification makes sense in the transit corridors, but I agree with some of the other commentators that we don't, we have to really consider the infrastructure, the electrical system, the water, the sewage, and whether they, all of our neighborhoods, if we were to change zoning all over the city, whether that infrastructure is up to the task. I also agree with a couple of the commentators who said that one-size-fits-all for zoning doesn't, you know, that is a drastic change, contrary to what the, what the draft plan says. It is a drastic change. And I'm not really sure it's necessary, at least there's no evidence that it's necessary to do one-size-fits-all changes. The other, there's been a number of comments on the level of engagement, on the survey itself and the level of engagement with city residents. Those are valid concerns. I have to, I have to say, there's other ways to begin talking to the community about it. And so I think you're hearing more and more people, because people have finally heard about this comprehensive plan. Now, I, I totally get that we have to raise revenue in the city. I mean, we've, we've got, you know, 42% of Ann Arbor is tax-exempt according to the draft plan. And you may have already looked at this, another committee may have already looked at this, but have we looked at, or has the city looked at, raising revenues in other ways other than purely by densification? So for example, a non- So for example, a non-resident city tax. We have tens of thousands of people who drive into Ann Arbor every day, who use our sewers, who use our electrical lines, who use our roads, and they don't pay any taxes.
Thirty more seconds.
And the other, so, and then there's other things like what other university towns have done. They have, they have those pilot programs, which are payment in lieu of taxes, looking into those things with the university and with, with, I don't know what other elements of nonprofits are within our confines of the city, but looking at other ways to raise revenue from the university that isn't necessarily property taxes. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you. Do we have other callers on the line?
Caller with the phone number ending with 326, you can press star six and address the planning commission for three minutes.
Hello, this is Jeff Crockett. Can you hear me?
Yes, as you can.
Okay, great. Okay. So my reason for calling tonight is about engagement. I know that the measure for your engagement was communicated on the master plan by citing the survey, and Mary Henderson spoke earlier about her concerns about that. The problem is, no one has identified on the survey, and I would urge you all to look at the Grand Rapids Master Plan, because what they do is they identify all the people who provide input. There are like 10 pages, about 80 people on a page, of individuals who provided input. Here, we know about no one, and we don't know where they live. So it seems, it seems unfortunate that we're getting input possibly from people who don't live in Ann Arbor. Also, we don't know how many unique individuals responded to the survey. So while there were 3,100 responses cited in the comprehensive plan, maybe that's only 2,000, if there were people who submitted multiple times. By identifying the names, we'll know exactly how many, and I would encourage you to publish that information. The second thing is, in regards to engagement, it stuns me that a postcard mailing was not sent out early in the process. And basically, this is the way you get engagement, is by sending postcards to everyone in Ann Arbor, 116,000, but City Council set aside $100,000 in their recent budget to do exactly this for citizen engagement. And I'm pleased that Councilmember Dish said that she was going to be doing this, and I'm also very pleased that Councilmember Dish has set up a civic engagement session for the master plan, or comprehensive plan, for sometime in May for people, and I'm appreciative of that, and to Councilmember Harrison, but I'm expecting that all council members do that, provide some kind of local forum so people can sit down and sort of go through all this. So I, there is still time, and I'm urging this group to send out a postcard mailing and provide information such as the survey you have, but also citizen participation meeting, so that everyone in Ann Arbor will be reassured, will be informed of the changes that are coming down with this comprehensive plan. Thanks for your consideration.
No other callers, Charlie.
Thank you. With that, we're going to close public comment. Excuse me, I skipped dinner, so.
Charlie, since, since you closed, there have been a couple of hands raised. Would you like to kind of get them?
Sure.
I think they were expecting you a few seconds.
Oh, gotcha. My apologies. Normally I do, yes, that's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Cynthia Middleton, you can unmute and address the planning commission for three minutes.
Hi, I live at 1402 Brooklyn Avenue. I just wanted to say that I would like to see this comprehensive plan paused so that there's more time for discussion and input. I really, I, I am just learning about this. I haven't been able to read the whole document. The things that I've read have been concerning, and I generally, I think I'm opposed to the elimination of the single-family and duplex zoning. I'm also curious, as Mary mentioned, whether or not there's been any inquiry into other ways of raising revenue. So, you know, there are a lot of questions, I guess, and, and I, and I just think more discussion needs to occur. Thank you.
Lisa Jevons, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hi, I just wanted to make sure you can hear me. I had trouble with my sound last time.
Yep, we can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Lisa Jevons. I live at 1054 Martin Place. I want to talk about the term exclusionary zoning, which appears six times in the comprehensive plan draft. This is a personal value judgment applied to a set of legal zoning rules that govern where most non-student residents live, which is in the R1 and R2 zones. As other commenters have already stated, aren't all zones exclusionary of something or other by nature? Of course they are. They are sets of rules. This derogatory personal value judgment now guides the residential land use plan narrative. Why? The draft plan recommends making all housing types available. Isn't a single-family home simply just another housing type? Its mere existence does not prevent anybody from building different housing types in the R4C, the R2A, the TC1, or the PUDE. Builders can and are doing this now all over the city. According to an MLive article on January 5th, approximately 50 housing projects are in process right now. They represent approximately 5,000 new housing units, including apartments, single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and condos. In addition, there are 2,300 private dormitory units and 2,100 university dormitory beds on the way. Several hundred affordable units are included in these numbers. None of this is lowering prices. So residents do not see why homes in their neighborhoods should be next, cherry-picked by speculators, torn down, and put into a landfill. For what reason? So that a different housing type deemed more correct by you can replace what was already there housing people in the first place. I suggest that you stop blaming single-family and duplex neighborhoods for housing problems in Ann Arbor. Clearly, they are not stopping a range of new housing from being built all over the city. Please remove the skewed value judgments from the plan and focus on the facts. You are insulting and alienating residents, who are going to believe their own eyes every time and vote accordingly.
Luis Vasquez, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Yes, good evening, planning commission and city planning staff. Luis Vasquez, 909 Barton Drive, 41-year resident of the city of Ann Arbor. I'm calling to address tonight Goal Number Nine, the transportation strategies and options. What I would suggest is that along any bus line in the city of Ann Arbor, that within 100 feet of a bus stop, that you allow for much higher densities, such as perhaps five or even 10 stories, within 100 feet of a bus stop. Regarding Goal 11, carbon neutrality, efficient energy, and resource use, the sustainable energy utility is mentioned there. You know, as, as a homeowner who has put solar panels on one of my houses, I would be distressed if, you know, a building were to go up next door, that would block my solar panels. So I think it, that's a very valid concern and should be planned for within the planning document. And to close, I would just like to urge anybody who is in the Ann Arbor Neighborhood Network, instead of signing a petition, I would urge you all to take the opportunity to participate in many of, in one of the many upcoming events and meetings that are going to be held by the planning commission and city council members and city council. Trying to stop the process right now or slow it down, I don't think is warranted. We do need zoning reform in Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
No hands raised.
Give it a few more seconds.
Still no hands raised.
Okay, with that, we're going to close up public comment. Thank you for your participation and your comments. We appreciate it. At this time, we're going to go on to Agenda Number Six, which is unfinished business. There are none, and then we're going to go right into other business, which is comprehensive plan review, Chapter Four. We will go to staff introduction with Mr. Leonard. Thank you.
With Ms. Bennett.
Good evening, commissioners. I want to thank you all for sending in your edits early. I hope you see in front of you, you have a 14-page packet with your compiled edits. So we've gone from 40 pages to review today to hopefully 14. This does not preclude anyone from bringing up something new as we go along, or if you didn't have time to send in edits prior, that we can still go through them. The first page is general. They are not specific to a single section. I would suggest that we move to the ones that are specific, and that if you feel strongly that your comment is on the general section, that you can bring it up where, where relevant or as an example of what you were referring to. So that would put us at Page Two. Just a note on how I tried to organize this today, so Page Two is a good example. Under the, the header here, Housing Targets, there's six comments. So I tried to group them together to illustrate to the planning commission where we might want to spend a little more time, as more people have thoughts or questions about those topics. So I might steer us towards the areas where there are more than one comment, but I, again, I don't want to pass up any other comments that aren't grouped in that way, so please interrupt me or bring them up, but I'm trying to keep us focused and moving, moving forward. Does that sound okay?
Yes, that sounds great, very orderly. Thank you.
Okay, and just a reminder of some of the processes that we agreed upon is that we will, if we get to an area where we think we need to take a straw poll vote, we will do so. If it looks divided, then we may move to a motion, and that way, it will be recorded that way. We're also taking notes here. I hope you saw in the agenda packet that all of the notes from last meeting are in there so that you can review those, and if we got them wrong at any point, please let us know. But this is the compilation that we will probably be sitting down with the consultants to go over, so we want to make sure that it gets onto that document.
Commissioner Wetherby.
So just a quick question. So if, if we have like something in the general section and it's there, we just assume that you'll talk to the consultants, like, we don't need to reiterate those things if they're already?
You're welcome to, if you think that you want to convey that point to the rest of the commission, because we're not going to spend time. It sounds like on the first page, where all the general comments are compiled, so you're also free to do that.
Are you talking about tonight's chapter or the previous?
Just, I think, in general, like, I was specifically talking about tonight's chapter, but just sort of in general.
Yeah, I would, so I just organize this to try to keep us focused, but if there is something that comes up, please don't hesitate. This is the forum where we want to be having this discussion. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
And then we will be scrolling through so that everyone can see what we're referring to.
Cool.
Okay, shall we start?
Oh, yeah, Commissioner White, sorry.
Just a quick question for the chair. How do you want to do the comments? Last week, we just had all our mics hot, and we just talked through it, but if you want to wait to acknowledge us, that is fine. I defer to you.
I think an open discussion is fine, so just keep it civil.
We were quite civil last.
Yeah, yes.
Just to make sure I'm clear, because I think what you were asking is, if there's stuff on the general page and we don't talk about it tonight, what happens to that? Are you reviewing that with a consultant, or if we feel really strongly about it, do we need to bring it up so that we can all talk about it?
I would say bring it up if you feel strongly about it, and we can all discuss. Otherwise, we would probably just take what we have here, and we, you know, at some point, staff might just have to be making some judgment calls, right? If we don't get to every single edit, that's discussed.
So just maybe to kick us off specifically, like, about these housing targets, one of my questions from the general page was, how were these objectives developed? Like, where did this come from?
We should just start there, Brad, if you want to go to the housing targets.
Sure. So we have talked through this process about a couple of different housing numbers. We talked about, we shared not targets, but build-out ranges. You might recall 30,000 and 97,000. Those were projections, making assumptions based on land use areas of different land use categories in the future land use map. Go ahead.
Well, I didn't mean specific to this. I meant like overall, for all of the objectives, how were those determined? Was it based on the public input? Was it based on, like, how were those written? Not like the specific number for housing, but just like any of these bullets? Like, where did those come from?
So various sources. Housing specifically was a range that doubles and triples our current housing production in the city, and that was intended to significantly advance our housing supply versus a lot of research that suggests that advancing supply is an effective tool towards affordability. The affordable housing unit specific is building on previous research that was done. You might remember our economic equity report, which was 140 units per year. So that was just carrying that forward. We have not met that every year, so if anything, that's probably a low target, but that's where it came from. Other ones, I don't think they were specific from engagement. They were trying to specifically set something measurable for us to work on attainment. Having Michelle and the resources here to do comprehensive planning on a more frequent basis, part of that is going to be a lot of measurement and reporting out, so, so no one source.
Some of them may have also come from other plans, like reduced vehicle miles traveled is a goal from 820 that we're trying to align with. So that's not a clear answer, in that they come from various sources that we tried to compile here.
Okay, I mean, here's one thing, again, this is, it's my third bullet on the general page. I, I'm just, I'm struggling with overall in this chapter. There's a lot of, you know, there's the what we heard, there's rationale, there's objectives, which I guess is under rationale, and there's goals, and there's just a lot of, and I don't, I don't really understand how they're connected, and maybe they're not all connected, but I don't know that that was clear enough to me. I don't know if reordering them would, but if not everything came from what we heard, I don't know, it feels like the objectives should have come out of some sort of process, and it wasn't clear to me, like, how they were. If those are our objectives, like, where did they come from? And it sounds like all over the place, maybe?
Well, from several sources that we have pulled, either, like we mentioned, from other documents. So what we've heard, that should be an indication of, like, engagement, and that could be from surveys, that could be from the other exercises that we've done, that could be from, like, focus groups where we talk to other professionals in the field. So what we've heard So what we've heard, I think the distinction they're trying to make is on the next page, like, under rationale, we're trying to balance data and then, like, public sentiment, right? That's sort of what a comprehensive plan does. We have to look at data and trends. We also have to reconcile that with what people will tolerate. So I think that's how they're trying to break this down, is those two categories.
So they're kind of separate?
They're separate, but they should be, all of these should be moving us in the direction of making it clear why our goal is our goal, right? This is our justification, this is our rationale, based on what we've heard and the data that we've pulled. These are the goals that we have.
One of the things that I'm hearing might be, and I think this is a question that I had, is it might be just helpful to have a little bit of a how-to-use-this, like, just a better, more effective way of communicating how do the values relates to the goals, to the strategies, to the objectives. It seems like that's part of what's going on here, is that those are all terms, and you, as you, as somebody who's going to use this a lot, you're struggling with the relationship. Maybe that's something that we need to do, that could be something that we do is just, as a starting point, you're going to see these terms throughout this chapter, this is how they interrelate.
I think that is a lot of what I'm struggling with. So like, the key considerations sound like they're more data-driven. Okay, so that would be, I didn't, I mean, I obviously like read that, but I was, I just couldn't figure out in my head, like, how they were relating, and the objectives coming first before, kind of, just like, I feel like the data should support objectives, which should then develop the goals, so maybe it was like the order that didn't work for me.
I think there's, like, a graphic design problem, or, sorry, solution to this problem also. So some combination of what you're talking about, Brett, which is like a sample spread, but then that stuff has to exist in the same place on every single spread. And right now, there's no graphic differentiation between the what we've heard and the key considerations, and then the subcategory, like what we've heard housing, what we've heard neighborhoods, key considerations, housing development. So like, just, there's a, probably a graphic solution there, but I also, and then I think, yeah, some, something at the front that just says, I mean, I saw a comment in here about breaking this into more chapters, but even something that says, you know, there are three sections, and for each section, there are these elements, and this is how they, and they show up the exact same way every time. But for me, I don't, I'm wondering about the difference between a goal and an objective, which feels like the same thing to me, and right now, the objectives are a little more, there's more granularity there, but maybe there's also a lot of questions about the granularity, so maybe they could be generalized, but, and then folded into the goals. So like, reducing vehicle miles traveled would fit under Goal Four, right? So I think that's also confusing, to have goals and then objectives and not understand how they go together.
Yeah, and I had a lot of just plus-ones on both of those, because I had a lot of the same, like, where are we going? Where's my 1.1, 2.3, 4.4? Like, it was kind of, I felt like it was a little bit hard to understand the relationship.
Okay. So what I have written is we need to make it clear how each section, within each section, these different areas relate to each other. For example, objectives, what we've heard, the key considerations, and more broadly, hearing that the objectives call-out is confusing, and that those should be maybe integrated into the strategies where they fit under the goal. That would be clearer? Okay. So let's look at Page 46, what we have open. There on a call-out box on the left, I think that's a fair reorganization. If we agree to that, we can do that.
It would also be clearer, there's a little target in the objectives box, and we're hearing a lot of concern when people think that we're targeting, you know, 30,000 to 65,000 new households, X number of population, when in fact, I think it's more the way Mr. Leonard just put it, that these are projections, but they're conditioned, as you said, Ms. Bennett, on what people will tolerate, and they're conditioned on what infrastructure can support. And so when it's stated like this, it sounds like we're marching in these directions, when in fact, we have no idea yet what's even reasonable in terms of sanitary sewer capacity, let alone what is tolerable.
Yes.
So I think that it needs to be clear that we understand that we're not, we don't have hard and fast numbers that we're going to get to, no matter what it takes, because that would be, that's just not what we're doing. And there's a way in which this, it may be a combination of the presentation and also just the wording, like, is it a target? Is it an objective? Is it a projection? Those are all really different things, so.
Okay. I appreciate that point. I think it touches on this reoccurring theme of how vague and how specific we want to be. So you can imagine in here, people have different ideas of what that means. So in some instances, we say, there's comments here, that's way too vague, and now we have specific numbers, and it feels like marching orders. So as a Commission, we're going to have to figure out, like, what level of, as the public has asked of us, what level of specificity do we want? And I would say, and I'll let Brett speak to that number specifically, but now that there is someone on staff who can help implement the plan and annually, you know, review it, some sort of metrics are going to be necessary for us to follow, right, to see our progress. And so that is easier when you have specific numbers, but it also does hold us maybe something that needs to be contextualized with infrastructure and things like that. So this is a broader conversation, one where, I think one thing we're going to need consensus on as we move forward is like, what's too vague and what's too specific, and that's going to depend probably on what the actual thing is that we're looking at.
I wonder if the economic development document can help us here, if it has any of those targets, because then it's something that's already been adopted, it's something that's already driving policy, and so that way, we can just stay in that flow.
Yes, and I think Commissioner Adams brought that report up last time, so, and I have started looking at that. I'll make a note.
I would also just say, I mean, we are planning in the context of a region and a state that specifically has targets for housing. And so understanding, that, I think specificity is, in this particular instance, is fine, and actually, it's going to allow us to measure. I like the idea that there's a range, like, giving the idea that it is not a specific number, but we're going for something. I just think, the question that I had was, where does this number come from? And so just the specificity that you had about, this is doubling, or this is how it links to what the region, like, later on, we have information in a different part, which is where consolidating some of this stuff together would be helpful. How it links to those other plans would be really useful. But I like the specificity, to be honest.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a logic to stating broad, general goals and then aspirational objectives to try and measure, measurable operational objectives to try and achieve those goals. I do, I didn't even catch, the objectives were stuck in a little box off to the side. So folding them in better, it makes sense to me. I'm still struggling, though, with where did all of this come from? There's a long discussion about all of the community outreach that's been done and that we're continuing to promote, but who identified these goals? Who identified the objectives that are stated? Was that drawn from the public engagement? Was it done by the staff? Was it done by the planning consultant?
The objectives?
The goals and the objectives and the strategies.
Yeah, it was, that was staff and the consultants' attempt to synthesize community engagement. You know, I think that's one of the things that's going on, right, is community engagement has been long in process. It's been multifaceted, and it's been asking different questions, and so I think.
And it's been sometimes contradictory, because we're a pluralistic community.
Yeah, so the short answer is, these are goals that we have tried to organize, some of the themes that we've heard in engagement, into specific categories, both goals and strategies.
So it would be helpful, I actually, it took me a little bit, but I figured out, okay, the, what we've heard is the community engagement, the key considerations seem to be the data, the objective data, and then you're using that to draw the goals. It would be helpful to not only add an explanation of how to use the plan, but to describe a little bit better the process, those we used to identify the goals and the objectives, and explain what you've just been explaining to us tonight. How did we get here? Would be a helpful thing to do.
Okay, so what I have, so I've already repeated the, we agree that the objectives should be folded in probably into the goal that they belong to, and even more specifically, the strategy under the goal that it aligns with, that we need to describe this better, how these all relate together and where they came from. And then specifically, we received like six comments about these targets. Now that you know where they came from, I want to know if these still stand. I think many of you asked to remove them, so I want to check in if you want Brett to explain that further, if you feel differently now that you know where they came from.
You're talking Page 46.
Page 46 in the objectives box, the first bullet point.
This specific to 1,200 to 1,800 homes per year for 25 years. For me, the only thing that I would like to see is some level of consistency with this, is it homes, is it units? I kind of immediately went to 2.1 persons per household based on census data, but the challenge for me was, for example, the current housing pipeline is 750 units per year, right? And I was having trouble kind of like saying, well, so what is homes per year, right? And so I just want to make sure that the terminology is consistent throughout.
Yeah.
So if we do keep the specificity, just try to make sure that we're consistent in that specific realm. As far as specificity, I kind of do lean with Sarah on this one, and I think we could speak a little bit more, Commissioner Mills, a little bit more casually on this one, just because we are having an open debate. The way that I'm thinking about this is, how are people going to, you know, as a developer or somebody who is in real estate, they're going to look at this plan, right? They're going to say, okay, oh, shoot, you guys have delivered at this point 1,800 units, so is it going to be now, like, are we, is it going to be found upon, right?
To develop more than that, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's say that, like, again, it was just kind of a busy year, right? And a lot of things were delivered, and then we get a new development proposal, right? Is somebody going to use that kind of in the negative? Or in the positive, if we have, so I'm just thinking about how this becomes operationalized once it's published. So, you know, I know we're, I'll get to this a little bit later, but like, this first point is what we should kind of focus on, and I'd like to get a little better, the only thing that I have is I want consistency in whether it's units or beds, just the concept of homes is a little difficult. So that's my specific feedback, but I'd also like to better understand from other folks where they stand on the specificity of 1,200 to 1,800, and how it gets operationalized when people are looking at it saying, oh, well, you hit the target, oh, shoot, so do I not bring this forward, kind of a thought process, so.
I can jump in there.
Yeah, thanks.
I think part of what's missing is we don't have a City Council or a pop, what is that, framework? We don't have a, like, population target goal. We are reacting to the market. And so currently, we are behind the market because we are short on housing units. People put it somewhere between 7,500 and 10,000. So if we hit that goal, then do we stop developing? And I think the answer to that is no. So absent a actual population target that we'd like to see the city, do we want to see the city double? This is a 30, 40, 50-year look ahead at the city, and I, again, just remind the Commission, in 1970, they were discussing the city within 10 years growing to 150,000, wherever it was at that time, it was under 100,000, and they never achieved that, and we know somewhere in the 70s, we have some constraint that prevents us from actually getting above 120,000. So as we think about, so that was part of why I personally wanted to strike all of this, because I felt like it lacked a tie-in to a larger goal that we could see how this is contributing to. And so absent that, again, I would go back to the economic development document to see if Mr. Fornier had anything about population growth. I know he has something in there about unit need, and so try to align those two things would be sort of my kickoff for that part of the discussion.
So my interpretation of this is it aligns with our goal of trying to densify, right? We're trying to double or triple the amount that we current, our current housing development is. But I can see that that also maybe doesn't get at what we want. Is, the next bullet point is a diversity of housing types, right? We don't necessarily want 1,200 of the same exact unit being built. So those could be tied together. There were also comments in here about how maybe vacancy rate is a better metric.
Yes.
There's a few people who commented on that. And so if we do go this route where we want to be more specific and put these under our goals, you know, then we'd have to figure out.
Right, because we could have a healthy vacancy rate, which we currently do not have, and so that could, once we achieve that, then it's like, oh, now we're finally where we need to be. So, and we heard that last week when we were discussing this.
I also noticed in the questions from staff that was in our packet, a comment that these numbers are approximately two to three times the city's current annual production. So I don't know if it's helpful to say something like, double the number of units that are being built here, or something that's like, I think I don't like the total generality of just increase, like, by one, you know? So something which is aspirational, but there is, there is something odd about the 1,200 to 1,800 and the 25 years for me.
Yeah, I'll just, I don't mind the specificity. I think if we're going to be specific, we should be specific. Like, most of those other bullets are just increase, and if we're going to have a goal for one, does it make sense, or a number target for one, like, does it make sense to have them for others? My thing with the 1,200 or 1,800 was just I didn't know where the number came from, and hearing it now, I'm like, okay. I mean, and if it aligns with the economic development report, like, all the better. It was just kind of like a number thrown out, so even if it's footnoted or something like that. But I like the specificity. I would like a little more specificity, if possible, in some of the other things.
I would just, I totally get, like, there's some specificity here and there's some generalities, but this board has been extremely focused on housing as the predominant aspect of it. It's a thread that's guiding a lot of your conversations around this document. And so I don't think it's inappropriate to delve into more specifics with that, with housing, than you might apply broadly across the whole document. So I want to acknowledge that, yeah, there are some generalities here, but I think also if you think housing is the most important feature of this plan, then I don't think it's inappropriate to dive in with more specificity to that topic.
And maybe taking the objectives out of the box will help, because looking at them like this, it's just like, okay, we have a very specific objective, and then an incredibly vague objective right below it.
Yeah. I feel clear on the direction on this, but.
The only additional thing that I was going to add, and I don't think I picked it up later on, is housing is important, and sustainability is important, and those two things are linked. And just the last bullet that talks about reduced vehicle miles traveled, I feel like if we, if part of what we're trying to do here is incorporate A20, that there is specificity in that one, too. And so there could be, and I think that we get at some of that, but actually, I think that it's a lot vaguer, to be real honest, on the sustainability things, even related to motor, or even related to transportation, vehicle miles traveled, which we have another document in our tome that has a whole lot on it, so.
Which isn't going away.
Right. So maybe that's why. And, but referencing that, or the fact that it's in there, I think helps give it some parity, like, that we're not a one, you know, like, solely focused, that, hey, by the way, remember, this is also part of our comprehensive plan.
Because I do think that the guiding principles were affordability and sustainability. So I want to make that part clear as well. And if I recall correctly, it was 50% reduction of single occupant vehicles' miles traveled in A20.
That's what I was going to ask if you were referring to be more specific, like, you would like to see it, say, reduce vehicle miles traveled by 50% in alignment with?
In alignment with A20 or something. In alignment with A20 or something, some level of a reference, so that.
It was more, again, you're going to solve all of this by not having it in the same box.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But it was more that I think overall, there's more numbers associated with housing in this than there are with a lot of other things. And so.
Okay.
Just maybe, I'll keep my eye on that, too.
There is a graphic on page forty-eight, not to move us off the first page, which we've been on, you know, for a long time.
I have more to say on that, on page forty-seven.
Yes, no, but I just mean that this graphic on page forty-eight that shows really how low our housing production is now, while the perspective of people who live here now, they feel as though there is a massive amount of stuff going on, blah, blah. But, I mean, our production isn't even half what it was in, from, these numbers are so small, but from seventy to seventy-nine, right? It's not even half what it was then, which is off-peak. And we're on pace to not develop as much as we did last year, as far as I can see. And so I think that might help anchor some of the projections, like, if we want to accomplish this, then we would have to develop X, but it would depend on the, it would depend on the infrastructure, and it would depend on what people can tolerate where. So there's, there's, there are support for the statements that are being made, the specific statements that are being made, but it's not together with the statements. And it helps complicate the picture that people have.
And really quick, for the folks joining us, we've been starting the meetings actually at five-thirty because of the length of public com.
We're talking started at seven.
Oh.
Share the neighborhoods.
Oh.
The new conference.
Gotcha.
Get that information out.
Okay, yeah.
We just want to know, switch from the neighborhood.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry, I can't necessarily speak for the neighborhoods. I apologize. It was, I think it was because in the, like, the previous weeks, when we would start at seven, we didn't actually get to the actual meeting until like, around like, ten o'clock or something like that. And so we collectively made a decision and to say that we're going to meet more frequently, and then start the meetings at five-thirty, so we could grapple with it a little bit more substantively. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
You missed a good deal about the discussion of the changing neighborhood.
We're literally in it right now, and you'll also have a chance to have a public comment after our discussion. So, yeah, yeah, no problem. And thank you, and welcome for coming. Thank you for coming. All right. We're currently, Michelle, bring us back to.
Yes. Okay, so if you can see the bullet points under housing targets, I think we've covered that. These ones beneath it are also referring to the objectives in that box. So I think that's clear to me, what to do next there. But I think Commissioner Abrams had a comment about page forty-seven.
Well, sorry, I lost track of that we were on this. So first off, on page two, we can do the millage. Did you want to do the millage?
That's what I was going to ask next.
I'll wait. Yeah, go ahead.
Was that your comment? I thought you had a comment about.
No, no, no. I'm further, I'm on page three.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
So the millage is in the objectives box. And so, yes, we can make the recommendations that you've said, but there were some that were asking, why is this even in the objectives box? If you want to go up. It says, is an increased millage an objective? So that's the second to, no, that's the third to last bullet point.
So that was, I think, as I'm looking at now, a confusion on my part of, it's like, millage revenue, not increasing millages.
Right.
As the objective. But it's the increased millage revenue would be the objective. So along with the tax, right? Like, as, because it is.
Well, that's what I rewrote it. That's how I suggested, like, what I think they meant, but I don't know.
I'm glad I wasn't the only one. I was like, I don't think we just want to increase the millages.
Yeah, they should revise it.
Can I take the rewording that's offered here on the first bullet point?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so forty-seven now, I think we'll move to that, the blue box.
So that was where I wanted to jump in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have so many issues with this blue box.
As did others.
As did others. So maybe I don't have to go through it all. But I guess, maybe before I kind of pick it apart, I seem like there's a question on the table about removing it.
That may have been a suggestion. I think that this box is just meant to show that we are not like the pioneers of this. We are following a wave that's going across the U.S. about how to provide gentle density in single-family neighborhoods.
But what's interesting is that it's not been successful. Some of, in some of these communities, in some of these communities, it actually hasn't been successful. So I think that's one question that I have. And then I think the other question that I, yeah, so its intention is a little bit unclear to me, like, whether these are meant to be people we want, communities we want to model ourselves after, or if they're like cautionary tales. And Donnell's laughing at me, Commissioner West. If we are going to keep it, I think we need to be much more clear about what, what happened in these communities, or just even, I don't mean more text, but just more bullet points, and, and like, how does Portland define affordable? How does Seattle define affordable? Why would the International Residential Code be a building form control, as they say, which also is a phrase that shows up a couple of times, and is not a term I'm familiar with? I think they mean form-based code.
Well, I think here, they're talking about dimensional standards when they say building code, because they talk about height restrictions and setbacks.
So then I would say, but they also say, yeah, so then let's use that term. Maybe others are familiar with that. I've never heard of building form controls as a, as a phrase.
I mean, to be fair, I don't think either will be clear to the public, like, dimensional standards. I don't know if it's, is better.
Yeah, yeah, but we can put that in plain language. We could say, limiting dimensions, such as height.
Okay.
Or you could even, not even, it's called, says height restriction. So you could just strike it all together and just say, height restriction.
I think this box, and Brett, you can correct me, I mean, you're, so you're stating that these have not been successful. I think that their perspective and ours is that maybe in some of these communities, it's too early to tell if they have or haven't, because these have been passed in the last.
Yeah, so I saw somebody else say, like, oh, maybe we say, how have other communities attempted to add housing, right? Or, I guess, it presents as if these things led to real transformation in neighborhoods, which in Minneapolis, it has not yet. We can add the yet there. I like the growth mindset.
Don't say attempted, because now you're signaling it didn't work.
Yeah. Are attempting.
I think, how have other communities addressed housing needs? They're doing these things in an attempt to address housing needs.
What, yeah, we can wordsmith it. I'm just saying, I don't want to claim that these are, that this is a list of four amazing solutions that happened in these other communities, that's all. And then I really don't like this asterisk at the bottom. I think somebody suggested a nice way to rewrite it. Under thirty-five-feet heights, page forty-second, the second bullet, during the engagement process, the planning team showed the community illustrative examples of gentle density and received positive feedback from the community for four units. I think that's a much better way to word it, if we are going to keep it. I would strike it altogether, but.
Could we go back to the box? This box doesn't have to be here. You don't have to base your land use policies on what other communities are doing.
That's, that's kind of, yeah, I would actually say that we should strike it, because there are different populations, there are different contexts. And so, again, like, my thought process is, how is the, like, this comprehensive plan going to be operationalized? You know, when people are reading it, I'm thinking twenty years on the road, right? And they're like, oh, look at Minneapolis. I wonder why this is here. Is it pertinent slash relevant? I mean, it's good that we've done the research and done the case studies. I just don't think that it has gravitas or relevance, longevity into the future. So I would actually think that it's better to just strike this entire, again, we want to talk about how we make it more accessible, not, you know, have people ask, what is the International Residential Code, and why is it, you know, mentioned currently in our comp plan?
Do we want to take a vote on this?
Yeah, I think we might want to.
Yeah, I think I'd be happy to do a straw poll about just redacting this box.
I mean, I can see having certain, something that's not tied to a city of, like, ways that communities would add housing to single-family neighborhoods that are options. But I agree that this is sort of like a, these are four big cities, and I don't think ten years down the road, or fifteen years down the road, well, we won't, we don't know what the situation is going to be with these. I think it's, it's really good to look at these and see what other places are doing, but I'm not sure what it, why it belongs in our, but I could see sort of options to say there are, there are different ways of, of doing this.
Well, that kind of feeds into a point that I wanted to make, leading into the next page, which is, we are not unique in this city in having an affordable housing crisis. It's a national problem. Some places, it's worse than others. It's particularly problematic in desirable cities like Ann Arbor, where a lot of people want to live. We're not unique in struggling to figure out how to address it. There's good scholarship out there showing that adding affordable, adding more units, well, first of all, shows, makes clear, nothing's going to happen overnight. There's no policy change that we can make that's going to have an immediate effect. But adding more housing has the effect of, if not reducing housing prices, at least slowing the increase in the rise. There's good scholarship out there to show that. There's a ton of material that the Michigan Association of Planning has produced. All of these different methods have been suggested. They've been vetted. There's a lot of work that's been done to say, these are good things to try and do to solve these problems. None of that is cited in here that I can see. Am I missing it?
No.
I think we could, and we're hearing from folks saying, there's no evidence behind this. Well, they're kind of right. They're, what it says is, here's what we heard from the outreach efforts. And then there's some kind of vague statements with some pretty not well-explicated justifications. I think we could do a lot better to provide the factual background to support the kinds of policies we're promoting, and to better justify the goals and the, and the things we're doing. And I think it's useful, every time I go talk to a community, they want to know, what are the other communities doing? I mean, it is helpful to know.
How are other communities addressing these problems? So I don't know that I want to jettison completely, Ann Arbor is a unique guest, but we're not that unique. I mean, there are other communities that have had experiences that we can learn from.
Maybe we don't highlight it quite this way. So I'm okay with jettisoning the box in the way it's presented, but I wouldn't want to say, let's not talk about what any other city has done.
Sure.
Okay, there was my little soapbox. I please, I mean, there's good material that MAP has produced, and good studies that they're relying on, that we could do a better job of, of beefing up the explanation of why this is such a problem, and why the steps that we're proposing make sense.
Yeah, I'm, let's go to the vote. I just want to say that, like, we do get asked pointedly of, like, if people are not reading up about planning, as most are not, they, they think that this is radical, what we are proposing. I think this is meant to show that many other communities are also doing this.
So are we just doing a straw poll on striking it, or are we entertaining alternatives to it?
I would say that the vote would be on striking it or not.
And then someone else would have to come back and say, here's what I would suggest to replace it with?
Well, I think maybe when we get to the rationale, we can talk more about how we'd like to make the argument.
So, okay.
Or no.
I'm looking at you.
I think the, my sense is, folks are troubled enough by how this is presented. It's not presented well. It's raising more questions than it's answering.
Sure.
So maybe the, you know, strike the box.
Do you want to lead the vote? Who leads the vote?
Does anybody want to keep the box?
I mean.
I would keep a revised version of the box.
Yes, that's where I was going to go. Like, I, I would lean towards what Commissioner Norton just suggested, which is, there's the, the Michigan, the MAP, they have a toolkit, and in that toolkit, they go through all of the different ways that you can accelerate housing, that you can put housing in. Even the AARP has a whole section on that, which is also researched and citable. So we can bring those, those bits into this blue box that say, here are how other communities have addressed their housing shortages. They've done it in this way, this way, this way, and that way. We can even keep some of the references to the cities, just to say, in Minneapolis, they did this, and in Austin, they did that. But the way that this is presented, I had an objection to it, because I was like, oh, this was, this was my one time where I was like, this is cherry-picked. Put Cambridge in. They went to five, you know, five stories citywide. So.
So is the note revise the box?
That would be my note. But that's why I was asking if we were taking a straw poll on the whole thing.
I'm seeing a lot of support for eliminating the single-community references, and you're more interested in academia references and support about why the tools that organizations like MAP are referencing are common.
Yeah.
You're not interested as much in the communities that have done that and reported on their data. You're more interested in the aggregated research to say that communities who are interested in affordability should do accessory dwelling units. AARP says that. You're less interested in what San Diego has done.
Sure. I mean, they also say townhomes, cottage courts, et cetera, not just ADUs. We've done ADUs.
Okay, while we're on this box, there were two, there was, well, we're getting rid of, okay, so I don't need to go over this thirty-five-feet heights, the asterisk at the bottom, that's gone. Great.
Although I kind of like that sentence, if it were to go in the, somewhere else. I don't know. I mean.
You can keep the.
Maybe not in the box. I can keep, I can have it. Thank you.
Cut it out.
It can go in your bump.
Two people had the, oh, is that, well, that's in two places. No, right. You've had the same sentence, two places. Because I was like, that's wild. The same.
Are we good to keep moving?
Yes.
Can we move to the MISTHA housing targets? That was a question of ours, and also received many comments. I am skipping, I am skipping some of these, so please, if you feel like you would like to bring up something I'm skipping, you can always interject. So the MISTHA housing targets, we're talking about page forty-eight, underneath that bar graph that shows limited supply over time, it's in bold.
Yep.
Okay.
We're on page three.
So we had asked you how you all feel about that reference, and I'll let you talk about it now.
Sorry, can I ask a general question real quick? Do you think, are you planning to have a glossary?
Yes. In fact, I've started one. I can read you the words. Whenever you all made a reference to something, should we have a glossary?
I think that's something we can come later. Yeah, we could just say glossary.
I just took your comment out of here, and I put it in a glossary.
I think that's great. I really appreciate that.
Sure.
Great, okay.
So I'll, I'll start. Forty, can I just back up to the previous bullet? I know you want us to be under the graph. The only concern I had was, the numbers are being bolded and are coming out, but the citations aren't, they don't seem to flow. So the seven fifty is bolded, but it's not cited. The citation comes at the end of the whole sentence, and what in particular are we targeting? So that was part of what I sent in, which is just to clarify that, or to remove the reliance on these numerical targets, because Ann Arbor is already exceeding what the state's goals are, if I understood that correctly. So I didn't understand why we had to anchor back into this unless we were saying, yay us, which is fine, if it's a moment to say yay us.
Yeah, I think one thing that's happening is that the Michigan planning-enabling legislation has been modified to require a reference to housing demand. And I think that's one of the reasons the state put out this, because they recognize that it's going to be challenging for a lot of communities to commission that kind of work. So I, yeah, I struggle, I just, I think I raised the question in the chair contest, because it seems, the notion that we are already exceeding it largely, but we are facing the affordability issues we have, it doesn't seem like a North Star.
Right.
So that was, that was the question.
Yeah, no, I, I can appreciate the challenge here.
And the seven hundred and fifty units, yes, should be cited. That came from us. That is based on.
CLO data.
Yeah.
Right. And I, and that was in my comment as well, because we're talking about permitted housing that's in the pipeline. So it's not yet all been shovel-ready, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Those are projects that are either approved and stagnant, or in the process.
Right.
Can I ask, do you have a sense of, will they all go through, or will some of them fizzle?
History would say that some of them will definitely fizzle.
That would be such a huge addition. I mean, looking at this bar graph, it's a huge pop in what we've seen before.
Yeah, but that's an aggregate since two thousand. On average, we're only doing two fifty, if three hundred, units a year.
We're halfway through the decade.
Yeah, we, we are, we are way.
There's something confusing about the way these numbers are being presented that just don't make sense.
Yeah, so the 5300 units is an aggregation of site plan projects that have been approved or in process over recent history.
It says here, 2018 to 2024.
Yeah. The 750 is an average of, of that pipeline of units, how many actually were built and received a certificate of occupancy on an annual basis. So we approve a lot more than get built on a regular basis.
So a lot of them fizzle.
Can we just say that?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe it's worth just being explicit about that.
Timeout. Sorry, sorry. I, I struggled a lot with this. That feels like it's mixing things. The 5300 is not, that's over the course of six years. That is not per year.
Correct. It does say that.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, no. But what I just heard, what I just heard, and so this is why I want to correct, or like, want to make sure I heard things right, is it's not that we're comparing 750 per year to 5300 total, like, or in, per year. Like, if you, actually, if you take the 73, 5300 and divide it by six years.
You don't get something like that.
You don't get, you don't get close to that, but you don't also, you don't, you're not like way under. You're like 20% under, rather than like 80% under, which was the kind of implicat, like, that's what I heard. So I just want to make sure that we're like close to it. If there, we know that there's a lot of things under construction though, too. And so I feel like, so that it, I would love if there were a dotted line on the bar, on the, on the rightmost bar, to say what's actually under construction, because we know what those are. Because I, what I wasn't sure is, well, particularly because we have the 5300 units in the pipeline right there, should I add that to that bar? And then, well, then we don't look so bad at all.
So there were a lot of.
Which I know we can't. I know we can't. But like, that's, if I'm the public, that's what I'm going to say. Like, yes, we're only showing 700 here. Like, yeah.
There were a lot of questions about the data on this page, as you can see. So we're going to go over all that. I want to make sure that we, do we want the, the reference to the Michigan housing plan removed?
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
It suggests that we're meeting goals.
And we have a 3% vacancy rate.
That also suggests that if we were going to build anything, we should be building single-family homes.
Yes, because that's what the state wants.
And it also suggests that, that single-family homes, that multifamily homes are not for single households, which they are.
Which they are, of course.
Gosh.
So it would sound like you feel like this data is not specific to Ann Arbor.
No, it's the statement that is worded, just the way it's worded. I mean, I don't know how we do it.
You could footnote it instead of putting it in line to say what you have here in bold. Just drop it down below to say that Ann Arbor is already exceeding the state level goals. If you wanted, if you felt like it needed to stay as a reference point. But I just think, for me, when I read through this, I was like, well, we're already exceeding the goals, then what is the, what, what are we doing here? And of course, what we're doing here is trying to make more housing available for folks. So that, and, and the way they're put together, I feel like it, it's just.
It just needs context, right? So if we are going to, I think if, if the point is to say, according to this housing plan, we're meeting the target, but we actually understand that to be inadequate for the, our community specifically, we should just say why that is. Why is the, why is the state target not appropriate for us to compare ourselves to? So it's not about hiding information, but I think it's not, it's also about not being confusing. And I think on the left column, the other confusing thing is the contrast between saying that all of our growth is in student households, not in non-student households, but the decline in non-student households doesn't mean that we're meeting demand. So it's like, I had to like twist myself in a knot to understand what was going on there. So maybe one thing is to just zoom out and say, well, what is, what are we trying to say here in these key considerations? And then back, back into it with more spec, more intention or something.
Yeah. So would you all support us leaving this in here if we provide the context that you just asked for? Is that a good solution?
I, I would need more actual refutation of it. I think the very distinction between targets for single family, and I don't even know, is that detached? Is that whatever? And multifamily? I think it's a terrible framing, and it's totally at odds with our sustainability goals. You know, to produce, to grow, I mean, look at our map here. It shows us how our pattern of growth was, and that's not sustainable anymore in the city. So I don't know which parts of Michigan need or can support single-family housing targets, but I don't think Ann Arbor, depending on what that means, is it detached? What are the minimum lot sizes? I mean, I feel like the, the state's targets are completely unfathomable. It's like meaningless. I don't know what they're talking about.
So I will say, I mean, they usually hire people, so their methodology is not always super public. But I will say, having some experience in this area, they do look at numbers and they don't look at how typically, look at land that's available, right? So they can just give you numbers of like, this is how many units you should have without taking into account your jurisdiction's goals and availability of land. They'll just say like, you should have 30 units a year, right? Based, based on, I'm not undermining their process, like, based on a methodology that I am not familiar with. But yeah, this is not necessarily taking into account what we have available for these amount of units. So I'm looking for direction.
Well, I think it's not a question of context. I don't think context is enough. I mean, yes, we get these from the state of Michigan, but I think just saying, these targets do not take into consideration that a majority of our housing supply is already single-family detached homes, that we cannot sustain any more significant amounts of development like that. And I mean, I just think we would have to refute the targets to keep the language in. And I don't know if we want to do that.
I think the targets are minimums, too, right? They're, they're, you should be trying to get to this many. That doesn't mean that you can, you have to stop when you get there.
I get that, but I really, really am, I mean.
Well, the point, the point I was going to is, you know, this might be a place that actually does merit a, a side box. Here's the state housing policy. Here's how they derived it. Here's how it works. Here's why it doesn't apply here. Because we're.
And we'll have space, because I'm going to cut a whole chapter later, so.
We're still a voting group.
It's not, it's not just, it is both an empirical issue and a values issue. I fundamentally object to the implication that, that, that single-family households are best served by single-family housing, which this distinction makes that implication.
Yeah, you have support.
I think I would need a vote, because I'm not, I'm not clear on where the commission stands on this.
Will we vote? I do have a question.
Yeah.
I'm still trying to figure out the numbers. Is the 5300 units in the pipeline over six years consistent with what we've been seeing for the six years prior to that? Or is that, or we, have we seen, are we seeing a bump in the activity that's taking place? And if so, is that because of the zoning changes that have been made? Or what, what can, what can explain that?
I don't know the comparison to the previous six years, because we don't have the, an easy way to report out that data. So this most recent six years has been due to a lot of data mining that we've been, I've been trying to work on. I could do that, but I don't have those numbers now.
It would be helpful, rather than hounding in on what, an abstract number that the Michigan housing plan is calling for, I think it would be more helpful for us. I really, I think this graph is telling a lot about how our production has dropped, fallen off dramatically. And what I'm trying to figure out, is it, is it on an upswing? Or is it, are we going to still expect a whole lot of homes not getting fully realized because they're fizzling for some reason? What, so I don't know how much more work that is for you to collect that data. But as soon as you start putting data in, you want to really have a good thorough explication of data. And this seems just half-baked to me. This could be expanded greatly to better explain what's going on here.
What is housing data you'd like to see here?
Well, that actually brings us, I mean, so we got to circle back to this, but like, all of these bullet points here on page four are all of the issues people have with the data that's presented on this page. So I don't know, maybe this now calls for us to walk through these one by one, because you can tell us what data would be compelling to you or presented in a different way. So I'm looking at page four, where it says data on population and housing growth.
I mean, I think, I think the big disconnect is people walk through the city seeing housing being constructed, and therefore they have a belief that that is adequate. What is hidden is when The Grove put their 30 affordable units into the market, they had 7,000 applicants. That is what's hidden. And so how, like, that is what we are trying to go towards, which is how do we make space through our land use over the next 50 years, so that there is more housing production, so that when 30 units go on the market, it's not being applied for by 7,000 people? And so how do we represent that in a, in a sort of compelling way, I think, is what I would like to see here, because I feel like that's what's missing. Everybody walks downtown, and they're like, everything is under development. I can't move around the city. So why do we need more housing?
I think that's exactly the answer that I'd like to see in the data. And when I was reading the data, I wasn't sure what question I was supposed to be answering in my head. So maybe it starts there.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Before we move on, I want to make sure that we finish this ahead of the 2022 Michigan housing, the MISHDA, okay? Because I want to make sure that we have clarity on that.
Okay.
Yeah, before we move on. What I heard from most of the folks was that whether it's an expounding or a clarification of context as to what MISHDA targets are, right, the Michigan, state of Michigan Housing Development Authority, how they derive, and what kind of context it has. So maybe this sentence needs to be blown up. That was a suggestion I heard from Commissioner Norton, and I would actually be supportive of that. But want to make sure that we contextualize that particular sentence. That's what I heard from most people, not a simple redaction, but an explication.
That's what I have here.
Perfect. And then with respect to, and I think it would be helpful to actually go through each one of these.
Okay.
Overall, the, the one comment I wanted to make was, when, on this chart, you see everything's in decades, 1980 to 89, 2010 to 2020. I don't think it's fair to put since 2020, because it looks like a sharp drop-off. I would almost get rid of 2020, right? Because we haven't seen 2020 to 2029 yet. And so I just don't want there to be any kind of graphical representations that don't really tell the true story, right? Especially if you're going by decade, and then you're only showing like four or five years of COVID. So.
Yeah.
But it's annual, right?
It's from the census.
No, it's not annual. It's a decade.
It's far as a decade.
Yeah, so like.
But annual, each year of the decade averaged, or is it total?
That's total in the decade.
It's total.
That's, that's what I mean.
So 300.
Commissioner Hammerstein.
Yeah, so 370 units on average annually in the last decade would be, I think, the, the correct interpretation. So I just want to make that sure that.
I always read the one-year estimates.
Yeah, yeah. But that, that is just kind of like, one thought I had real quick, but I think it will be helpful to go through each of these bullet points. So.
So you want to remove that bar, you're saying, from 2020?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, I think it makes it seem like it's precipitously dropping off, but it's not the same time period. It's like, it should either be like 2020 to 2024 actual with 25 to 29, you know, projected or something. Something that creates a consistency.
Or like some call-out that says this is only.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think you could, you could keep it if you did what Commissioner Mills said on top of it. But it may be worth explaining that this is looking at total units over 10 years somewhere, so that people either can do math or you can give them the average.
Yeah.
Because I think people look at this and go, oh, we're building 3,300 units of housing every year for the last 10 years. No, we're building 370 units of housing a year over the last 10 years.
So, so the title could be total number of housing units by decade.
Yes, there you go.
Yeah, not by year built, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And then you could put in the, the dotted line that Commissioner Mills suggested for the 5,000 that's in the pipeline through 20, or do a projection. I know the data doesn't exist. Just, you could do your best and put an asterisk. This is our best estimate of what will happen in this next 10 years at our current rate.
If I might, I, I thought about this one a lot. This data is pulled from the census. So this is the current, like, the age of the current housing units. So this is not actually what was built. If something was torn down, it is taken out of this. So over time, if that makes sense. And so I just want to make sure that we understand, like, how this data is. This is the, some people get a long version of the American Community Survey, where you're asked what year your house was built, and that's where this comes from. And so it is not, we, presumably, we had more houses built, you know, in the 60s, whatever, whatever age houses are being torn down now. Like, those tear downs are subtracting out from those columns. Just be clear.
Before we go through each bullet point, I just want to be clear. Some of the commissioners only sent in edits for housing, and I just want to be clear that chapter four covers all three goal areas, which we're going to try to get to. But just so you know, we're not just going through these 12 pages of housing. We are going through 40 pages. Okay.
Oh, wait, we know.
Okay. Let's start with the first bullet point.
Okay.
I don't have these in order of bullet points, so if you had a comment, please share.
I had a comment on the first one. I just didn't really understand that last sentence.
Oh, that's right.
Like, house, it's the first bullet, don't you think? Like, is household growth the same as population growth? Or what, what are we saying in that last part? I understand the vacancy rate part, but the growth faster than, so housing growth should be 25 to 50% faster than household growth? Like, what is household growth?
Household stock growth, like the units?
No, no, it's the people who want a house.
It's the people in.
Yeah. But where are they growing from? Just in.
Brooklyn.
Well, so you only need one unit per two to three people. So your population and your housing grow at different rates.
Right, like, somebody graduates and wants to stay here, or.
There has to be housing for them to live in.
They reduce the housing, or there's switching from one bedroom to two bedrooms.
If other people found that confusing, I don't know if you can clarify it. I can also ask.
Yeah.
About it.
Just looking at the source.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's from my consulting. We'd have to get clarification on it.
It looks like they found a source that showed what a healthy housing growth rate would be. So clarification on that point. Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Second bullet point, are there more questions about the first bullet point?
I had a question on the second bullet point, which was, at the end, it says, Ann Arbor's population plateaued around 1980. In the last 50 years, Washtenaw County has grown 59%, a much higher rate than Ann Arbor, at 24%. But 24% growth doesn't seem to me to be a plateau.
Plateau.
Okay.
Also on that bullet point, this is nitpicky, but I just would, I wouldn't say the issue in Ann Arbor is that population growth has been powered by U of M students. I would just.
Ann Arbor.
Ann issue.
It's just, or just, or just eliminate it altogether. You can just start the sentence with, population growth in Ann Arbor has been powered recently? I don't know, something but, you know. And then I already said this comment, but I think there's something confusing about in that bullet point saying that student growth, that without student growth, Ann Arbor households have declined. And then the following saying, even though they've declined, we have a lack of, what, well, it's funny, it speaks in the negative. Even though it's declined, it does not mean that there is no demand, but when it could just say, there is demand.
Yeah, I kind of rewrote that one. That was one, there was an example of like rewriting it, just because it's confusing the way it's written.
And I think that the data on page 10 and, the graph on page 10 and 11 suggests the population, the non-student population has not declined. So it's, in the, in the time period, it's gone up, it's gone up much more slowly than students, but it still has gone up. So I, I was really confused by that.
It's the rate of growth that's plateaued. It's not the growth.
Yeah, it's not the empiric, the absolute growth.
Yeah, okay.
It's the percentage.
The, the way that it reads, like, just Ann Arbor households have actually declined in recent, so like, the, yeah, I don't, yeah. Yeah. Which is, yeah.
We've talked about the fourth bullet point.
I guess I kind of want to speak to something, I, there's a lot of popular sentiment that we shouldn't allow any more growth because we don't want our neighborhoods to change. We can't do that. We legally cannot close the doors behind us and say, nobody else can move to Ann Arbor. If we attempt to do that, we will be litigated and it'll be struck down, we can't do that. We have to accommodate the demand. The signal that we have for demand is the fact that, that 7,000 people are applying for 30, 30 affordable homes. We have to address that. It's pretty clear that at least one of the driving factors that's constraining affordable housing is because we've, we've expanded horizontally through low-density development and we've now don't have, unless we start building up, we can't accommodate the demand that's here. We have to start densifying and building up. The question is, how do we do that in a way that is as least disruptive and maintains the character of the community as possible? I don't think the way the facts are laid out, and, and, we're spending a lot of time on this because this is the section that has got everybody animated, and it's the most difficult, thorny issue to debate. I think this whole discussion of the facts and the processes and the problems that we're facing is much too cursory and not developed well enough. I think it needs to be written and better explained. And it's worth taking the time to do that, I think.
So Commissioner White presented some data that he felt would be compelling. Is there anything else that's missing here? So if, if we think that we can tell the issue, like, explain the issues that we're facing and facts that support that, what would those be?
The only other thing I would add is Jennifer Hall, our Housing Commission Director, said that we house some people outside of the city because we cannot find affordable units inside the city. And that was surprising to me. I did not know that. So, no, so to me, that, that's a huge, that's a huge thing, like, we're, just, how do we, how do we address that as a community? That, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
So that's an important distinction that I think has also been brought up here that we need to talk about and the public brings up a lot, is we need to talk about what we mean by affordable.
Yes.
So when we say affordable, this is how I've been explaining it, there are, there is the Housing Commission, and they help to build units for people with, that are income-eligible. Those are subsidized in some way. When we're talking about affordability, we do have goals for that, but we are also talking about, the other word that is used in planning is attainable, to make housing attainable at different income levels. And we can talk about as a group how we want to explain this distinction to the public or in this document. Because what you're bringing up, Commissioner White, Jen Hall works on income-eligible housing, which is what we are talking about some of the time in this document, but not every single time. And I think that's been a huge point of confusion.
It is, a lot of, and it's becoming a sticking point for a lot of people to say, building more housing doesn't make it affordable. And I know that affordability is a goal, but doing nothing also doesn't make housing affordable. So it, it's, we have to do something, we have to be moving in a forward motion, which is why I appreciate what Commissioner Norton had to say about that.
I, I don't, I, I don't know if Ms. Hall was speaking specifically to any population or housing, but there, those two things are related because the nature of one of the programs that the Housing Commission administers is the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Inherently, that provides people the choice to take a voucher issued by the Ann Arbor Housing Commission and use it anywhere. Attainable housing might not be at the lowest income availability, but attainable housing is a way that a voucher becomes viable. And so even though those definitions are different, I, I think it's important to contextualize that they're, they're related. Jennifer, Jennifer and her team support a lot of residents outside the city because those vouchers can afford more housing when the cost is lower outside the city at times.
But I don't think the taxpayer knows that.
Yeah.
The general taxpayer.
Yeah.
We're, we're on page three out of 40 right now, we've been on this for a little bit. Oh, page four, thank you. Although, I mean, of the chapter, and one of the things that I, and because on the next page, for example, housing affordability, talking about the affordable rent at 2188 with affordable mortgage being 262,000. I think we can get to that at that page.
Okay.
As opposed to focusing on, how, what we mean, is it 60% AMI, is it 80% 120? So Julie.
I, I did.
Nope, go, go for it, and then I'm the next.
I did have another thing under key considerations, and maybe this is part of the confusion of, like, what these all mean, but, so for me, key considerations for housing development are also constraints on developable, developable property, which, like, including historic districts, university-owned land, parkland, houses of worship, that, you know, that not everything is developable. And, and I don't see that anywhere, and I don't know, maybe it doesn't matter, but it seems like it would matter a little bit. Like, we don't, we don't talk about that at all, as we sort of say, oh, everything's available to build on, and that's not true. That's just for me, I, that seems to me like a key consideration for housing development.
Okay.
The other, like, what might be included in key considerations is the idea, and this, the map actually makes, is a good place to talk about this, that our household size has reduced.
Yes.
So these neighborhoods, when we have neighborhoods that were built for the 50s, they were built for the family size of the 50s, and we have fewer people in each of those houses now than we used to. And I think that that is an, that's a key consideration as we're thinking about the infrastructure to support those houses, like, the people in those neighborhoods. And I, I feel like when we've talked about that with ADUs, that's clicked for a lot of, a lot of folks in those, those longer-established neighborhoods, and so that might be useful to bring up here. And if we've got, you know, that could be data that we could pull together. Finally, the, we should add some citations to that final bullet about adding housing has other benefits for residents, and one of them is that housing, this goes in, in, in hand with what Commissioner White was saying about people being pushed outside of the city. New households in Ann Arbor have fewer vehicle miles traveled just by virtue of being in a 10 or 20-minute neighborhood. And so that, we, there's data on that that we should be pointing to, because housing is a sustainability solution.
Okay. Okay. So we will work on either pulling more data and trying to explain our current issue better in this section.
Yeah, just to go back to another point, I mean, it would be helpful if you can dig it up to try and get a better sense of the housing, you know, stuff that's been in the pipeline before the last six years. And people are also, we're hearing from folks, we've made all these changes and nothing's happened, but it sounds still like, to me, like, well, maybe it has. Maybe some of the things we've done are actually starting to show some benefits by increased housing numbers, but I don't know if that's in, hidden in the data somewhere. So if you could parse that out, that would be helpful information to know.
Okay. So, next page?
Yep.
Okay, so yes, here is the affordability part, where we can have this discussion, I think that's what you were referring to, Rachel. Okay.
That, that point there is just what you do, do with median income. I'm not sure if the numbers are correct, as others have mentioned, or in relation to what it actually costs to live in Ann Arbor. But that's a great definition of attainability versus income-eligible or income-qualified subsidized housing. It's what we mean when we talk about affordability, but when we talk about attainability, it's that, you know, if you're at the median income, you ought to be able to buy a median house, whatever the median house looks like.
Yeah, and I do, on this one, the numbers just don't seem right to me. I, I can't see that in 2023 that the average sales price of a house was 299.
Yeah, that can't be true. That can't be true.
Like, that, that just.
I feel that shock, I can't see the source. Okay, well, I see you provided some, so I will look into this.
And also, because we do have 2024 numbers now on a lot of these things, if we could use 2024 numbers, but if not, still, the 2023 numbers are out there, so.
It may be the case, too, that you don't want to rely just on medians, there could be a skewed distribution of housing costs. It may be worth providing a little bit more data on the distribution of housing types and costs, if that's, Zillow's amazing source of data, that's where this data apparently came from.
It did.
My students get amazing things out of Zillow.
One thing I would love to see is under the neighborhoods, the sixth point, the city still lacks locally-serving retail. If we could just help people understand how many households are necessary for retail, like, just even a small number, it's the last.
Somewhere in there. That is provided under, yeah, it's not here, it, I think there's in economy and opportunity, it lists the different kinds of categories of retail and how many households are needed.
Or if you are willing, a footnote to a glossary later, just because no, I have to look that up a lot to say, like, oh, it's about 1,000.
It could also, like, just reference, it could reference page 68, like, see page 68, right?
Yes, but I'm striking that whole section, so.
Okay, well, wherever that ends up, wherever that box ends up.
Can you help locate me on what bullet point you're referring to? Are we on?
I was on page 50, the last bullet point of the two columns, under key considerations, starting the sentence, "the city still lacks." Yes. So just right there at the end, I think it would just be helpful for people, when they read that, to get a quick reference to how many households it takes to, like, support a grocery store. So like, because we hear a lot about the George, like, why didn't the George work?
Okay.
While we're kind of zoomed in on this, just kind of across the board, I'd like more rigor in the citation process of consistency of formatting, just out of the academic, it's like, why are we getting a little sloppy with the citations?
The citations are not.
So I'll have you know, that was a note we gave them immediately, so they went back in that, remember, we had that week span?
Yeah, yeah.
And they just cited the, like, most, probably what they anticipated would get a lot of questions, they will continue to cite this in the final deliverable.
I think the format, yeah, yeah, the formatting should be consistent as well as just the rigor behind it, right? I just want to make sure that it's, this is based in fact.
The specificity of a lot of the citations are too vague. The citations to the University of Michigan.
Yeah, yeah, like.
What does that mean? What, what university document are they pulling that from?
The one.
I'm sorry?
That one.
That one? The one document that U of Enemus produced.
Yeah.
Do we want to go through bullet point by bullet point on this one, or how would you like to go over this page? We've, we've tackled some of them, there are, were some questions, oh, page, are we on page 50? There were questions about property taxes that I have listed here, so someone doesn't understand what's meant by property tax resets impact the ability of these homeowners to downsize? Britt, can you explain how that works?
No, it makes sense, it's just not very well-written.
It didn't, it didn't make sense to me.
Like, the property tax uncapping.
I don't know what that means.
Buy a new place, your taxes are in the way.
Yeah, the uncapping of.
Not if you buy a small, cheap place.
It's still going to be more expensive.
But your taxes are going to be way higher than what you're probably paying.
Than the person who was there before you.
And than you, than what you're paying on your current housing. So you hold on to that housing until you die, and there are people waiting to get in it, and they will never get in it. It's like the restaurant.
Let's just say that, then.
Yeah.
I, I think, just being specific about how taxable value uncaps to state equalizing and assessed value.
Well, that's hard to be.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Property tax.
That's clear to most people.
Property tax uncaps, as opposed to resets, because that feels like a, it's like an operative, like, verb, it feels like property tax resets impact.
To zero.
Yeah, 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 so it, it doesn't reset, it uncaps, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just, yeah, I want to make it clear, yeah, strike the thing about state equalize about, yeah, yeah.
It also just wasn't clear to me what the argument was meant to be there. I mean, so, I mean, so that's what I wrote in my long comment on that. You know, it seems like.
You want to know what does this, what is the impact of this?
Yeah, what are you trying to say? I mean, is, or not what are you, but what are they trying to say? I mean, I understand, I can, I can tell a story about that, which I think the story is people who are, people are reluctant to move into more need-appropriate housing, you know, housing that's appropriately sized to their needs, so they're going to hang on to it. And then this generational turnover that we're looking for that should happen is A, delayed, and B, it's not going to be a wash, it's going to be a steady trickle. And so prices are just never going to go down the way they would.
But it's, yeah, I think, I think this is actually a part of what you're saying, this is saying that that's part of the affordability issue, right?
Yes.
Because we have a limited supply as it is that's going to turn over. And it's going to be prohibitively expensive for the people who are trying to get into those homes.
It is, it is.
On both sides.
Because the incumbent homeowners have incentives to hang on to this housing, and it is going to slow them down from leaving it.
And prospective buyers are limited.
Yes, perspect, yes, absolutely.
Not just because of the cost, cost of the house, but the taxes that they will pay too.
Correct.
And then, it's weird, because the new buyers actually pay a lot more toward.
They do.
City structures and city amenities and city resources than older.
Long-term.
Long-term.
Yeah. Okay, so there, there are a lot of, I think there's a, a couple of distinct arguments packed into that, which to begin with is, could be worded more clearly.
Just to come to their defense for one second, we, we asked for a lot, and we asked for them to make it not a 300-page document, right? We said, we gave them page constraints, which now I'm wondering if we should have, but we didn't want a 250-page document. Part of being accessible is being kind of punchy, like, bullet point, short, make the, make the argument tight, and I understand that there are some shortcomings to that, but where it needs to be expanded, we're happy to do that. I'm just saying that, that, that might be why you feel like some things are really condensed, as we said, like, 100 pages, which they exceeded, but.
No, I think we support that.
I think this topic in particular merits some more, it's just too cryptic right now, there's not enough explanation here.
Okay.
Small comment, can you add average walk score to your glossary?
I did.
Thank you.
Well, I added walk score.
Oh, that's fine, either way. And then maybe also, I know they define it in line, but housing cost burdened, seems like something else for the glossary. Thanks.
I feel like I have this later. I think it's weird that we have 10-minute, 15-minute, 20-minute, and I really, like, there's just different, and I recognize, I'm willing to walk a longer ways for some amenities than others. And this map I thought was really cool in terms of showing, what I took from this map is that our dots of shopping areas are not in residential places. This is part of our problem, right? And our residential places don't have, like, it's farther, there's a lot of places that are in residential areas where they cannot walk in that 15 minutes to get to one of the shopping centers. And I feel like this is something that we also talked about in the transportation plan or in A20, and so I would actually prefer to use one of those maps, even if what we're showing is the shopping centers.
So I just, that's fine, I just want to clarify, one of the reasons we did a new map is, some of those other maps aggregated things, that is, if there was a school or a shopping center or a service, it was deemed to be a 15-minute or 20-minute neighborhood. This said, what are the areas that have everything within walkability? So that's why the map is distinct. It might not be explained that way, but when you, when. It might not be explained that way, but when you, when you look at some of those other maps, if you have one school, you're going to show up as walkable. And so that was part of the intention here. We can definitely go back to one of those others for consistency, but that's why you're seeing some distinction.
What are the other things that's everything in this map?
This, this says, these are areas where you have one of everything.
Everything being?
A school, probably a food, a...
Part of this map?
Park, yeah.
Well, I'm getting that from the walk scores that are on there, but the coloring suggests to me that this map is only about shopping.
Well, I think that's part of the, that's, and something that's not coming across. You mentioned residential areas. A lot of that green has residential areas underneath that. Those are the areas that have proximity to those services. So I don't think it's just about commercial areas. This is areas that have multiple amenities in proximity to those geographies. But obviously, that's not coming across.
Yeah, that's not... Yeah.
What's a major center or major commercial node?
Those are the dots.
Yeah. But you're saying the walk...
And the walk shed is, the walk shed is from the shopping center, but it's overlaying the walk score that I think is more than just the walk shed.
If we're going to go back to something from the transportation plan, is it necessary to repeat it here?
I think that maps tell good stories.
I agree. Except for this one, apparently.
Well, I mean, that, well, this is where I was confused. Yes, thank you for pushing. Um, I was, like, I guess I was confused about what it was doing, and particularly that the note on the, in the column right next to it, talked about the 10-minute walk from park, right? Anyway, I just threw out, I kept on wondering. I like maps. I like the maps a lot, to be real honest, but I wanted them, like, all together, and I don't know.
Is one of the notes you're giving that in some instances it's 10 minutes, sometimes it's 15?
Sometimes it's 20, yeah.
Which one do you want?
My, this is the thing I think that is hard, and that I know one of the activities that we did during community engagement was...
15 minutes.
How long would you be willing to walk for this? I think, like, at least one that I did at the downtown library was, like, here is your concentric circles, put a number by, like...
Yes, but what if that's different than what's in the transportation plan? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah. I feel like we should put what we vetted. If what we heard from public engagement was 15 minutes walking to shopping...
Or 40 minutes, whatever it was.
What, like, that's, I, that's how I would imagine that we do, we decide what those numbers are, if we're going to ask people about how long you would walk to go shopping, or if there's research about how long people, what they tell you, and then what they actually do walk to go shopping. Like, that's, that's how I would determine which is the right number.
Okay.
And also, can I, just a little thing on the maps, and I know I put this in there, but the labels are not correct on a lot of the things, like U of M Research Center or U of M Hospital Center Campus. Those aren't real things. And they have actual different names. But also, on this one, like, U of M East Medical Center Campus and Washtenaw Community College are in the walk score. Now, it's not a great walk score, but it is in the, and like, those have, you can't, it's more than 15 minutes to walk.
I'm questioning the accuracy of this map.
A shopping center or node, because I've been out there, and I've walked out there, and it's not, that's not, so... It's just not.
I actually think that's a label. I don't think WCC is on this map. I think it's just the label is on the map.
Oh, yeah, I guess it was...
But walked from that area.
But what you're talking, like, the walks, that walkable areas is...
Like, U of M East Medical Center Campus.
Yeah, it's the 23 interchange, yeah.
Is not.
Go ahead.
I'm going to pick up the map just a little... Maybe this is already said, but like, the way the labels are, every orange dot is a shopping center or node, and then it says every green area is a 15-minute walk from that shopping center or that node. That might not be what it intends, but that's how it reads. But there's, like, this huge area near Packard and Platt that's green, that feels very far, like, south of Packard, where Platt hits, it feels very, pretty far from an orange dot, but then there are yellow areas that feel very close to an orange dot. Does that make sense? Like, it's not, it's a really, it's the logic of the range. It's not like an even offset from an orange dot. And I think Donal pointed out, in some of these, it might be about access, like, you can't cut through, you got to go around, but I don't know if that's always the case. Like, doesn't that zone south of Packard, like, basically, the intersection of Packard and Platt seem really far away, whereas if you go over on Stadium, like, north of Liberty and, Liberty and Huron, it feels so much closer to Stadium? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah.
The logic is hard to read, so maybe just some verification that the map is correct.
Or maybe Packard and Platt is missing an orange dot, because there's a lot of stuff there.
Or that, that's probably more likely. Okay. And then we should...
I think the feedback is questioning the accuracy of this map.
One, we really want us to move to page 52.
Are there any other major data points on this spread that you all want to discuss? Because then we're going to get into goals and strategies. Okay, we are moving past it.
Wait, okay, sorry, your neighbor has a second bullet, and this is sort of a thing I have throughout, where they talk about underserved areas.
Right.
Where? I mean, I just, and I think I put this in a comment, I don't remember what I said.
Yeah.
But, like, they talk about underserved areas a lot, and like, historically disinfested and whatever, and I feel like some of that was, like, copied and pasted from, like, some other cities' plan in a way. Like, Ann Arbor's doing a lot better than a lot of cities in terms of having, not having as many, like, underserved areas.
We still have them.
Can we, can we visually show that, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, underserved areas in terms of what?
Maybe.
That's, that's the question. Because we do have pockets of poverty. We have discussed this internally as a team of where do we want, what data would we want? We were thinking of the Wash, Opportunity Washtenaw or Washtenaw Opportunity Index. They map various, some of them are demographics, some of them are literacy rates, some of them are how often people vote. So that could be, that's the starting source we were thinking of using for that.
And maybe that's something else, too, that we need to go in a glossary. Like, what do we mean when we say underserved areas? Like, specific to this bullet, I'm just, I would be, I have heard city park staff say their goal is for people to, everyone to live within a five-minute walk. We already met the goal of a 10-minute walk to a park, so I don't know what it means factoring for park size and vehicle ownership. Does that mean that small parks don't count? Maybe we just scrap the whole, I don't know. I'll let you guys figure that one out.
We will look into how to visually display what we mean by underserved, if that's the comment. Okay. We're moving on to the actual goals now and their strategies.
Ms. Bennett, our planner Bennett, senior planner Bennett. We're going to pause for...
Can you all call me Michelle? Am I allowed to request this?
With your permission.
With your permission, otherwise.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't...
We're going to pause just for a second.
Okay.
All right. So I just want to check in with the entire planning commission, because we have two citizens here who came a little bit late, because they thought, again, it used to start at 7:00. I think this process is going to take a while. I would personally like to give them some, the three minutes to speak, so that, you know, they're not necessarily here for another several hours if they are ready to...
So at this time, I'm going to just pause this component and grant three minutes to the folks to speak, because I do want you to be able to, you know, tell us, and we want to listen, and so if you want to take three minutes, we'll, yeah, perfect. Thank you.
I guess the timer. I just heard about this thing recently, and quite frankly, I was appalled at hearing some of the things, so I came here to listen to this myself. I'm going to do my homework before I come back, and I am going to come back. You mentioned something about changes. You weren't sure that the changes that you were doing here were taking effect yet. Let me tell you, they are taking effect. The roads are constricted, rush hour is worse, traffic density is up. If you, it's only going to get worse if you make it more dense. I have been working to make housing less affordable. My wife and I bought a house in Burns Park 30 years ago. We built a garage, we put a deck on the house, we've got skylights in the roof and a new roof on it. We have made sure that the home is preserved. When we bought the house, every bit of woodwork was painted. My wife painstakingly stripped and refinished all the woodwork in the house. It is old-growth oak, old-growth maple, old-growth pine, stuff that was starting to, trees that were harvested that had been growing during the last little ice age. So very dense rings and very good wood. That stuff could get obliterated if somebody took a look at my house and said, well, I can't live in this as a single-family house, but I'll sell it to a developer. And that developer could take what is housing one person, and they could say, oh, we could put four families in here, or maybe eight, because we've got a deep lot, and that whole thing could be built in. Or the person next to me could run into that situation, and now I'm living completely in the shade, and my street, which has older trees, now has fewer trees and fewer gardens because of there's this, there's this development. It's not your duty to make things affordable. I just want to tell you that. Nobody is violating the law by making a Porsche more expensive than the Fiesta my wife drives. And she's not deprived by not being able to buy a Mercedes. You know, if Ann Arbor is a desirable community, it's going to be worth more. And these housing goals going on, are you telling me that Ypsilanti is on a par with Bloomfield Hills for housing goals? Is it one size fits all? Does Traverse City or Historic Areas of Petoskey have to do what they do in Jackson? It's, that's crazy. You know, if, if there is an opportunity to build and there is a demand for it, then people will build. And furthermore, when you have 7,000 people applying for 30 units, that's just an indication that it's a great bargain. I've gone to stores when they've had super sales and they've run out of things, and it wasn't because they were doing something wrong, it was because it was a great deal. Ann Arbor's a great deal. If you want to make it less, you want it more affordable, just make it like Detroit, okay? It's very affordable in Detroit. Don't do that. I live in Ann Arbor, I'd like to live in my 110-year-old house, very sustainable.
Thank you.
So I heard, Mr., my name is Nancy Breck, I live on Woodlawn in Ann Arbor, which is right on the edge of Burns Park. We're very close to the Student Center. I direct the Historic Preservation Program at Eastern Michigan University, so I think a lot about housing and what people expect from housing and what our obligations are to communities with older houses. First of all, my neighborhood is really dense as it is, and when I read that we need greater density in residential areas, that's of grave concern to me. My house shares a driveway with a house next door. The house next to me shares a driveway with the other house next door. It couldn't be more densely packed as it is. I'm extraordinarily concerned about the fact that a house could go up on the street and go all the way to the edge, and we will be even more densely packed than it is now. And as far as I can tell, the restrictions will be off, and the quote said that we should leave it up to the homeowners to, you know, to do what they want to do with developing the lot. That's of grave concern to us, because we think that we bought into a neighborhood that is already fairly dense. It's quite walkable, that lots are not extraordinarily large. We're close to a park. We, in some ways, we have bought into a neighborhood that was densely populated. It's not big, huge lots that I see in other parts of Ann Arbor. I don't know if you can pick and choose, or there are, you know, restrictions on how you do it, but we can't shoehorn more people into our neighborhood. It's going to be a real challenge. The other thing I'm concerned about is, as a preservationist, you're all worried about sustainability. Yeah, well, I've been hearing rumors that there are wonderful houses that people don't want to sell in our neighborhood, because they might be able to get more houses on the lawn or the lot and build, you know, four-story, three-story residences, and all of that beautiful old brick and wood, et cetera, goes right into a landfill. It's hardly sustainable. And that embodied energy, of course, you know the phrase, you know, the most, the greenest house is the one that's already built, it's going to go right into the land. I think we have some obligations to look at sustainability in also a different way. What houses can be obliterated for development? As I said, our neighborhood is dense, and, you know, it's not historic district now, but maybe it's time to consider the fact that this area should be a historic district. So we can maintain the footprint that was put there and hasn't really been violated, and ensure that we have enough room to live, because it's right on the edge right now. It was built in the teens and the 20s as being a fairly dense neighborhood, very carefully designed to share resources. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. All right, thank you all for making time for the rest of the commission on that particular item, that was to accommodate these two that have shown up. All right, we're going to get back into our discussion about this. For those of you that may be watching virtually, there is another time for public comment, and so that will come after our review. This was simply to accommodate those that have come a little bit late due to the time change. So, all right, let's get back into it. I think we are on property tax, we are into goals and strategies. Goal number one, Ms. Bennett.
Okay, so I'm looking at page 52, goal one. I don't have anything, like, we can go through these comments, because I don't have a ton here that are, like, easily grouped together. I have 52, 1.1, a suggested rewrite. We could start there.
So I was one of those. It looks like there are two of us who suggested rewrites. I'm not married to my rewrite, but my issue was, again, the use of the term building form controls, and also this phrase, maintain low-rise development, that's not a drastic change in scale from what exists in neighborhoods now. So my suggestion was to revise that to say something more along the lines of utilize form-based code to direct the scale of low-rise development. But we can, I, I see somebody else down below also had one, but I think these little places in the plan where there's, like, this equivocation, yeah, make me uncomfortable.
Are you saying that you think that it is drastic? Is that the part that you think is a...
That just feels like a very unactionable term to me, like, I don't know what's drastic or not drastic.
Okay.
But I don't know what you think is drastic relative to what I think is drastic relative to what the community thought was drastic, and if, are we, is that a euphemism for something? Or, so I would just say, you know, if what we're trying to do is communicate that there should be some consideration of existing neighborhood scale, we could just say that.
Okay.
And then I, yeah, I don't like building form controls, I'd rather say form-based code, or if you think that's too wonky, I'm happy to try to brainstorm a less wonky way to say it, but that could also go in the glossary.
Form-based code?
Yeah, if we use it.
I think we should move towards, if we're going to say something like that, a form base, to...
But that's a specific, that's a term, though. Form-based codes are not specific, and, I mean, that's not what we have now.
You can put an asterisk.
We have a little bit of it. In TC 1, we have some form-based code.
And in the downtown, don't we? And some overlay districts as well. The thing that I'm concerned about here is what's absent or what is assumed, and bear with me, because I had a conversation this week with someone that was in a historic district, is that they are neutral, and they are not neutral. They were invented in the 1970s in Michigan, and they have been historically used to prevent development.
Yeah.
And they are being presented neutrally here. And so I just want to raise that. I don't know where it goes or if it should go anywhere, and it is largely about the preservation of material, because neighborhood character is not bricks and wood. Neighborhood character are the people who live in neighborhoods. And this was my objection to the consultants at the onset, when they started to talk about housing types as neighborhoods, and I think that is problematic. So I grew up in an apartment, and we had a neighborhood, and we had neighborhood character, and we all looked out for each other, and we shared resources, and we collaborated, and childcare was extended, and that was a fantastic neighborhood. I would love for my kids to live in that neighborhood. So when we present this this way, it just sort of ignores how historic districts, and in particular, how historic districts in Ann Arbor have been used in the 1970s and 80s to prevent higher-density housing from being built.
So are you referring in 1.1 where it says... So are you referring in 1.1 where it says Historic Districts will be maintained and development will continue to adhere to existing standards and design guidelines?
Yeah, I mean, I know they exist. I know they're state-regulated. I'm just saying, it's just being.
You're advocating for them to say that it has a, it increases scarcity of housing.
It does.
Okay.
You want to, do you, how's the rest of the commission feel about, like, I think the part of this balance is, there's been some conversation through engagement about whether or not we should keep Historic Districts or whether we shouldn't. I think it's along these lines. Generally, I haven't heard a lot of community engagements of advocacy for eliminating them. That's not to say we haven't heard any. I agree that it has an impact of constraining housing supply in those areas. It's also definitely past legislative policy of the city that we don't have to abide by in the future, but do we want to recognize it in this plan as something to perpetuate?
I guess that's a question because I didn't, don't know enough about if they are recognized by the state, for example.
They are.
What that means that, for how that intersects with our zoning.
Sure. So just at a very high level, we have 15 Historic Districts that require exterior changes broadly. There are some exceptions to that, that have to be approved for fidelity to the era of time in which the period of significance of that district was established. And that period of time can be different from districts, but it is by nature a bit of a legislative and regulatory framework to preserve a neighborhood in amber because the city in the past has recognized that there's value in that. And so zoning and those regulations can coexist. For example, in the downtown, we would allow maybe 120 or 150-foot building where the Michigan Theater is. However, the Historic District regulations for that would likely prevent a new addition being put on top of that building that would really compromise the historic integrity of that district being established, trying to recognize that form in its current state. So that's an example where zoning might be more permissive, but the likelihood of the Historic District Commission recognizing that a 15-story addition on top of that building would not have an adverse impact on preserving that building in its period of significance. Those two independently function and both apply to that property.
Yeah.
Does that help at all?
It does. And just to be clear, like, we, I guess, I don't want to get into a Historic District conversation necessarily, but like, if it's been established, can it be unestablished is one. And I, on the one hand, if the reality is that presence of a Historic District means that there is less likely to be a change in a community, I think in some ways that's important to say. And if that's also, you can see my air quotes because I'm now talking to you in real time. If that's the way that you don't have change in your, in your neighborhood, I think that that is a perverse outcome of new Historic Districts being formed. I don't know that that is what we would want to encourage. And so that's what I'm weighing in my mind with this sentence. Because I think it's both, it's both a reality and like, I don't know how you, right? Like, how you balance that, those two things.
There is a balance. That's what I'm trying to get, so sort of where the mind of the commission is.
Well, I think that's exactly where the city is right now, right? As we would, the way we've talked about in this plan is we would continue to preserve the 15 that exists, but that we are not encouraging more. The way that you laid it out is my understanding of kind of the city's stance on it right now.
Then you might want to say that. And again, I think one of the questions that people will have is, I, well, maybe I asked and then I said you didn't have to answer, like, can you abolish the ones that you have? Like, what does that process? I'm not suggesting, just for people watching, I'm not suggesting that that, I just really do not know how that works.
Yeah. I don't profess to be an expert in that. And my understanding is that it is, that it's difficult because part of, part of the lead-up to creating it is recognizing that there's a public purpose value in preserving it.
Yeah.
And so I don't know, perspectives do change, but I would have to learn more, but I think it would be, I mean, it's pitting a current legislative decision against a historic legislative decision.
Yeah. I mean, to that point, I would want to strike it because I think it's, I think Commissioner Mills articulated very well when she said to enable more would be a perverse outcome against our goals for density citywide.
But it says it will be maintained.
You want to strike that they're maintained. You don't want to commit to that.
I would, I would want to strike them. I know that legislatively, it may be nearly impossible. I think Mr. Leonard was being kind when he said difficult to unwind a Historic District because I think all of the members of the Historic District have to agree and then it has to go to the legislative body and then it has to be approved by the state. So there's at least three stages where, where that can run off the rails. But I don't think it's in our future. That, that's my singular articulation.
So I think what I would, one of the things with the Historic Districts, for not necessarily all of our Historic Districts, but many to most of them, they are already fairly dense. So Old West Side, Old Fourth Ward, there are already areas that are denser than other areas. And I think one of the things that I would like to see in here, so I don't mind, I don't, I actually think having, like, the Old West Side exist makes it easier to talk about having more dense housing because that's a beloved part of our city and we can say, look, these people live and the houses are close together and everybody lives and has gardens and it's lovely. But I do think that having some recognition that Historic Districts are a tool to prevent development, that having our parks helps or prevents development in some places and that there are, I think Commissioner Hammer Schmidt said, there are trade-offs and that if we are going to continue and we want as a community to have Historic Districts, which I think generally most people do, not everybody certainly, and I think that they absolutely are, they were initially created to preserve a type of housing and lifestyle because people didn't want different neighbors in. I'm trying to figure out how to say this. But I think that if we say right now that we want to strike Historic Districts, I think that in large part will doom this plan. I think that we, we do need to be realistic, but I think having a comment that says Historic Districts are historically X and do prevent, or maybe, you know, like, I think it's, I think we shouldn't just say, oh, Historic Districts, that's great, we should all have Historic Districts everywhere. And, and I do think we need to say that they are historically, that we, we've accommodated them because they are a part of our existing framework, but that moving forward, it's not going to be something we.
If that's our, if that's the plan, because this is a policy document setting what our plan is, I feel like saying that explicitly rather than just being silent on the issue and leaving people to suggest, so that maybe the amendment here is while existing Historic Districts will be maintained, right? Like, that's the lead-in to that. I think that that's important.
Is there support for that?
Oh, I mean, sure. I mean, the thing I just want to note is, as Commissioner Weatherby adequately and correctly described them, there were tons of people who were just excluded as a result of it. And that is what is missing. So we had some one talk earlier about exclusionary zoning for a single detached housing without recognizing its origins, how it was used. We're not projecting that onto the person who dwells in it. I dwell in a single-family detached house. It is, but to ignore how it came into being and to ignore that it's against the actual, I think, ethos of our comprehensive land use document, which is Ann Arbor for All, it just countermands that. So that's why I thought Commissioner Mills articulated very well to say it's a perverse outcome if we are thinking about continuing that. I think we can acknowledge that reality exists, but I don't, I personally want to be on the record, it wasn't an altruistic reality because when you talk, when you listen to the people who created the Old Fourth Ward, they will tell you they did it to stop apartments from coming into their neighborhood. That was it. So that's not an Ann Arbor for All.
Okay, so as long as we add context here that, that as long as we state that this does, like, prevent development and discuss the trade-offs of it and some of the history of it, then we can leave it as is. I'm seeing most people shaking their head, yes.
Can you put the history in, like, the history part?
That would be fantastic. I would love for it to be there. But that might be more work for Michelle.
It's also on the map. I mean, we, the timeline.
We do, we do have it on the map.
But it's, isn't it just like first Historic District created with like no other related?
Context.
Yes. But then it does talk about the Old Fourth Ward, which is, as Commissioner Weatherby said, beloved by many and it is dense, but it was also created to block housing.
And that's important. Okay. Can we move to 1.2?
Yeah. I don't, I think it had an outcome of blocking housing. I think not all Historic Districts would be in that category. Definitely some, but I don't think all districts.
I'll send you my primary source material.
No, no, I mean, the Old West Side and the Old Fourth Ward definitely, but then there have been other Historic Districts that I don't, I don't think that that was in the.
Oh, sure. Yeah, like, I love that we have the State Theater, right? Like, you know, if that sits in some Historic District, I'm glad that that's there, right? But I just think if it's presented neutrally, I think that does us a disservice, especially with our goals for Ann Arbor being for all. That's all.
I, you want to move us to 1.2? And I think that this is later on. But I just want to note, it, I'm concerned that when we use low-density, medium-density and high-density, which are all in 1.1, not have, not having a common understanding of what that means is going to set us up for failure.
Yeah, I would agree with that because the thing, like, maintain low-rise development, that's not a drastic change in scale from what exists, like, that.
Low-rise, what is low-rise?
That sets us up.
Well, it's now three stories, right? So.
Up to.
We don't know.
Okay. Okay, so did you submit that note? I have that in here.
I think that I did say a glossary needs to talk about what is medium or high-rise, but I, I can, medium and high-density, I don't know that I said the low-rise, but these are the, yeah, these are the things.
Yeah. Okay.
The second to last sentence, that's the word. It just feels like really awkward to me. Like, I get what it's getting at, but it's like medium and high-density housing encourage, can be encouraged along transit corridors and then this encourages, it's just like a lot of like encourage. So I don't know if that can be wordsmithed or like.
What word would you use? Because I think we don't want to say will because we don't know that.
Well, it feels like it's saying this, it feels like it's like going in circles and maybe it's supposed to, but it's like, multi-family transit or in development can be encouraged along transit corridors and then that encourages walkable mixed-use development. It's like mixed-use development is encouraging mixed-use, I don't, I guess I'm just.
I think the second encourage could be just create.
So it's saying that denser housing will help encourage mixed-use development.
It could just say create walkable mixed-use, oh, I see what you're saying.
Denser housing.
Because it says.
The mixed-use development also includes housing.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm getting stuck. I feel like it's kind of saying the same thing, but in a couple of different ways.
Okay. What's, this is page 52?
Yeah. And then the last sentence, this is really, this is also very nippy, but streamlined about the review process term.
Oh, I already put that in a note.
Cool.
Directly to the consultants for that.
Okay. And then are they sourcing photos? Like, what is that photo? Is that Ann Arbor? Do we know? I mean, I think it would be good to like.
I think most of the images are some that we sent them, but I can't scroll down on this.
Just like throughout, I noticed, like, they don't, they don't source them. I don't know if they're supposed to, but you can't really like, you know, it's kind of illegal to steal photos if they're not like crediting them.
They'll be, yeah, they'd be very aware of that.
So you want to know what street this is on?
Well, if it's in Ann Arbor, like, especially, yeah. Like, where is it?
Okay.
Because I'm like, oh, that's great, I could live next to that. Is that here? Is that in California? Where is it?
I actually would love to switch that.
That's fine, too.
Only that like it's a duplex, but it's like the size of a McMansion. Like, I think something smaller scale that shows you can actually have a modest duplex in a single-family neighborhood would be, make a better argument. Don else is going to be like, stop talking, Ellie. Okay. Can I move us to 1.2?
Yes. Oh, I'm not deterred.
Yes. Yes.
I have a general comment here that's going to apply to a lot of the strategies, which is that I feel like a strategy should be very specific and often they're quite general and so I don't, it doesn't hold up for me as a strategy. So in this one, two-thirds of the way down, when it says, develop a strategy that includes developer and contractor capacity incentives, incentives and regulatory issues, like, I have no idea what that means to develop a strategy that includes regulatory issues or any of it. So in general, I would love these, and this could just be a general comment to the consultant, that like, they should be actionable, the strategies, like specifically.
So that's, that's what I was talking about where sometimes we said it's too specific and sometimes it's too vague. So this is an example that's been pointed out as too vague. Just so you know, there is an additional level to this. Chapter six is implementation matrix and that is going to be very specific steps about what to do. So these, I guess it would go like goal broadest, strategy refined, implementation, like, tell us more or less exactly.
Yeah, it's almost like strategies are tools, right? Like, what are the tools at your disposal that would, or, no, that's not right. What are the, anyway.
Yeah.
Can I ask for consideration of a reader to the comp plan, especially when we get into this part? And what I mean by that is what you just articulated, we would start with the goals, then go here and then go there. And I don't know if that is a separate document that sits outside that maybe planning staff could just whip up that just says, hey, as you approach this document, here are some tips that will help you because you're going to read about the goals and be wondering, oh, what does that mean? Keep reading. Three pages later, we're going to explain it in a really detailed table and then keep reading if you encounter terms you don't know because there's a glossary. And then, you know, just as an accessibility sort of thing for the non-wonky folks.
When you all mentioned that at the beginning, this is sort of what I was thinking of when you were saying, like, we need to explain, like, how to read this document. I was thinking like, we need to explain goals, objectives, strategies, implementation matrix. So I think that that could be covered probably in like one spread at the beginning and the glossary as well. So, yeah, I guess we can talk about the level of detail that we want here. So just to be clear, this document, as we've seen, is challenging in that we are planning to 2050, so it has to be broad, but it also has to give us direction on what we should do. And so I agree that that's not super clear. We need to proactively develop a strategy that includes developers and contractor capacity incentives and regulatory issues, but I don't know how specific that should get right there.
Or we just strike it.
That sentence?
I mean, unless somebody can tell me what it means and why it's important, like, the first part and the part, the part before and after that, I understand. So if the, if the strategy is to diversify housing type, the first part is duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses and cottage courts. And the second part is more accessible housing. Both of those would achieve more diversity in housing type. I don't know how, yeah. So it's not clear to me what a strategy of incentive, like, I guess that means incentivizing developers to build different kinds of housing.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's trying to get throughout our own page where we talked about zoning is just one piece of a myriad of influences that result in housing being built or not. And capacity is going to be one of them. We could sit here and hope that we're going to, you know, quadruple our annual housing supply. That won't become a reality without a lot of other support. So I think this is specifically trying to get to recognizing that.
So I think, yeah, I think it has to be one degree more specific. So I think, yeah, I got, I think it has to be one degree more specific, because I think that the strategy for diversifying can't be to develop a strategy, right? It's like a plan, I have plans for plan, wait, what did he, what is it?
Okay.
I have, I have a concept of a plan. So I think it could maybe just say the city needs to incentivize developers and contractors, needs to build capacity and needs to
Address regulatory.
update regulatory hurdles or something like that.
Okay. For me, that's a good, that's a good takeaway, because what we probably won't get into here is what those incentives should be.
Right.
So we agree that it is a little more specific, but that, that's the next 25 years we got to figure out.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Um, 1.2, does this make?
Sorry, like, and maybe I'm the only one that thinks, I just feel like universal design is like shoved in here. And I don't know that it, like, sure, we need you, but it just, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like it's connected to me with missing middle housing.
Yeah, I think we can make a better connection there. And so like a good example would be, and I'm not an expert on this, but for example, the housing structures, if we follow the same exact formats, like, might not be a universal design. So like, one example could be that we discuss in one of our focus groups is like, um, a bedroom on the first floor, so that when you hit a certain age and you can no longer climb the steps, that you don't necessarily have to move. So like that, to me, that would be an example of how you could connect universal design to this missing middle argument. Does that make sense?
Sort of.
If you just think about it as diversifying housing type.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, universal design is important. I just felt like it was just sort of like tacked on to the end when most of this was talking about missing middle. If you make the connection stronger, then.
Okay. I have that here. Connect more strongly to housing.
Well, also in the title, if you talk about universal design first and missing middle, maybe do that in the paragraph.
Just swap them.
Just swap the order.
Yeah.
Or change.
Oh, I see.
Start with the strategy.
Okay. Okay. Um, that's all I have for this spread.
Ooh.
Yay. 54, page 54. So there's an, um, a suggestion here to strike this, and so if you wrote this, please speak up. Um, I would strike existing affordable units are an important resource that must be safeguarded to maintain affordability for residents and also support sustainability by saving embodied carbon.
That was me.
Yeah.
I think, I think there's a lot of nuance that you would need to understand to determine when it would make sense to save, to preserve existing units and when actually it might make sense to build new ones and let those go. So I think just kind of like a blanket assumption that we should always be preserving the existing affordable units. And I don't know whether those are city operated, like Ann Arbor Housing Commission affordable units or other ones. So I think there's something about we want to maintain affordability. We want to, we certainly want to maintain existing affordability, but I, and again, I think the embodied carbon statement is also pretty hard argument to make. I don't think it's always the case that it makes sense to keep an existing building if it's very old and drafty and, right?
Yeah.
So, um, I, yeah, since I'm talking, I'll just keep talking, then I'll stop talking. So I, I also wasn't sure about like waivers and incentives and, and then in the end, it all just came down to like reducing maintenance costs for sustainability. As it, it, it again, maybe felt like we were smashing together affordable housing and sustainability into one strategy, and this could be teased out perhaps.
So I was also present in this section, if you're ready.
Yeah.
Okay. So in 1.4, I think part of what I was hoping this would cover are things like, are there, and I don't know where we would put this, but are there places where we could waive the certain requirements in the UDC for affordable housing, like the open space requirement or some of the setback requirements? So this seemed to be focusing in a different direction.
So I guess that's, that's another question about like specificity, right? Because it is saying expedite the process for affordable housing, and that does typically mean.
Okay, so in 25 years, you're going to fit in reducing the open space requirements, the setback requirements in that policies and regulations section.
Well, I guess that's my question is, do we want to list those specifically? Is that what you're asking? If those things could be listed specifically here?
I don't, I personally don't need it to be that specific.
Okay.
But that is the direction, you know, because we have forced, from my point of view, the UDC forces affordable housing developers into PUDs.
Why would we want to hold, uh, market rate developers to a distinct open space standard than affordable housing units?
So that, that is a wonderful question for the legislative body to have. But for me, someone who houses unhoused people in their church every year, 25 of them, I want to do whatever we can to provide more housing so that the unhoused can be housed. And part of the challenge there is the regulatory hurdles that they have to go through in order to do that. And the fact that they have to build capital stacks using subsidies within the state to build that, which already makes their process more complicated. I don't understand why, as a community, we wouldn't look at that and say, for these specific cases. So if a market rate developer came and wanted to build affordable housing, they would be able to tap into that, much like the sustainability bonuses that we have in our UDC. So that, that's just how I'm thinking about it, as I'm talking to affordable housing developers and understanding the challenge that they have in our environment. So just passing that on.
Yeah, I guess, I, I get that, but the same benefits would get to attainable housing if we provided the flexibility across the board. I wasn't thinking that was a bad thing.
Mr. Leonard, you and I, I think, agree that we should do some unzoning.
Yeah. That's going to be my planning book, by the way.
Yes. Can I write the foreword?
Do you?
Please.
You feel clear with that? It is?
Okay. And then while we're here on 55, can I jump us over?
Um, let me see. I don't, well, um, we can get to 55 after.
Never mind, always.
I do see, like, I have a few bullet points here about how to handle embodied carbon that's mentioned here in strategy 1.3, and I think the main takeaway is people are saying, like, this is the first time you've mentioned it, you don't explain what it is. So I have put that in the glossary to be done. But if it's in the glossary, are you okay with it here? Do you want it explained here?
I was like, just strike it.
I would strike it, yeah.
Yeah.
What is it? I missed the.
The embodied carbon part.
To me, this feels a little bit like this is language that's supporting what we are already attempting to do.
Which is important for a comp plan.
And, and so that's good, but it does some things like by saving embodied carbon that feel a little too, like, what?
Right.
Like, in the middle of, I, I don't know, it, it just, um, it seems like we could streamline this.
Yeah. And we've had a couple of comments as we're going through this. I think one of the tensions that you're hearing is that, that I'm hearing from some of your feedback is those values, the affordability, sustainability, equity, we found them through our dialogue that they were really interrelated. And, and the housing, the strategies of housing can't not think about sustainability. But I think, I don't know, I'm struck by, that was really intentional for us, trying to recognize that transportation decisions has equity and sustainability measures. Housing policy has transportation and sustainability measures and equity measures. But I think generally those cross references are coming across as sort of clumsy to this board.
No, I mean, I think previously when we say, when we tie density to transit or, and affordability and sustainability, that makes sense to me. Here, maybe I would say we want all housing to be more sustainable. And also, we want to increase the amount of affordable housing, right? So I think what, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that preserving affordable housing is a good sustainability strategy for us. Maybe that's my question.
Exactly. I mean, that, that's what it gets back to.
But it's really good for affordable housing.
Yeah, it's to keep it from getting.
Really valuable.
Yes, exactly.
So let's separate those two just here.
Exactly. No, so that, the clarity on whether you mean income qualified affordable right here, because that's exactly right. Making sure that we buy those and keep them affordable when we can do that is very crucial for affordability. But it, that, the, the embodied carbon point is a point that one would, that is not specific to, and actually usually not necessarily relevant in the context of a discussion of should we buy lurid terrace? That's not why we were buying lurid terrace. And so it confuses, the embodied carbon point here makes me confused about which sort of affordable housing we're talking about. Because I do agree that preserving existing income qualified or whatever we're calling it, affordable housing is really important.
Well, that's an argument for like not tearing down anything to build anything more dense because we're saving embodied, I mean, it's kind of like what our last speaker was saying, like, so you could use it either way. So I think here, the most important part is like maintaining existing affordable housing units, and they should be safeguarded. And it doesn't really have anything to do with embodied carbon.
But then I would also say at the end, at the very end of 1.4, you, you don't just talk about existing like capital A affordable housing units. You talk, it talks about preserving naturally occurring affordable housing, which feels like if we want to do those things, those things fit together. And so I don't understand if we cut out embodied carbon from number 1.3, then what are we actually saying in 1.3 that we're not saying in 1.4?
And then maybe we combine them?
I, I just would not want us to, I, I'm nervous about the naturally occurring affordable housing. I completely agree that it exists. I buy the arguments about it, but it's a whole, it's part of a whole separate theory of how housing becomes affordable, which is market rate housing becoming affordable as it ages.
Yeah.
Which is a different argument than, argument than that we need to buy existing income qualified affordable use, units. So it, there's a lot mashed in here, and I'm not clear what the focus of the paragraph is. And I don't think we should use it even if we spell it out, naturally occurring affordable housing. It, it's not enough to, obviously we don't want to say NOAA, but we need to really define that and not just in a glossary because that's a, that's a theory about, I mean, some people would argue that that's not naturally occurring at all, that it exists by virtue of, you know, other, other things that have to go on. Like, it's, like, we don't have a whole lot of naturally occurring affordable housing right now in Ann Arbor because we've constrained supply so much that we're not, things are aging, but they're not actually becoming more affordable because we have such high demand. And so, um, this is just a very big theory point, I think. And so I'm not, and it also, again, it's confusing me about what is our, what is our goal in here?
What does it mean to offset city sustainability requirements? Yeah, there's a lot in these two paragraphs that should probably be more than two paragraphs and reworded.
Can I point out that a lot of folks that have been coming in and very afraid of losing their single family residential neighborhoods have been arguing that those, that's affordable housing. They're going to read this and not understand that it's talking about income qualified affordable housing.
Yeah, that's absolutely why. We have to distinguish between affordable and attainable. And when we mean income qualified, we have to write that in the text.
So 1.4, I think, means income eligible affordable housing.
Well, 1.32 does, doesn't it, as well?
1.3 should too. Existing income qualified affordable housing units are an important resource. Because I don't necessarily agree that existing attainable housing units, because attainable to whom?
Right.
Uh, you know, it's attainable to me because I've lived in it. I bought it. It was cheap because Pfizer had just left, and I don't pay high taxes on it. But it's really screwing Sarah, who lives in Ipsy and wants to move into Ann Arbor. So that one is harder.
She can't be on time.
So this is a lot of, I mean, this is a lot of what we're talking about, right? Is that people are worried that they will buy a single family home and replace it with four units. And they're saying, well, those four units, because they're new builds, might be more expensive than the house they replaced. But in 15 years, because this plan goes to 2050, does it become naturally occurring affordable housing for more people? Because there's now four units there.
Yeah, well, we would really need to explain that theory. I don't think we can just put it there. And it would also.
But I'm just saying, are you all on board with that's, that's a lot of, that's a concern, but that is also a sort of a part of this longer term plan, is that yes, more density might be more expensive when it's first built, because it's a brand new build.
That's the part of the explanation upfront and the rationale that needs to be beefed out and explained.
Okay.
NOAA should be explained there, along with the other literature that's showing that building more supply will have an effect on the, on the availability and affordability of housing.
In the long term, which is what we were saying.
And in the, and in the short term, in the way that I've heard you explain it before, Michelle, is that it's cheaper because there's more units there than there were before.
Cheaper per unit.
The, the per unit cost, even if the sales price is high on each of those four things, the, um, the, the relationship of land to unit, we have gotten cheaper. We've gotten more fit. You did it, I can't do it. You did it really well.
I don't recall if that was me or not.
It was you. It was you. It was at the Low Bupa Town Hall.
Okay.
But the, these two bullet points are not speaking to NOAA, and they're not speaking to less expensive, small, single family homes. They're speaking to publicly subsidized less than workforce housing. So I think there's some confusion because we're using affordable too promiscuously. That's not the right word.
Loosely?
Too loosely.
Yeah.
And maybe we need to be a bit more careful, because if we use it loosely, people will read it to mean what they want it to mean and then, and then say, well, why aren't you letting me protect my house? It's affordable. It's existing affordable. And you just said right here, we should be protecting it and safeguarding it.
Sure. Okay. I do want to be clear, though. People are making an argument as if they have no right as to when and whether they want to sell their home there.
I know.
Yeah. So there is a lot of like, my house will get bulldozed immediately. And it's like, well, you have private property rights if you want to sell your home or not.
Yeah, and they may at some point.
And they may want to.
In my neighborhood, that's been a concern where people are really upset about somebody on another property, but when then they go to sell their house.
They do the same thing.
They're really upset that it's not going faster and there are more opportunities and the price isn't higher. Or, so I think it, right, we want to make sure that people understand that they don't have to sell their house if they don't want to and that.
I think they're, they're worried that the pressure will be too great, right? If, that they might get an offer they can't refuse.
Well, then they get an offer they can't refuse.
And that zoning is contributing to that, because we're making land more valuable by allowing more density on their, on their, on their land.
So on, specifically on section 1.3 and 1.4.
Yes.
The, the one point of clarification I had was in the final sentence, the city should consider innovative solutions such as waivers and incentives.
Mm-hmm.
We've been, we've often talked about incentives, bonuses, things of that nature of simplifying the zoning code, right? Is this specific not necessarily to zoning, right? The city should consider innovative solutions to reduce the cost of maintenance and repair. Is that intended to be something that is zoning related or something that is like a separate program that the city should?
I think it's getting to this point that we've been touching on, which is that zoning is one tool and that there are things outside of that that we could explore.
Okay. Okay, got it. Oh, thank you. So it seems like the, if I were to summarize kind of the commission's sentiments on 1.3 and 1.4, it seems that we just need to be very specific about what affordable actually means, right? Of, is affordable going to be the income constraint?
Always use that qualifier.
Yes.
Income qualified or income managed.
Yep. Oh, turn, turn your mic on, by the way. So, yep, agreed, that we should be using the qualifiers to be specific, so that there isn't any misinterpretation. Again, I come back to how this plan gets used in the future, right? With people kind of pointing at specific sentences and saying, well, yeah, how it gets operationalized. So do you think you have enough on 1.3, 1.4?
Yes.
Cool. All right, let's keep moving on to 1.5 now.
Um, do I have anything for 1.5? Let's see.
The bottom of 37.
Yeah.
How likely is this to actually happen? The city should regularly calibrate student and housing goals with University of Michigan enrollment and employment levels.
Yeah, sorry, I got a lot, I got a lot. Whenever the university came up and like partnering with the city, I'm just like, is that really, is this rational? Like, does this sentence even make sense in here?
Well, I would agree that we should do this.
I mean, sure, but like, that, that's, I think that's people's, like, they're like, the university keeps adding like all of these students and they don't work with the city to blah, blah, blah. Like, sure, of course we should, but like, is that ever going to actually happen? It just doesn't feel real. It just doesn't feel realistic to me.
I, I think that there actually is a lot of coordination that occurs. It just may not actually have the outcomes that we think are measurable, but a lot, but the, I think the intent of this, to say that there should be regular calibration is something that is normative and should occur. They are inextricable, right? From the toning down relationship. So I'm okay with this sentence being in here. Commissioner Hammer, but are you saying that?
No, I mean, I'm like, whatever, but sorry.
I get Sarah's point, like the should is on the wrong foot. It's more like the university should cooperate with the city.
Maybe that is more what it is.
We can't, we can't make actions for an outside agency to-
Right.
Yeah, we can only speak-
If we could just not use the should, if there's another word we could use that doesn't make it feel like-
It's on the city to do it.
It's on the city to do it, right? Like, we try all the time.
But I, I don't know that how we collaborate with them. They can be distinct. Should we regularly look at our, their student, our student and housing goals related to them as an institution? They may frankly not participate in that, but you know, one of the things we know from their plan is they don't put projections about what their enrollment is. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't monitor that when we're revisiting our plan to see how our plan should reflect them because we've already established we're very dependent upon them, um, not only as an institutional economy, but as a housing market driver.
But how can you monitor if they're not going to be forthcoming with it?
Well-
They publish data.
They publish data.
So we can, we just, we read it after the fact.
Well, could you put monitor in the sentence? Cause that does feel like something we could do.
Yeah, like locally, the city should regularly-
Instead of calibrating it with, or, I don't know.
Instead of like, as if we're, you know-
Make it more clear that it's an input for us to do our planning.
Yes.
That would be great.
Can I just, one super quick question about, can you check on the existing subsidized housing map? Um, cause I see Ann Arbor Housing Commission, like Avalon has a lot of housing, are they reflected in here?
They are, but the unit count-
Is it in the vouchers?
Yeah, but the unit counts are going to be smaller. So the whole Grove is 50, you know, next to the years.
Right, but they're all, I mean, Avalon's all over. I just didn't know if they, if it was, they were counted in vouchers or low income housing tax.
Yeah, they have, they have it all.
Okay.
So my comments are on 55 in the precedents box. I thought these were, this was the one place in the whole document where I was like, why is this here? Like my own personal reaction, I know a lot of people have had that, but this was the first time I had it. And I would have loved to hear about co-living housing that's already in the city. We have the formation of a community land trust that is coming forth inside the city. And I don't know about the, the teacher housing thing. I don't think that's going to ever become a Ann Arbor thing, but, so, so if there are ways to just use local things, and if not, can we just get rid of it? Cause this was my first, like-
Let's get the document shorter, let's get rid of it.
Okay, great, thanks.
Does everyone agree with that? Okay. So this is when I think they're just showing examples of how other communities have partnered with local and regional partners.
I, it, like I said, I just had that reaction. So I can be a singular voice, which can be ignored.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I don't really understand why it's there. I mean, they're handy, but this is, is that, are they handy for our document or are they handy at the time when it says to implement strategy across local and regional partners? Like, it feels like more like it's a planning document for-
Possibly in five years, we're going to be like, okay, how should, who should we coordinate? Or like, how should we coordinate this? And then you would look at this and be like, why don't you look into the Chaplain Housing Trust and get more examples? Maybe.
I'd probably Google it.
Okay. Yeah, then we can, we can get rid of it.
I mean, I saw, we were hearing a lot of comments, uh, uh, public comments about the community land trust. And so actually I thought that this was the way to, we, like, oh, now I see where that is mentioned in, like, and so it's not the, it's not the local example necessarily. It's like, how might it work in another place? And that allowed me to see the parallel here. So, but I don't, I'm not going to die on that one.
I am on the side of trying to simplify the plan if it has a material kind of gravitas towards the interpretation. I mean, because it's kind of feels like a textbook where it's giving different examples, but how accretive is it to the, the kind of intent and goals and strategies of the overall plan, right? These are great, great examples. They can be in the toolkit of things. I just, I'm of the mindset of reduction of words that aren't accretive to that overall goal, will improve clarity and accessibility. Remember, I think our internal, um, or, or discussions were about how we make this document more approachable. The more words there are, the less approachable. I look at this page and I kind of look at just the number, so I'm on the side of actually reduction, so.
I, I'm totally with you. I'm just curious for everyone else, if there's a place where we want to mention a community land trust in here, because I think that this might be the only place. And so maybe that needs to be worked into the description of 1.5.
Okay.
As a possible strategy or a partner to collaborate with.
Yeah, and I, and I agree that that reflects a lot of the comments that we have heard. Um, and then so, so to the extent that we are, again, strengthening and reflecting the community feedback that we are getting, I'm, I'm supportive of that. As for this particular section, I'm, I would think that trying to create brevity, um, yeah.
Do we need to take a vote?
I don't think so. I think there's agreement to strike it.
To remove? Okay. And add community land trust to 1.5 as a potential partner? Okay.
A, a mention of it, yep.
Chair.
Yes.
Could we take a, a, a history break or should I just leave the, um, just go individually? And also I just wondered, I wanted to do a check in on time because it's been three and a half hours.
Yeah.
We're not going to be here another three and a half hours, so we're not halfway.
So if you want to think about the schedule, we do have, um, sort of like an extra meeting at the very end where it was just meant to wrap up all of our final edits. So potentially that you could use that as a filler, like if you just want to finish housing tonight and then we'd have to republish maybe because we told people we'd go over these next sections, but like, there is also sort of a buffer meeting if you all want to decide tonight when you want to stop and what material you want to get.
Or we can speed up. I don't necessarily want to, I like that extra meeting, but.
Okay.
Why don't we take five minutes real quick, just to take a breather? And then let's reconvene, think about your energy levels and then let's, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. We'll be back in five at 9:10.
Okay, we are moving on to now page fifty-six and fifty-seven. And now we are into strategy, support all residents accessing quality housing and mitigate displacement for low and moderate income. Ms. Bennett?
Okay, the first note that I have here is actually... Well, the first grouping I have is about inventory of current projects on two-point-two. There were a few comments about how like, why are we just saying what we do? Should there be more here?
I was one of those comments.
Same.
I mean...
Three.
Okay, there we go. Do you want to speak to how you'd like to see this updated?
Well, I just, like, I was suggesting, like, if we're already doing this, because it says we should continue, like, can we name those programs? Like, are they working? Like, I just felt like it was, didn't really say much.
I also thought if the, if the bold-faced strategy is to increase, then it's more than just continuing, it's doing something new.
Yeah. Okay.
The fact that it's just one sentence.
Yeah.
It, I've got this later on, too. Like, I feel like when we make some things very long and some things extremely short, it sends message even if that's not an intention, so.
Okay, I think if we list out some of these programs and discuss those, that this would beef up that section. Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Because we could maybe do those programs like we have the other programs in the boxes that we didn't like, because they were not our programs, but maybe we could put our programs in some of those boxes.
Ooh.
Or similar boxes.
But don't, there's a chance that we don't know the exact outcomes of every single program that we've had, right?
Yes.
So just warning you now. Okay.
Got it.
I think the next big grouping here is parks, so that would be fifty-eight, pages fifty-eight and fifty-nine.
Got it.
Wait, sorry. The "Did you know?" box, of which there's only two, I just want to make a general comment that, like, I would admit these boxes and try to work them in elsewhere unless we're going to be more consistent with, like, the call-out. Like precedent, we have a bunch. Did you know there were two? So I would say either make more, or just, if there's a way to, like, integrate this into the text, because it just sort of felt like...
Well, we've gotten rid of a lot of the precedent.
Have we?
Well, no, but it's interesting. If the goal is to mitigate displacement, then strategies for mitigating displacement should be in our, should be in the strategies as opposed in the "Did you know?"
Yeah.
Like, those are anti-displacement policy solutions.
Yep, got it. So the idea would be to, on the "Did you know?", integrate them into the text in the body of two-point-one through two-point-three.
Okay.
Cool. All right, let's keep moving on to goal number three on parks. Right.
Um, where to start here? So someone had suggested striking the sentence on page fifty-eight, "Some of the densest areas of the city, such as downtown, have limited park space. This provides an opportunity for activity and connection along the Huron River corridor." I mean, I summarized that, but that was the area that they wanted removed. Does anyone want to speak to that?
Well, aren't, aren't, I didn't quite know how to interpret it, but how I interpreted it in my head was, oh, this is talking about the tree-lined trail.
Oh, no.
I didn't, I didn't take it as, this means you should, you know, make a park in downtown, but rather that we should enable people who live downtown to connect to green space and enable people who live on their own side to get downtown faster.
Yes, I don't think that this is trying to relitigate the park downtown.
No, no, I did not think that at all.
Yes, just to be clear.
Yeah, because I heard, because I read, strengthen activities and connections.
Yeah.
So maybe if we mentioned the tree-lined trail in there, that could be good. Yeah. And also the thing that, that, that got made, you know, on Main Street, that big tunnel that happened, we could mention that we made that one, and I don't know what it's called.
You know what it's called?
We made a tunnel.
Yeah, the tunnel that's across from the, you know...
Yeah, Barton, the Barton...
Barton something?
Barton Dam, isn't it?
Argo Dam.
Argo.
It, I don't, well, I mean, it's, it's where the train station is, where it dumps.
It's the B-to-B trail underpass by Argo Dam.
That's it.
Yeah.
The B-to-B, yeah, the B-to-B under, so we want to talk then about the B-to-B trail and the tree-lined trail. Those are the connections to strengthen.
Especially since the tree-lined plan is part of the tome of comp plans.
Mm-hmm.
Good work.
Okay. Three-point-one, there's also a comment about, how are we defining park quality and how are you defining underserved? So again, this is a different example, right, of what we mean by underserved in this context is about, like, access to parks, which might be different if we're talking about underserved when we talk about housing supply. Do we want to talk about park quality? There's a few questions that are sort of about this, like...
I made one of them.
Okay.
Or a couple of them, and I think this maybe comes later. We say focus on quality, and at some point, maybe it's not on this page, but somewhere else, it's like, focus on quality, not quantity, but then this map is only showing big parks, quantity rather than quality? And so I was really confused, and who determined that five acres was the right threshold?
Yeah.
And I, so, yeah, and it sounds like, it looks from the things, like, other people had that same thing. I really, I really like the crosshatching of, like, the places where there, where people don't have cars, because then you would definitely want to be able to walk to things, like, parks that are close, and, yeah.
But why only parks that are over five acres? Why are we only doing ten minutes?
Is that from Parks Department, or do you know why that distinction was made?
I don't, it might be just because it's like a certain, like, a certain size, like...
Oh, from that DNR, yeah.
It also looks inaccurate. There, there's a huge, what is that? The golf, U of M golf course is light green, parks under five acres?
But it's excluding golf courses and cemeteries.
But that, I didn't, I didn't read that to mean that, then they go in the parks under five acres, maybe we just exclude, like, they should just not exist on the map.
Or they should be a different...
Why are they there at all?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see, yeah. Does that make sense?
Are they there?
Yeah, the golf course is there.
Golf courses. There's something else going on with this map.
There's big green zones that look bigger than five acres, so I'm trying to figure out what that is. I think Sarah's right, I think those are actually golf courses and cemeteries, which were just bumped into the light green, but they actually should be either a different color or eliminated because they aren't available to the public as a park space. Actually, cemeteries are, anyway.
So the feedback is, can we get that graphic just looked at one more time, just to ensure accuracy?
Yeah, thanks.
So you want, do, I just want to be clear, do you want public and private golf courses distinguished? Because some public cour, we have public courses that are inaccessible, are you trying to somehow differentiate between park facilities that have, like, a cost associated with it?
I, I just don't want a giant golf course listed as a color that corresponds in the key to something that says park under five acres.
Okay.
I guess it depends on, like, what are, what story are we trying to tell with this map? They're trying to show access, level of access, right, to larger...
Walkable, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, we can look at the legend.
But I feel like there was another map mapping parks. Maybe not.
There's a map that, that maps natural features, public natural features.
Oh, sorry, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking the walk score map. That's not, that shopping center is not parks.
So the note is, you think there's some inaccuracies about what are under and over five acres?
I think it's, no, I think it's just that, I think that their legend is weird. They put in the dark green that they're excluding those cemeteries and golf courses, and so they...
But they're showing in the light green.
But they're showing it in light green, so they could move that note, but it's also just, it, let's, but...
Can we just get some clarification on that? We just want to make sure that, yeah, the messaging is clear. Also, just, this one is, this is a little picky, sorry. At the same time, the very large quantity of public owned land and the age of many facilities makes maintenance and capex a challenge. My preference, this is in the middle of three-point-one or the second to last sentence, just, I don't think the qualifiers of, like, extreme or very large are necessary in this kind of a document. The very large quantity of public owned land, just the large, I think is sufficient, just from a, it's a, supposed to be kind of a, more of a formal document saying, something that's very large is not necessary. There's better succinct ways to do that. There's a few places where it says extreme, or extremely low, or very large, and so I just call it large, or low. Aside from that, on three-point-two, I think, just, are we planning on keeping this note in here? The plan does not replace, or is it, is that going to stay, or is that getting removed?
I think that's up to you all.
To keep what?
The, the thing highlighted in blue, this plan does not replace...
I'm guessing that the, here is where I'm going to be brutally honest, and see, I'm not looked at the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, but not all open spaces, open space, or not, parks and open space are different things, and I'm guessing that plan goes into much greater detail about the different kinds of parks and open space, and this is pretty vague and not going into that detail, so if we remove that connection, then we need to beef this up quite a bit. If we keep the connection in our, that that's another plan that, then we should keep the note here to draw that connection.
I, I think having that connection is important, so the mention should be done, and maybe just not in a way that's like, no, maybe it can be integrated a little bit better.
Yeah, I really thought that that, that was like a placeholder, because it looks drafty.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's graphically weird, but content-wise, it's important.
It's super important, and I, yeah, I would have a call-out for, and this is not the only place. We've talked about a couple of other things, too, where we were referencing other plans, and I think that that would be real helpful.
Okay, yep. Anything else on three-point-one? Actually, we did have a...
Yeah, I'll beat on that. A call, a call-out, this would be a good place to add a call-out box that just summarizes quickly what that plan does, and how it...
The pros plan?
No, the park, yeah, park, yeah.
But then should we do that for all?
I don't, not, not much more than a couple sentences, but just kind of highlights.
That one's changed, just for your info, too, that one, they do change that every five years. So you can say what it's about and the fact that it's done every five years, but like, I think we've, I think we've adopted at least two, yeah.
We can broadly state what it does, but like you said, because every five years, they do like a massive inventory where they write the condition of every single thing in every single park, and so we would just be saying...
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else here?
Put that in there instead of the part, get rid of the quote, and just put the box.
Quotes are gone.
The quotes are all gone.
Quotes are gone.
Gotcha. And everyone's okay with, at a high level, continue to maintain high-quality park recreations, align with land use patterns, and focus on quality, equity, comma, and ecological benefit in the development of new open space. Everyone's okay with the large, broad strokes of that strategy.
Mm-hmm. If you all want Oxford commas, let us know now, because the city actually uses AP or something that doesn't have Oxford commas, so...
Oh!
Whatever is consistent.
Use the commas.
Oxford commas.
I'm a pro Oxford.
I'm a pro Oxford.
Well, you're the senior planner, so you get to decide.
At least do it the same.
Okay.
I, I think in answer to Chair Lee's question about the general equity thing, I think I am in agreement with it as long as we maintain that the density is going to be citywide, because my neighborhood has access to a lot more parks than other neighborhoods, and I actually want more people to be able to have access to what we have access to, so that we are not participating in opportunity hoarding. So as long as we keep that trajectory, then I, I agree with that statement, but if somewhere we're going to change that, then I think we are going to actually embed opportunity for some and exclude opportunity for others, because we're going to deny density in places where there's an abundance of parks.
Are you referring to the sentence where it says particularly in high-density areas that do not have...
No, I was actually just answering Chair Lee's general question, because he was asking a high-level question.
Okay.
For this spread, do we all agree?
Oh.
And I was saying, yes, as long as we also continue with density citywide.
Oh, okay.
Because if we exclude some neighborhoods, neighborhoods that have access to rich parks like mine, then, right, and then we don't densify, then we're not actually saying what we're going for in the goal. I just want us to be consistent, that's all.
Okay.
One, one final question for me before we move on to goal number four. I'm looking at the quote on the, the middle of, like, that yellow banner.
We're removing all quotes. We decided last meeting.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you, yeah, 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 just, just from, yeah, okay, great.
Sorry.
No, 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 thanks, yeah, 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 all right, let's move on to goal four, encourage walkable connected neighborhoods with access to basic needs and amenities.
Yeah.
Okay.
Page, so this is page sixty.
Yep.
I mean, I think that these notes are small enough that we could make, if you see the three here on page eight, the bottom three, page sixty, we could discuss, or I brought up the, there was a few about the San Diego example and removing that, which is in line with our other comments.
Yeah.
We'd like to remove that.
I don't know if I sent it or where to find it, but I think I wanted to change communities to neighborhoods in four-point-one.
Oh, and Sarah does, too.
Um, yes, is that not listed here?
Okay, it might be, I'm...
Okay.
Third thing on page nine, right here.
Oh.
Can you make sure your mic's on?
That's Sarah's.
Sarah.
Oh.
Commissioner Mills, yeah, perfect, thanks.
What Ellie was talking about is, like, the second part that says page sixty on page nine.
Yeah, top of page nine, third thing down, thanks.
I'm just going to, like, return to my, if we're going to say things are, were historically under-invested and, like, under-utilized, I want to define it and explain or show where.
Was there agreement to remove the San Diego example?
Yes.
Yeah, I was also wondering if there's another... The precedent, like, what their program provides didn't really match the suggestion that was being given to me, I think, when I read it, which now I'm tired. So is there a program that, if there is a different precedent, great, otherwise, yeah, just cut it, but I don't like...
Yeah, and while I really do appreciate the, kind of like, pointing at other communities and what they've done, it's, unless the, the comprehensive plan is saying that that is something we should do, I think, like, it creates kind of like a normative, this ought to be, we should look at programs that, you know, does thirty-day reviews and incentivizes affordable housing near transit, unless that is kind of normally, normatively being prescribed, I think it makes it more confusing, right? So if it's just a "Did you know?", it's like, well, thank you. Yeah, 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 so, so again, I think it needs to be accretive to direction, right?
Okay.
That said, this is the one place, you're going to kill me, but "Did you know?" portion, I think is actually super helpful, but also...
Well, that's specific to theirs.
Yeah, 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 and so I think that's where the "Did you knows" on the references to the different points.
To other plans.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that, that should be used a little bit more to create kind of like directional points towards existing other plans. The only kind of like substantive comment I have is, if Vision Zero is focused on twenty-minute neighborhoods, then why do we have ten and fifteen all over the document, right? And so to create kind of like a certain level of consistency, or, or at least we should have a good, you know, explanation kind of behind it, there, but just, you know...
Yeah. I've seen different departments are using different ones, and we're pulling from all of them, so we'll have to find one consistent one.
Well, I don't know that you can, like, parks is, there's a ten-minute walk, I mean, parks is ten minutes, but between the fifteen and twenty...
And this one is twenty, right.
Or access to, like, actual, like, or basic goods or things of that nature, okay. Well, in so long as we have alignment on that, but I do like the "Did you know?" on that, just...
Yeah, and I agree, like, the "Did you know?" could also be like, did you know Ann Arbor is already doing this to help people not lose their homes, or, you know, like, it fits in a lot of the things we've already talked about.
Yep.
Okay. Can I go to four-point-three?
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry, he was scrolling past.
Four-point-three, remove collector streets and corners, please.
So this is my example of where we want specificity and where we want fakeness. I mean, people are, people are a little nervous about having commercial uses in their neighborhood, and as people who have to write the zoning ordinance to figure out where they should go, we were talking to the consultants about what, what would be some criteria that we could work with later, which are, we don't want to zone for something eventually that's not going to be successful, so we want to think about the street typology, we want to think about the size of the lot, where it's located in the neighborhood, so these were just, these were meant to be broad directions for us when we want to incorporate commercial uses into a residential area, but I, I have two comments to remove it.
I mean, do you want to go, Donell?
No, I'm going to wait.
I mean, I think we're, we're already saying limited, small-scale commercial, aligning use restrictions with community desire and need, that feels already very, pretty specific, and I just think, I mean, everybody loves Jefferson Market, neither a collector street nor a corner, so I just don't know if we want to back ourselves into that kind of restriction here, there might be other...
Well, maybe it could just say, it should just say, like, some ways that you could consider regulations for this are...
But isn't it already, I mean, I guess the way it's described, it's almost being described like, more like a daycare, like a special exception use, as opposed to something which has a physical, like, an area, I don't know, but doesn't like that idea.
So, yeah, there's two comments to remove it, you all, if you want less specificity on this particular area.
Or different specifics.
Or different, yeah, right.
Yeah, I just, I was one of the comments to remove the collector streets and the corner, certainly because of Jefferson Market, but we have an elementary school in our primarily residential neighborhood, and I could imagine a corner store being directly across the street, or right at the parking lot of the school, but it's not a corner store, even though that's how we, we tend to talk about them. So I just, I feel like, because this is a twenty-five-year look ahead, I'd like to give you more freedom to permit these than less freedom to permit these.
Or it could be qualified with something like typically-along, but I would also be in support of removing it as well, so, so that you could have some level of wiggle room, I just don't want there to be a total, yeah, unflexibility.
I'm fine with that, we're just, we're going to continue to face the same tension with residents, it's like, the less detail there is here, the more they're going to be concerned about, so what, right next door to my house, there's going to be something, are there any, right, what are the, what are the criteria and regulations going to be around this? And we don't know, the answer is, we don't know yet, so we are just trying to put in broadly, like, here's some things to consider. We can continue to consider them whether they're written here or not, so if we want to remove them, that's fine, I just want you to know that anytime we remove more information and create anything that's less, anything that's vague is, is how we're getting more comments from.
Yeah, I was wondering how the strike people, strike voters, would feel about typically, the addition of typically-along?
Yep.
It feels restrictive as it is, right, because it's focusing on local commercial uses in neighborhoods, aligning use restrictions with community desires and needs, and then the design comes around that, in a corner lot still has a neighbor on each side, so I, I don't see how we solve the problem of, oh, is it going to be next door to me? Even if it's at a corner, it's going to be next door to you.
Yeah, that one's more about visibility, but yes.
Sure, but, but so, so it doesn't solve that, if that's the primary angst. I think we're not talking about weed shops here, so, you know, we'll know...
Well, people might, and people will bring that up, I'm sure.
Well, weed shops have their own set of criteria, they can't be so close to schools, they have to, you know, have whatever other restrictions that are in the U-D-C, so I think that's what people are concerned about, is, you know, a light commercial could be that, or it could be a car repair that, or a, I don't know, a yoga shop that is quite loud.
Right, which is... Yoga, they're so loud.
Which is why I think, if it were me, I would say, this is not what I, it's, again, getting late, right, it is past my bedtime, sorry, I was not going to, going to repeat that, but, I have the question, I wrote the question, like, what do we mean by local commercial uses? Because that's going to have to be sorted out, and if we don't do it now, it'll have to be in the future, and being clear to people, like, we would need to sort out things, like, what count as local commercial uses, and whether there are location restrictions or spacing, I mean, right, you could also say, like, I don't want to have five businesses, like, you could imagine that that might be something that would need, well, the reality is, it will need to be sorted out at some point. like, you could imagine that that might be something that would need, well, the reality is, it will need to be sorted out at some point. And so either we can say it now and be very explicit that we're gonna say it now, I, that's, I would vote to like, say the kinds of things that we know we're gonna have to sort out, so that at least people know that we are not anticipating a free for all.
Can.
Bars, bakeries, daycares.
Well, that's the thing, there's, how many land uses do you think are in the U D C?
Um, healthy smattering.
Pages and pages and pages.
They would have to be sort of grouped, like, you know, professional services or something like that, or like restaurants and, like, we're not gonna list, you know, local commercial means these fifty land uses.
Dance studio.
This language is getting at the answers, the planning commissioner more interested in us listing out what the questions will be.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I think so, cause then that will help with these.
Points to Jefferson Market, it's like, this is what we're thinking, are there other examples, like Argo, the Argus?
Yeah, Washnaw Dairy.
Can we name specific places in a plan, I mean, do we have, can we say, like, here's some examples of the things we're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
That are happy examples where it's actually working.
Big City Bakery, yeah, that's a good idea.
And I think it's fine to say we.
A lot of those are zone commercial, I just wanna be clear.
But they fit in a neighborhood and they.
I know.
Yeah, and so we're heading in that direction.
That's the tension here, though, or this, part of the reason we're talking about here is like, one of the things is, we wanna open up that opportunity everywhere in the city, and that's the tension that Michelle's naming here, right? Is that we can just state that, and that's, that's sort of how I got in trouble with low rise residential, right? Because when we said we're adding density, we intend to add density to your neighborhoods, that is a very different vision to some people than other people, and so, um, yeah, I.
I'm thinking, we're talking here about small commercial operations that actually serve the neighborhood.
With no parking lots.
Yes.
Because a lot of people can walk, you know, a lot of the business is from folks who are walking there. There are a handful of examples around, whether they're, I mean, most people probably have no clue what they're zoned for, but they know that they're there and they're serving the neighborhood and they fit. I think we could talk about citing neighborhood serving commercial things, and we need to figure out what the criteria will be through policy, but here are some examples of what we're thinking.
Okay, that's a good direction.
Image picture can say a thousand words.
Examples and questions.
Yeah.
Examples and questions, but also not everybody is gonna be okay with everything that could possibly be there. I mean, I live right across from an R four B zoned commercial oper, I mean, it is a commercial operation, and it used to be a tattoo parlor, which now would be okay, but forty years ago, maybe not so much, because that was considered a little, and then, you know, could have been a gun store at some point, which now we would say, no, that wouldn't be inappropriate, but I'm just saying, like, now it's a jewelry store, so, like, I, I think, I think just saying to people, well, it's only gonna be something like Jefferson Market is also not being realistic, that, that I think we need to be not, not scare people, because chances are, these are gonna be awesome, but also that it's not, like, like if we say that, if we're too specific or not specific enough, I mean, it's the same old thing of like, if we say it's only gonna be a bakery that starts at ten in the morning and doesn't have grease and doesn't have, you know, like.
You just eliminated donuts.
Personally, I would like to have a donut shop across from me, but.
Plus one.
Although I do actually have a donut shop not too far from me, that is in another, I mean, the Washnaw Dairy, so, um, but, but yeah, I mean, I think it's a little bit hard, cause it's being too specific or not specific enough.
Questions and examples.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sounds great, let's get to the meat.
This is the end of the housing and neighborhoods.
Yes.
We're one third of the way there.
Yeah, all right.
So, that might be a good reminder, sorry, I just took my, um.
No.
We're not all gonna get exactly what we want from this document, there's nine of us, there's council, there's the public, there's staff. Let's try to keep our comments, where we need discussion, we need discussion, but if it's something you can live with, maybe we forego the heavy discussion on that, and we really focus on the areas that we need to change. Does that seem fair?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so what's the sixty-three, so let's go to sixty-four, and I think there was a comment here, though. Same thing with the objectives, right, same comments here, is that those could be tied into strategies.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I back up to sixty-three real quick, cause this for all of the openings, I think, is just a general comment, they're not chapters, when it says the goals in these chapters include, I think I sent you that comment, I just think that needs to be reworded. And I just wanna make sure, I understand what they're trying, like, the goal is making Ann Arbor more affordable, and I understand trying to like carry these through, but I just, some of these are not great, yeah. Some of the connections under the Affordable Equitable Sustainable Dynamic, particularly, I would say, in this one, so just maybe like relooking at those and making sure that's really how we want.
Do you just want the icons instead?
I had that too, the values and the goals aren't.
No, I mean, I like trying to connect it to affordability, equity, sustainability, and whatever dynamism. I just don't know if it's always, like, the equitable one here doesn't really seem like it's connected to the goals I wrote, I can't remember why I wrote that, um, like the sustainability thing, the circular economy thing keeps popping, like, I just, I don't feel like they're balanced enough, I mean, so maybe, or maybe, yeah, we just don't say them, if they're not gonna like do much.
Yeah, I think I had a comment where I wasn't sure that the values and the goals really tied together, and maybe doing like, take the little icons, if we're set on the icons, which I don't like, some of the icons, just.
I have that note in here.
Is like, maybe put the little like icon next to where it says in the text, that that could be tied to our affordable value.
So one thing is when we get to the implementation matrix, all of those steps will have a column that says which of these they meet, Affordable Equitable Sustainable Dynamic, so it might not, so it could be in the text, but it will also be in that, that's gonna be more like a, well, starting as an Excel sheet, it'll be a table where we can put which values it means.
Okay.
Well, there is a remove entire section thing here, so.
Yes.
Is that, it says page sixty-three through seventy-one.
Because we had this, yeah, we had this discussion at the table, and we basically gave feedback to the consultants that we did not agree with this entire section, and yet it is here.
Is that just, just for my clarification, is that goal, goal five, or, cause that, that goes through page seventy-one, goal six and seven are also in this section, but you would not strike those?
No, I mean, I specifically wanna strike the first goal, goal five, but we can talk through the, the other two, whether we want to keep those, because I think there are some things that are going to be difficult for us to support, even in a long view, in a twenty-five year view. So that was, that was my feedback, let's just.
So, my rationale for goal five and the corresponding is that we heard, I heard loud and clear from this body that you do not wanna use land use as a limiting factor to grow business. You don't see that as an effective strategy to use our land use policy to try and attract, preserve jobs in this community. And that's, so our land use districts are gonna reflect that. The question I would pose back is that, that can still, we can still recognize that it's a goal of us to support tax base generation from non-residential, that we want to support entrepreneurial businesses without us doing so through land use restriction. So we can absolutely remove those sections in that goal, but I just wanted to clarify that the reason you're seeing it is not because we didn't hear that message, we heard it loud and clear, that is, and we have made those changes to our land use categories. I still think that land use plans should be holistic, things that make our community what it is are not just housing. But if this board doesn't agree with it, again, we've been really leaning into housing, if you want this to be more of a housing focused plan, then maybe that's part of the policy discussion we wanna present to city council is, don't spend your resources on this other, on these other items.
I'll weigh in here, I guess, for, for me, actually, economic diversification is important in the long range for twenty fifty, resilience is important, if we are growing seventy-five or forty-five thousand households, I think that's kind of the range from the twelve to eighteen hundred target that we had annually for twenty-five years, then having a discussion about socioeconomic wage mobility, as well as the, for, for folks to be able to, you know, create and have diverse types of jobs, to capture innovation, and to continue to encourage export economies is going to be an important item for the continued vibrancy slash attractiveness of Ann Arbor, right? So there's, there's talent attraction, talent retention, so, um, no, I don't think we should forego this concept of economy, economy and opportunity to create resilience. We talk about the, you know, kind of the dominance and the dominance of like the university's employment being, you know, I think we're the fourth most economically dependent in the country on an anchor institution. I do think it is important for us over the next twenty-five, thirty years to encourage greater economic diversification, innovation. So, so I do think that this has a place in the plan. Do I think affordability and sustainability are absolutely important, one thousand percent? But this, it needs to be well balanced, so I will agree with your sentiment, Mr. Leonard, that this is an important section to have.
Yeah, I mean, the notes, however, are from all of us, are largely questioning or asking to remove. So I appreciate what you're saying, but the comments, not just mine, I'm only two in here. The table seems to have a lot of questions about this and why it's here. So certainly, spreading over, what, sixty, sixty-three to seventy-five? So over those twelve pages, it's like, if there's a way to accomplish what you are hoping to accomplish, Mr. Leonard, but maybe in a spread or two, as opposed to the six spreads that we are looking at? Cause I, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at the comments, they, you know, it's like retrofitting, remove this goal, remove this goal, remove this section, where did these numbers come from? This is not good, so I'm not, it's not like.
From last meeting?
No, I'm looking at pages nine, ten, and eleven.
Okay, cause last time we did also have a discussion about removing some of the points about tax base. Okay.
I would, you know, that's why we're going through this process, but I just wanted to be, you know, I, I just wanted to be clear. And I think I was having a little bit of a reaction, I mean, I heard loud and clear the feedback on the land use policy, and we, we've responded to that. The inclusion of maintaining this as a goal can, can coexist with those land use directions, I absolutely think. Some of the questions here, to like, just, just for context, like, why can't U of M use the land for startups? They will, that's part of their plan is to do a lot of that, but there might be circumstances where, not unlike our community conversation about the benefits of off-campus housing versus on-campus housing, that that has some financial benefits to the city. There might be specific tax incentives, for example, in a burgeoning industry that might be well suited to private sector location rather than public sector location. The U of M investing in technology, they've really changed their investment strategy, they used to have a tech transfer where they would do a license, a lot of licensing of technology that comes out of the university, now they're really functioning more like a venture capital, they're really supporting funds and, and trying to grow them both on campus and throughout the community, you know, throughout the country. So those are just some questions, absolutely, like, I guess maybe to focus the conversation, if there's a lot of support for getting rid of that goal, great, I, you know how I recommend a shorter plan, but maybe the focus could be on just that, if you don't think, if you do think that there's space for that kind of goal, it should be truncated in a much more appropriate way, given the priority and weight you're giving to other aspects of the plan.
I mean, that would be my recommendation, cause like when you get into the goals, it shifts into land, so the five point one, it's trying to capture where those startups go, five point two, land is needed for diverse and equitable ranges of businesses, then it shifts in six one to the downtown, so, and then back to Plymouth Road, so it's largely talking about land, again, so I, I believe that you heard us, that's not what I am communicating here at all, that, that's not it at all, it's more, this was a recommendation from the consultants that I didn't think land did very well at the table, and it's twelve pages in the plan, and if you feel like, and others feel like it should stay, I would suggest that we truncate it significantly. So I would say, could we go from twelve to two, like a spread? And if we can't, um, you know, whatever suggestions you have, I think we would see after the first revision. And that seems to summarize what's in the comments, again.
I do think it would be odd to go to a two, I mean, I, I do agree with you overall, but like, you know, housing was like a million pages, and then we're going to like this whole other like subchapter that's like two pages, I mean, I think, I don't have a problem with the goals, I think I have a problem with the strategies, and I think my problem is like my chip on my shoulder of like, I live in northeast Ann Arbor and I don't want U of M taking over all of the, I don't want, you know, they're building like an eight thousand parking space, parking garage for a monorail up there, and I feel like any sort of innovation, this, this felt to me, and I have not read chapter five, um, cause I'm doing my homework in order, but this felt to me like they didn't take that into account, because I still was reading things that felt like it was justifying, like an innovation district, and these startups have to locate near north campus, like, why? And also, it was like thirty, ten out of twenty-eight located in Ann Arbor, like, that's over thirty percent, like, isn't that good? So I, I mean, it definitely advocated for it to be streamlined, and also, like, it just felt like they were still trying to create this innovation district, even if we took it out of zoning, it's very clear to me in the rationale.
So, you.
Not zoning, that's not what I meant, land use.
No, I, I guess the distinction that I wanna be clear on is, I heard loud and clear that we were advocating limits on housing there on Plymouth, so it's not to, so, is to provide more space for innovation zones there. I heard loud and clear from the planning convention, do not do that. There might still be land use policy and regulations that we make regardless of that, that make Plymouth more or less compatible with office development or research lab development. We might, for example, have different parking requirements, we might have flexibility on the number of stories, because some laboratories might need more ventilation, that is more difficult to achieve in a multi-street building, so, is, is your reaction to that, that, that I was misreading that, that not only do you not want housing limited there, but you don't want any catering to these types of businesses on Plymouth to stink from Washnaw or downtown or Briarwood?
I think that's sort of how I feel.
Yeah.
I would plus one then.
Can I, can I ask a question, I'm gonna show my ignorance, do, commercial properties are taxed at the same rate as residential, right? It's just a tax on assessed value, or there, is there differential tax rate?
The, I can answer that one, the difference is gonna be between principal and non-principal use. The mileage rate is gonna be similar for, or is gonna be the same for non-principal and commercial, but if you own your own home and you live in it, reside in it for, I think, like more than half a year or something like that, then you get a principal exemption, which is a lower military.
You don't pay the school taxes, the state's school taxes.
So commercial prop, private properties that are developed for commercial uses do generate a higher yield to the city?
Than principal residences, I see.
They're the same as a, they're the same as an apartment building.
Yes, as an apartment, so if you don't live in it, or if it's multifamily, it'll get taxed at the same rate.
It's the same rate.
But they generate a higher rate for schools.
And the bigger. And the bigger thing that's talked about within tax world, because I'm a tax nerd, is how many services they use compared to, like, their demand for public services versus how much taxes they pay. That's like the general thing.
Okay, do you agree with the statement on, I'm on page 65, "Diversifying the tax base will help long-term fiscal health so the city can continue to grow to provide services, investments, and programs as it grows." Is that a true statement? I'm asking, the source for authority of that is a Detroit Free Press newspaper article, which strikes me as not a very compelling source to make an assertion like that.
Yep.
Which point?
Two.
It's the second bullet point in the long-term considerations.
Second sentence.
I would say diverse, this is, this is me as a half-tax nerd, like in my day job. The diversification is often a better strategy for resilience reasons, not necessarily like the, yeah, for resilience reasons. If one sector crashes, you have, you're not putting all of your chips in that sector, which is the same as thinking about, you know, being a one-company town, right? Like, that's, it's not different.
So to, yeah, I guess piggyback off that. The assessor is going to take a look at the different classes, whether it's like apartments, offices, or industrial warehousing. And they'll make assessments based on that entire class, what happened in the overall property values. So that's going to be Jerry and the assessor for the city of Ann Arbor. And they'll make adjustments at the end of the year. So to that extent, like, I guess it's kind of true, you don't want just all apartments, right? Or you don't want all office buildings either, kind of thing. So to the extent that you have a more balanced approach in that respect, makes sure tax base a little bit more resilient.
There's a tension here. So it does come back to land use ultimately, right? If we're going to diversify the tax base, that means we're taking some things out of housing, but we're allowing properties to be developed in commercial uses rather than housing.
And this is, I think the core kind of question for me is, there's a housing-to-jobs imbalance now that exists.
Yeah, we have too many jobs.
Jobs versus housing.
Versus how many houses we have. We have too many jobs.
But there are many examples of cities that have the opposite issue, right? And so that is kind of like, as we look through to 2050, and if we have an increase of, say, 30,000 to 75,000 people, do we have the economic opportunities when we have 94,000 permanent jobs? And so, like, I am for affordability, but I, we also need to continue to progress. I think it needs to be a balanced approach. And that's why I'm taking this stance. I'm not looking to take my eye off the goal of improving stock accessibility, but that also means economic opportunity accessibility of social and socioeconomic mobility and wage mobility as well. And so that is, you know, Ann Arbor is attractive because there are great jobs here, there's great talent, right? And so I think the part of the plan has to also be contemplating for that as well. So that is certainly, can we compress this to be a lot more focused? Yes, I think so. And then I think we have to have considerations. But, I mean, if we're talking about a 25-year plan, to not think about what happens to overall job creation, we're just, we're lucky, we don't necessarily have to think about that, I suppose. But like, I am-
Assuming that the Trump administration is not going to crash the University of Michigan. And I'm not sure at this point that's a good assumption to make. I'm going to just say that. I mean, we're all just assuming U of M is here and is going to be here forever. And I would like to think that, but, oh my gosh. Although I suppose if U of M crashes, then we've all got bigger problems.
I think so.
Well, they're not going to cede their land.
I think they'll think about-
Well, and I think that's the challenge, is we're still land constrained.
We're land constrained.
So even if the university slows its growth, though last year they had a record 102,000 applications for this fall's enrollment.
Can I keep my thought going?
Sure.
The strategy that we've kind of are taking, I think, we need to set aside some districts to allow businesses to diversify the tax base. And we'll let some housing happen within them, but we're going to, this is going back to Mr. Leaf's comments, but we're going to reduce the nuisance standards to make them compatible. But if you're thinking about diversifying the workforce, I mean, there are a lot of office buildings in downtowns that are sitting empty, right?
Yep.
Or, and you could, rather than saying, we're going to set aside a district for business and allow residential in, maybe we'll have districts that are residential that will allow businesses to come into and kind of flip the paradigm. Is that conceivable? Or is that not possible?
Uh, that's-
I mean, I think at the scale, I think the issue for me is the scale. There are 94,000 jobs, like, that, the consultants gave us a number. 80,000, like, we don't have enough residents in the city to fill the jobs that are in the city currently, right now. And so that's why 80,000 people are commuting in for work, that plus other reasons, of course. So the scale is sort of off. Like, what's the, Commissioner Wetherby, you brought up the German research folks.
Sartorius.
Who, you know, how much land did they take?
Per acre.
And how many jobs, you know, how many jobs per acre did they create? And so that's, it's just-
I'm sorry, what was that? I'm not knowing.
They have a big footprint, and they employ 200 people.
Right.
This is in Ann Arbor?
Yeah, Sartorius.
Yeah, research park.
Drive, yep.
The other side of 94, actually. Like, south, very south, Ann Arbor.
So we set us, let's say we set aside that land, we're not going to get the same job production. That our largest employer, both the university and the hospital, so it's the hospital and the university produce, and the rate of growth, because they acquired another hospital system in the state, is just, it's staggering. And I think that was what was helpful to me, was just sort of looking at those numbers.
Yeah, a note in here, the top employers in Ann Arbor, just to piggyback on that, they did, this chart misses the University of Health system.
Right.
So that's 22,000 people, in addition to the 31.3,000 people from the University of Michigan Central Campus. So, and I did add the, a link to that, but the Trinity Health system is St. Joe's, former St. Joe's, but the University of Michigan Health System is an additional 22,000 people. It's the second largest.
Yeah, so this is why we had, or at least my memory serves, of why we sort of rejected this in the first place, because of the imbalance of the permanent jobs and the lack of residents in the city to fill the current permanent jobs. And then that was like full-time jobs. And then there was a whole nother category of part-time jobs that sat on top of that. So, again, I think I understand what you are communicating to us, Mr. Leonard. And Charlie, I certainly respect your expertise here. I just think this is, it's just too much in the, in the plan as it is. So my feedback, if we don't strike the whole thing, is that we condense it towards what you would like us to see. And then, once we get those revisions, I think we can give additional feedback, because I feel like that, that it's at least fair to some of the goals that you want us to contend you to consider.
Do we want to take a vote on that? To condense?
I'm okay with the concept of condensing. I'm generally actually okay with the idea of like reduction of emitting and combining to try to create simplicity throughout the entire plan. So I'm okay with the concept of contracting or compressing this. But I just still think that it's an important concept that needs to remain in the plan.
Yeah, I agree. I think just like we can't have stagnant housing, having stagnant employment opportunities is also not great. So I'm, I don't want to say like, oh, let's just ignore employment and business. And, because part of like where I live, in large part, is because I like the business opportunities that I can walk to and the things that, and, which is, is a much smaller sector than, say, the larger land use options. But one of the reasons that I didn't like the land use options is because I've lived in Ann Arbor for a long time, and we have set aside spaces in the past. And then those spaces didn't end up being the ones used for whatever the, the business was. You know, it was all going to be, I grew up on the north side, and it was all going to happen there, but then it ended up happening on the south side. And then Pfizer left, and then, you know, there was just, like, so for me, setting aside special areas don't, doesn't necessarily lead to what we want, but I'm not, but I don't think I'm, well, I'm not agreeing with, we should just strike this and not talk about employment, because I think that's short-sighted. I think a city depends on the employment. And we know who our major employer is and is most likely going to be in the future. But, but I think we still need to have something that addresses employment. So I can see shrinking it or something, but I think it's short-sighted to just say, we're only going to talk about housing.
May I make a suggestion that actually I think squares a couple of things? I think it's important, like, having a diverse mix of land uses. And right now, we're tipped way towards one end, and acknowledging that, like, we are really trying a lot through that first set of strategies to increase housing, hopefully will tip us. But I'm, actually, one of the concerns that I had that, is that there's, I've seen some redundancy between goal number four about like, which is retail in neighborhoods, and then goal number six, which is like, it's the same thing all over again. So I wonder if like, the first set of strategies, or the first part, I don't know, we're calling these subchapters, but the neighborhoods one is really focused on housing. If then there's another one that's like, um, like if the next thing is about diverse mix of, of land uses, that allows us to say, like, talk about the balance, and like, a city, we want to be a complete city that has all of the things. And right now, we're out of balance, and 25 years from now, our balance might be a little, I mean, hopefully it's more balanced, but if, we don't want it to swing the other way either. That's not good. And so, and that also allows you then maybe to reduce some of the redundancy between what's in goal four and what's in goal six, because, I don't know, if that, if that helps a little bit more.
And I think that, to Commissioner Wethersby's point about not really liking to see just an exclusive innovation zone, I think actually the entire commission agreed, like, I don't know that that necessarily is the right thing. And so it doesn't necessarily have to exclude, and it only can be innovation, it can still be inclusive of housing. Here's another wrinkle that I'll throw in. If you are looking for office right now, chances are you can find office. The, here's the slight wrinkle and complexity associated with that, is if you're looking for large floor plates, so if you're kind of like a larger company that's like looking for 25,000 or 45,000 square feet, there actually isn't that much, right? But if you want 6,000 to 10,000, so it's kind of like the subsets of like, what level of size, and what is available to companies. Most of them are trying to go to Class A, right? They want kind of a higher-end kind of product, they're willing to take less space. And so when you have a company that's looking for 45,000 square feet, there's not that many options out there. And so what implications that has for land use, again, I don't know that, I tend to agree with you, Commissioner Wetherby, on the concept of like, we don't need this exclusive zone specific for only office or innovation. I also know, you know, to what Ms. Leaf said about the concept of like loosening nuisance regulations, I don't know about that. I mean, like nuisance should be, nuisance is nuisance, right? Like, we don't want vibrations, odors emanating past, you know, like, and so, but to that effect, I don't know if I'm, I'm probably sending a little bit of mixed messages here, but there's complexities associated with the type of companies that want to locate in Ann Arbor, what is available to them from like a product standpoint. But I think the recognition of the diversification, the balancing of this plan is important in the long run, over the next 25 years. So.
So maybe specifically, I would suggest striking goal five, integrating goal six back into goal four with the mixed use in the residential, and then you could leave, but modify goal seven.
And I think, I think 5.2 is important. I could totally get rid of 5.1, but I think 5.2 is important. I don't know what the right strategy is. And I'm mixed about the, what is in my head is like, there are some things that are smelly and dirty, and that is the way, you need them for a city, like, for the city to operate. And like, I don't know how to do that. I don't know, I don't, I don't know how you do that.
Well, you have an industrial zone, but we've decided to include residential in the industrial zone. So that's why the nuisance thing has come up.
Yeah. And I wasn't there to argue for a manufacturing zone, sorry. So, and I would have totally been in the minority. So I appreciate having something else. Like, I, I, so the idea that we would, that we should be thinking about that, this is not 100% manufacturing, it's not smelly, but I'm just going to say, because this is the thing that I deal with on my daily basis, we need, we're going to need to have more car rental places, guys, and we need to have them in more accessible locations. And the closure of downtown rental car company is really awful for people who don't have cars. We now have to go way out of the city, and that's not okay if we want to actually encourage more people to live here without cars. And so, like, we're going to have to, that, that takes space. Like, that's not something that everybody wants to have next door. And if we actually want to live sustainably, like, we're going to have to make more space for some of these things. So, or we're going to have to, or we're going to ship them out to the suburbs. And I don't think that that's a good idea. So.
Toronto has a really cool, like, mixed, it's like housing above auto repair. It's brand new. I mean, there's ways to do it, I think, that aren't like, just setting aside a big swath of land for just a car rental place.
Yeah, we got to figure out how to do, yeah.
I mean, it's, the good news is, it's super easy to list car rental, housing, name your use, all in the same district. That's actually really easy to do. The challenge is that downtown car rental doesn't meet the TC1 parking maximum. So it's easy to identify uses, but there's work to be done if you, it's easy to list that use, but unless, unless you make, unless we say it has to be the Toronto model, where all those cars are parked inside a building that's two stories or more, you are going to functionally limit the ability for that to be accomplished. So.
So. Can I put in a plea for keeping in and developing the circular economy bit? Because, no, I don't think I did it. I think it, I think it's been probably lobbied for by OSI, because the circular economy strategy is a weird part of the OSI thing, because it's not something that you can buy solar panels or, you know, it actually, and so there's this thing in here, this little green box, land is essential to transition from a linear model to a circular economy. I, I understand, but I think that there's so much more to that, because the linear model is we outsource our trash disposal to, you know, the next county over, basically. I think it's going to, yeah. And, and so, first of all, it's not just, and second of all, it's not, it means that we're implicated in vehicles' miles traveled, because we're sending that stuff out there. And the circular economy idea is that you capture value from things that shouldn't be land-filled yet. And in order to capture that value, you need places to work on those things. And so it goes along, I think, with Juan Wu, what you were saying, because we're not using titles tonight, that, you know, that the space, for example, the example that's listed here is something that we heard a lot from when we were working on the strategy for circular economy, was we could have more thrift stores and more stuff in thrift stores in Ann Arbor if we had places to warehouse furniture and more stuff than what they have at the, at the thrift stores. They just can't even keep all the amount of stuff that they get. And so this is, and I don't think it all needs 45,000 square feet or anything. And I, and I think that, you know, well, I don't want to relitigate that thing, but I think that we could say more about how the circular economy means internalizing some of the things that we currently externalize for land uses. And that it does mean that you want a kind of light industrial, you want to bring back some stuff. Like, remember those two huge, really long meetings that we had when we- Like, remember those two huge, really long meetings that we had when we tried to redefine makers or? Home occupation. Yeah. And I mean, we did have a similar conversation about nuisances and the kind of tinkering that people do. And the circular economy needs that. And it's just because we internalize more of our waste. And we are producing value out of waste. And so we could say more about what sort of land use would be needed. And I understand that the idea of excluding housing from certain places didn't fly very well. But, um, you're, and I spoke half against that, which I regret those words. Because as I thought about these other values, there, I, I think they do need space. And I watched how hard the city had to look to find an election center. And I'm glad we have it, but it's not very accessible. I mean, the city's starting to have meetings there and I can't bike there because I'm going to get killed and I don't want that. So I shouldn't have said that publicly. Um, I am nervous. I am a nervous biker and that doesn't feel safe to me. Others of you would feel. And so we're, you know, we're at odds with, you know, this, this issue of big enough square footage for certain things. I think we need to, and I'm not saying that we need to reserve it in the center of the city. But, um, I think it's a, something that, I think a stronger argument could be made for that. If we want to keep that in there, the circular economy thing.
So that's what I was going to ask is, I think what I'm hearing is remove 5.1, but keep 5.2. Does that sound right?
I think so, yes.
But what's wrong with 5.1? It doesn't say, I mean, secure a fair share of the spinoff and track. That's like, yeah, we should get something out of a university. You know, we can't tax them. If, if they're investing in things, let's try to see if we can't get some of that.
It maybe doesn't need to be its own thing, but maybe as part of like 5.2.
I think what's wrong with it is that it sounds like a rationale for a zone that we already said we didn't want.
Well, I understand that it does.
So when we get to, so we could just say when we get to the implementation matrix, maybe we will realize why we don't. It will be even clearer why we don't want it here. That the implementation of it is to create an innovation district, which we don't want. Or I don't want, sorry, I won't speak in the body.
I guess I was trusting that, that the innovation zone was, in, in, a housing prohibitive or restrictive innovation zone was not going to rehappen. And so, but perhaps there is no way to secure a fair share of spinoff without, I don't know.
If you don't restrict housing, housing always wins. That's what we've been told consistently.
Think, think of it this way, um, residential housing, like on average, your average rental rate in resi is going to be about $3 a square foot. Annualized, that's $36 a square foot. Currently downtown, if you want to get office space, it's going to be in the low 30s, in the high 20s. So you're right, housing is going to yield a greater rental rate, right? At some point, and but, but retail is going to yield like mid 50s triple net, right? So why doesn't retail win out every time? Because there, there's also a lot of costs involved with like retenting retail, et cetera. Housing is a more reliable, kind of more risk averse type of product right now. But that's not always necessarily going to be the case. Actually, in most places, office generally is a higher yield kind of product. It just has drastically changed during COVID. So I don't know that like housing is always, like, there may be a time, like, hey, when, when somebody comes to you and says, hey, I want to take 100,000 square feet. You know, like, I will do a bill to suit for you if it's got a high credit, you know, tenant and you're able to secure, you know, like, think Google taking 126,000 square feet up on, you know, North Campus, right? You would probably rather do that than deal with kind of the, the management of an apartment building, for example. So it's not necessarily always going to be the case. What this means specifically for this document, um, I do, I do agree with kind of the compression of some of these concepts. I just, what I'm objecting to is that it be removed from consideration as a whole. Because I do think it's important for the city's overall comprehensive plan to think about this over the next 25 years. Yeah.
Can I make some observations? I'm still studying the background rationale and I'm hearing different reasons for why we include this. That don't maybe line up with the goals. It sounds like one of the rationales is to diversify the tax base.
Yes.
Another is to, um, um, make sure the city is providing the kinds of things that cities need to provide for cities to function. That sometimes aren't the best neighbors, but we should still provide for them. And, and then the third is the sense that we need to have space for really big manufacturing kind of stuff, maybe, or spinoffs. I'm not sure. And yeah, and we're trying to do all of this at the same time. I must, I get the, I get the concern that there's a huge imbalance right now between jobs and, and housing. And we should focus on the housing, but I am nervous. It's a 25 year plan. And I don't think I want to jettison completely the ability for the city to see things shifting and, and respond to that. And I also am sympathetic to the, we ought to make the city have the things in it that make cities function. Um, and we ought to, I don't know, somehow figure out how to include space for that. So I'm not sure I want to jettison all, I don't agree with jettisoning all of this. I'm also kind of looking at this goal six things. I think it's a great idea to really encourage mixed use development of the huge hunk in big parking lot malls that we have right now that include lots of residential, but a lot of other stuff that would go together. I don't want to jettison those goals or, and I don't think they're the same thing as what we talked about above. Neighborhood commercial Jefferson Market is not what this is talking about.
Spanning the downtown district, that's a really important sentence that we need in here.
Yeah. So I guess I'm kind of, and I don't, I think the background explanation about the economic considerations is useful to, to understand what's going on here and what, what, so I'm, I'm guessing pushing back on my good friend Danell here a little bit.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to tell you why 6.2 should go is because it, it embodies a car orientation. That's all.
But it, that's not what I'm reading when I see.
Oh, sure. But, uh, we just had, uh, Arbor South come with 2,300 parking, um, spaces that they're going to do with a sort of car centric, there's, there's a lot of walkability, but there's still a car centrality there. The redevelopment of Briarwood, which is going to put, what, 400 units of housing in? They built a four story parking deck right in the center. Because the large retailer requires a specific number of parking spots in order for them to be viable. So I agree, like, in theory, this is wonderful. This is our goal of, you know, taking parking lots. I think Commissioner Dish sings the Joni Mitchell song a lot about converting our parking lots. But what it winds up doing is just re-embedding into the built environment a car centrality.
What goal would you put for that space if not this?
Well, that, I think that is a wonderful conversation for us to have. And so, I, which I would be interested in gauging. Right now, I'm looking at what's in front of me and what's in front of me, I think embeds the car centrality, which is why I was recommending that it be removed.
Yeah, I'm just, we're hopping around a little. And so I, do we want to start on goal five and clarify like?
What I, what I would like to suggest for goal five is what I'm hearing is mixed feedback on, on it. But if I were going to get into all of your individual brains, this is the one I can live with that I'm thinking most of you have. Is you want it to be shorter. You want some documentation about, it's okay, that it should be in there. It should be perhaps less land focused and more outcome focused. And magically make it shorter, but still include all the background information that Commissioner Norton finds useful. So that's what, that's how I'm thinking of processing five. Does that seem generally?
Yeah. I mean, five itself isn't long. It's the lead up to five, six, seven, right? Like that, it's, five is one, is two pages.
Yeah.
So I think it's more the five, six, seven. And this is where, what Commissioner Norton said about like what we were talking about, which is like, needing all of the things. You, you said three things and the last one, we were like, no, not manufacturing.
Yes.
But we were with you on one and two. Whatever you said for those one and two, I think were the tax base, the tax diversification. Like, a diverse economy in the city and wanting to do all of the things, like be able to, the services that a city needs. I think that if that's how we rewrite.
Two things to emphasize here. There's a lot of here on the diversity of the tax base, probably more than there needs to be. Not much about making sure we're providing the things that cities need.
Sure.
To function as cities. And we're not a manuf, I was, I was heading towards saying I don't, we shouldn't be trying to build in big manufacturing plants in the city.
No.
But, and maybe I was kind of picking up on the large, the classic space stuff.
And to clarify, and that type of use might be somebody who's prototyping something that is to be manufactured somewhere else, right? But what I'm not thinking about is like a car die plant or something like that, where it's just stamping, you know, metals and things of that nature. What I'm thinking about is, um, some of these companies are like internet software companies or artificial intelligence folks. Or they're creating the next generation of, um, electric vehicles for FedEx trucks, right?
Manufacturing or?
No, no, no.
Office jobs.
They're, they're doing, um, prototyping as well as so, like, so they are doing their.
Like design?
It's a, it's a technical center and yeah, design. It's an innovation center essentially. And but it's like, those are the types of things that we do. Innovation is important. I just don't know that we are going to create this exclusive area for, that, that doesn't seem to make sense. But that's not to say that we reject innovation, right? Like, that is not what I'm trying to say. And so.
So then there are kind of two groups of commercial things going on here. One is pretty, um, non-offensive office space like things that you don't really know what's going on in the building. It doesn't matter because it doesn't bother the neighbors. But then you also have the recycle center. That's maybe got some noise going and some smells. And for the circular economy thing, for a city to function like a city wants to function, you maybe want to have some of that in the city and not force everybody to drive two townships over to get to it. How do we reconcile those things?
Circular economy graphic.
Yeah. Uh, so I think, um, to summarize kind of what we're discussing is, we think that pages, effectively 64 to 68, uh, eight and 69 are, that, that's a very long lead up into it. Maybe compress some of those things about like, hey, this is what U of M is doing. I, I don't know that that's necessarily needed. Um, take a look at compressing some of these kind of items, but that the goals of, and compress 5.1 and 5.2 together. Where it's, you know, it's like, yes, we should secure, you know, tech transfer activity, if possible, within the city to diversify innovation. And then socioeconomic wage mobility, uh, 5.2 is I think important too. And then the circular economy component as well.
But strike the nuisance, weakening the nuisance laws.
Yeah. I don't know that, yeah, we should be reviewing or, yeah. And, and I think the, like, one of the things that I, I ran into, for example, um, was like, the way offices are used are different. One of the things I ran into with KLA was they wanted to do a clean room where they had a nitrogen gas tank. And it's technically considered kind of a lab, right? It's a lab area. But labs aren't permitted in office zones, for example. But it is, you know, what they don't want, or I guess what the zoning doesn't want is like laboratories, like wet labs where things are, you know, chemicals are being mixed. This is actually the cleanest room. It's a clean, it's a class 100 and 1,000 room, right? This is one of the cleanest places ever, right? And so the way that I think, um, nuisances, uh, like the, the way that office utilization has evolved over time has changed. And I don't know, I think that our, our permitted uses and our zoning has really kind of like caught up. I mean, like, but you, you and I have talked about this previously, right? Because these are the types of jobs, semiconductor manufacturing, die wafer efficiencies, process optimization for semiconductors. These are the things, kinds of things that we want to have, export economies, right? And so those are the things that we do want to encourage and have innovations. Export economies are important. That's what makes Ann Arbor attractive. We should try to harness some of that for the future. So, um, I, I think that, uh, but, but that being said, you know, we, we've asked that question, where don't we want housing, right? It's like, no, I mean, housing can be everywhere, but there's going to be times where those, those, um, specific uses are going to be more conducive or, or developers are going to say, okay, oh, this is the kind of development that I want to do. So, um, so all of that to say, if I were to summarize everything, 5.1, 5.2, a lot of this can be kind of combined and compressed. I think that's kind of the overall gist at least I'm getting. And that circular economy should be a part of kind of like the concept that we move forward. When we move to goal number six, um, I, yeah, and I personally, and I totally understand, like, you don't want to promote more auto centricity, right? And that that is something that you have a philosophical or, you know, or, uh, Michelle White, that you have, and you don't want to support that whatsoever. That being said, for me, these strategies do, um, make sense to me. I, I, I think that's something that we do want to encourage. What?
Should we vote?
Should we vote?
Yeah. Cause I, I mean, the other thing that I was trying to bring up that I hadn't thought through yet was the, the tax base per acre on some of this commercial is also something we should consider. So, you know, the standard produces more in tax revenue than Arborland does. And so when we look at per acre, when we look at that and we talk about diversifying the tax base, does that come into place? Because you have an entity that is producing more tax revenue on less land. And since this is a land use document, when we think about that, that, those are the kinds of things. So when I see 6.2, that's what I'm thinking of. It's like, sure, we want to retrofit that, but it's not producing the same kind of tax revenue. That's something that would be more dense could. And then I think there is agreement at the table that we should get rid of 6.3. So if there's not agreement at 6.2, I think there is agreement to get rid of the innovation zone.
Is there a way to revise 6.2 so that it threads the needle?
Yes, I would trust the planning, uh, staff to thread that needle with, uh, in concert with our consultants.
To do it in a way that doesn't promote autos.
Right. Cause I think, I don't think anybody here wants to promote auto centric development.
How, uh, sorry, um, how is 6.2 promoting auto centric development?
Well, I think it's like, if we think of Arbor South as an example, um.
But that was their, like, there are no parking minimums, right? So they made a choice.
There's parking maximums there. Wait, like, it seems like what you're getting at is you don't like our parking maximums.
We, we don't have parking maximums.
You do in the TC1.
Oh, in TC1 we do. Sorry. Okay.
Yeah, and they're under it.
Yeah.
Well, right, um, well, let's not go back and talk about how, how large those maximums were that we said.
So this is, this is using car range to define areas we want to reimagine. I, um.
I, we, we absolutely are in agreement that we want to reimagine car areas. But I also think that, take the redevelopment at Briarwood. They had to build a four story parking structure. And so to me, there is some embedding of the car centrality there. So that, I think Chair Lee articulated it well when he tried to summarize my comments, which is, I have a philosophical objection to it. I have a philosophical objection to it. You all can, at the table, could decide, well, let's keep it in.
So, and let me think about how we get higher density development in these places. And that is not to retrofit, that is to tear down and create like actual grid, right? Extend this, like, so it's actually the word retrofitting, maybe? Because that is effectively assuming like, you still have a mall, right? Um, and you're saying, maybe we don't love the mall, right? Or we, or you, or we don't, we still have 777. Maybe, maybe we don't want 777, right?
Well, I would just say, my wife, when I explained the development to her, was shocked that they had to replace the parking. So she was thinking, oh, this is going to be great. They're going to use these underutilized parking lots. And I said, actually.
Well, they're building on the parking lots.
And then they're putting the parking back in. And so she was just shocked because it didn't make sense in that regard. And so I can be an outlier. I don't, I, I've been outlier before.
Would you all support, um, cause I think the language here maybe.
You want better standards as to what retrofitting means. Like, car centric is a great place to regulate development that is less car centric. That's, you want this, this goal to be better instead of that.
I trust you. I think you have, you have, you're living inside my head right now. So I appreciate that.
But there's a lot in this paragraph that I think is really important.
The sentences. I don't think we would strike the paragraph. I think we'll just try to rework it with this.
Because it does make clear that investment in infrastructure is important to do this. And.
What about six point three? Is there consensus to strike that?
I would support striking it.
Plus one.
I don't I wouldn't strike it, too.
Okay.
You are just getting rid of a whole page. I'm so proud of you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're on goal seven? Or is there?
Yep.
Yes. So can you help me understand that preserve doesn't mean set aside land?
Where are we?
Seven one.
So I think this is the same thing we've been talking about. If we, do you care about the do we want to take steps to make it more viable for the thrift, the Ann Arbor PTO shop to continue in that district or not?
I think if this was an opportunity zone, like the city had it, and then they were able to lower the rents so that entrepreneurs could move into it, I think I would be 100% in support of that. Because now we are doing something proactive for local businesses using land as the tool to incentivize that. But if we're just setting aside land, that is interesting.
I don't I don't read this to say setting aside land.
That's why I asked if the word preserve meant setting aside land.
How would you do it? If we're not going to carve out spaces for more affordable?
We buy stuff. We buy things.
It's in publicly owned assets and industrial space.
No, I mean, it's in the budget. I mean, where Mr. DeHoney announced, what did he end up putting in the budget? Over a million, right? Five million? Right, five million off the as yet unsold Klein lot. But that that's what I understand. When I read, when I read preserve, because I because the color turned red, I thought I was done and I didn't read this part and I feel really bad about that. But.
You're reading it now.
I'm reading it now. And when I saw.
That's a graphic design problem. Not that is not your fault.
Thank you. You know, preserve a variety of space. I mean, this is what he is talking about pro his vocabulary was proactively buying things when they come on the market so that we can do this with them. So let's say somebody wants to sell that shopping center that the thrift store is in. The city might buy it so that we can become the landlord.
Can we say that?
Absolutely. But not to be real, that if the land use framework is such that residential is more enticing there, the financial reality of the city choosing to buy versus housing to come in there might be differential. It's it's possible. But I think here the focus should be if if you don't want to use land use regulations to do it, let's be clear about that. Like, I think this is intending to say, we think it might be valuable to find the spaces. This was also like, I think, talking about like, you know, the Zingerman's, you know, sphere of businesses, many of them can't aren't located in the city because they found more affordable space somewhere else. We don't have to do it from a land use perspective. It doesn't have to be a goal. It could be from trying to put more flexibility so a car rental place doesn't have to abide by a maximum parking ratio so that they can more viably create a rental facility without building a garage to house all the vehicles. Or we could say, nope, we care more about form and sidewalk experience than we do about the viability of the next rental company going there. So I think the most helpful thing here would just be, what what do you desire? Is this a goal? And if so, do you want to use land use regulation? Generally, I would say what I've heard from this commission is you do not want to do that. You might want to limit it just to the city having to find financial resources to do so.
Which is an all right thing. Like, not everything in our plan is a zoning instrument, right? Like zoning is not the solution for everything.
But if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that the city is now doing something that it's never done before, which is putting aside money to buy stuff.
Yeah.
And if we want that stuff to be remotely affordable to the city, we might want to consider what it's zoned.
Well, I'm just saying that there are other factors besides the city's willingness to do that.
Right. And one of the other factors would be, is it is it zoned in a way that we have to compete against, you know?
Or are you willing to compete against?
Well, unable to, right? I mean, you know, five million is a lot, but.
And I want to be clear, I'm not a real estate professional, so I but my speculation is is the city's purchase price for an old strip mall in South Industrial to preserve affordable commercial or flex space might be a different value framework than somebody who's proposing to put 200 apartments there. That's my only point.
So I'm looking at, I've just been looking at some other comprehensive plans, and this one is Boulders, and they have a section that's affordable business space and diverse employment base. And it just says, the city will consider strategies, regulations, policies, or new programs to maintain a range of options to support a diverse workforce and employment base and take into account innovations and the changing nature of the workplace. Like,
I mean, I like that.
Yeah. Like, it's, you know, it doesn't.
It doesn't commit you to anything.
Right, exactly.
Which is the level of vagueness that we might be looking for.
Like, it's like, hey, we know we need to do this.
Yeah.
There might be different ways of doing it for different businesses in different areas at different times.
Right.
But also, it's probably not us. Somebody else. We're passing this document, but somebody else. Take this from us. Right?
I mean, this does strike me, though, as a topic where having some ambiguity is good because we don't know how conditions are going to change or what kind of businesses might show up that really could be useful. And maybe there's a PUD that, you know, do a PUD for a rental place that doesn't need to have the maximum parking spot. So I think this is actually a good place where ambiguity and not because we're going to foist it on future planning commissions, but because they're going to be the ones who are dealing with the situation that's come up that we can't anticipate now. But it's good to contemplate that and put that memorialize that acknowledgement that we should be prepared to address those things. So this is all around, along with the city, ambiguity would be good here.
I would just note that one for seven point one and seven point two are and this entire goal are about, well, maybe maybe it's just seven point one and seven point two are specifically local entrepreneurs. Right? So like, where seven point three is is more about like emerging opportunities, not necessarily local entrepreneurs. And I don't know if that's intentional, because that car rental place, if it's an enterprise rent a car, right? It's not, that's not what we're talking about for seven point one. In terms of making sure that the things that make this city complete, we are finding support for. And so if we want something like making the city complete, then I feel like that might be something that we need to work into five, like into a revised goal five. Does that make sense?
It does, except there is something that comes to my mind as I now read this one, which is the agreement that has it's the climate commitment that goes along with the renegotiated gas franchise. And it says that we're working with, we got money out of DTE to to work with unions to train people to make geothermal. And that that seems to be the city can help ensure the skilled trades are able to meet the coming development demand by working with county and institutional partners on training and programming. That's exactly what's written into that agreement.
Can I try a recap?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so seven point one, we want to sort of remove references to this being like land use space and use some sort of language similar to what we've heard in Boulder and maybe discuss now that we have a budget to acquire things. That's one way that we could preserve this space instead of through land use policy.
Yeah, budgeting for, I mean, I think we, but it's definitely a new direction. And that's another tie into the economic development resolutions.
But there might need to be a regulatory support for the buying. I mean, without saying we're gonna.
So we can't, we'll get into trouble if we downzone to reduce property values. That'll fall flat.
No, no, I mean, that decision's already been made not to restrict. So I, I, well, that's the direction that's already been provided. So, yeah, I I would agree. I don't think that's, that's a, I think we should be making land use regulations based on what's right for the land use.
Yep, 1,000%.
Oh, yeah, that was like market manipulation.
And I don't really hear any changes for seven point two or seven point three. Is that right accurate?
Yeah. Other than maybe just the target population consistency.
Yep.
Okay. For seven point two.
Okay. I did add in master lease and modal leasing to the glossary. I mean, it's in here or like, I think I had just bolded or bulleted. We have it highlighted. It's in the blue callout, but I'm not sure it actually needs to be in the blue callout. I think it can be in a glossary or.
The San Francisco example?
No, the.
Master leasing.
Master leasing on page seventy-four.
Yeah, it's in the callout.
You would like those words to be added to the glossaries that the note?
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't know that they need to be in the callout, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I would actually suggest that we remove that. I don't really see the relevance of that. I mean, yeah, I know what mass releasing is. It's a did you know moment, but it I don't know what.
Same.
Yeah, yeah. I just don't know what relevance it has to this particular one unless, again, the thing is, I think these have like these kinds of, you know, are you suggesting that we do this or not? Right? So unless there's kind of like some level of direction, unless you're saying, oh, yeah, the city should mass release, otherwise it should just be redacted.
Chair Lee.
Yes.
Like to offer the possibility that we end.
Yes.
The green section is quite large. And also, I'm noticing that we have a whole meeting set aside for chapter six, which is two pages.
Yeah.
Well, no, that's the implementation matrix that's in the spreadsheet that you all have that has not been included in the plan yet.
That we will have it before. Oh, okay. I thought I thought, okay. And it's big. I was like, oh, we don't need a whole night to do two pages. So we have two extra meetings.
Yeah, I think if you if you want to move this section till next time, I could give you a few high level notes about it based on your comments, and then you all can decide what you would like to do.
That sounds like a plan. Are we all set with page seventy-five and seventy-four? Everyone feels okay?
I think so.
Do you have enough direction?
Yeah.
Cool. All right.
So a few comments I have is people brought up large scale solar in regards to the SEU. Just so you know, staff is also reviewing this, right? So Dr. Missy Stoltz is looking at this, and I think that these can be modified. I think she had mentioned that we don't need large scale solar, that it's mainly neighborhood based rooftop. So those were two comments that we don't need to talk about. And I just want to acknowledge that you all, a lot of you are bringing up infrastructure. We are in constant communication with teams at the city that are currently working on plans like this for infrastructure. And so they know our projections. We are learning about theirs. We will hopefully soon be able to have more like details that we can share that will be incorporated in the plan. So all of your questions around infrastructure are good ones, but we don't have the exact answers for you yet.
I also did want to note there was a comment about some mapping and the like. And just so you know, the city does make some decisions not to publish all of our infrastructure from a public safety perspective. So not all of these will be, we won't be able to provide necessarily the level of detail that somebody who really wants to be more wonky about infrastructure might want.
Fascinating.
Thank you for that clarification. And so we will postpone this particular portion just based on the, in this period of time. Is everybody okay with that? Is anyone just really hoping to power through?
But to clarify, does that mean that we can expect on April 29th to do this section and all of chapter five?
I think so. So chapter five is shorter, but it is the future.
It's meeting.
Yeah, so it's, I'm sure going to generate a lot of conversation.
Okay. All right. With that, then we're actually going to conclude the chapter four discussion to be continued on April 29th. We're going to move on to agenda number eight, which is public comment. This is a second opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any issue. We'll first hear from those present and then remote participants to speak remotely. Please press star nine if on the phone or use the raise hand feature in Zoom. For phone access, please call eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven and enter meeting ID nine seven seven six six three four one two two six. City staff will identify callers by the last three just the phone number or by name. If available, you'll hear an automated announcement. When it's your turn to speak, please ensure that you're in a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present that would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one. There's nobody behind the pillars, right? Okay. Yeah, yeah. And then with that, is there anyone who would like to speak remotely at this time?
There is.
Okay.
Caller with the phone number ending with three two six, you can press star six to unmute your phone and address the planning commission for three minutes.
Good evening. This is Jeff Crockett calling back. And I listened with great interest about your discussion of historic districts. And I do have a few comments about this. First, I am very disappointed because this was discussed at planning commission, that historic districts were not included in the survey to find out exactly what the popular support for them. But I think had you done that, you would find out that historic districts are very popular in Ann Arbor for a variety of reasons. But the other thing I want to point out is I disagree with the notion that historic districts in Ann Arbor are exclusionary. I heard reports, you know, about historic districts in other areas, but I don't think it applies to Ann Arbor. Historic districts didn't occur till the early 1980s. The Old Fork Ward Historic District was created in 1983, for example. And I am not aware, and perhaps someone could provide some data involved in exactly how much, how many people were excluded. I'm not aware of any. It's possible that, you know, the real estate market may have precluded some of that, but it certainly wasn't the historic district itself. The other thing you should realize is that the Old Fork Ward Historic District is the densest in the city, and it has steadily increased in density for a couple of reasons. First, the there is no restriction about changing the interior of the house in regards to significant historic structures. So there has been one landlord who has owns 250 properties in Ann Arbor, who has probably impacted, I know of about 15 in our area, where he has gone in pretty much gutted the interior and tripled the size of the numbers of residents and also significantly increased the cost of this. Secondly, there have been three examples where how we've had additional condos and in new developments. One that you should pay particular attention to is what's happening with Shelby at 530 North Division. And he create, he took two older homes, which are not significantly.
Thirty more seconds.
Not significant, but put them together and created a whole bunch of new housing. Please take a look. The other thing I want to point out is that Shirley Beckley, who really recently passed away, there's an article about her, Ryan Stanton, about Ann Arbor's black neighborhood was once targeted for demolition, and now it's home to $1 million condos. In this case, the exclusion was the density that was created by taking by eliminating black homes. And I would suggest that there are black homes in a number of neighborhoods downtown that could benefit from an historic district. And I would encourage you to consider that. Would you like all the black houses to be demolished to put up new multiplexes? I hope not. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Do we have other callers that would like to speak at this time?
Sam Holman, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hello, this is Sam Holman. I live on 1451 Kohler Road. Two things I'd like to talk about, the neighborhood residential or commercial spaces. What I would suggest there is that you look to create village squares within the super blocks formed by the arterial roads. Most of your plan is focused on developing the arterial roads, which there's nothing wrong with, but they're not desirable places. No one ever wants to go sit outside at Starbucks on Washington. So one area in particular I would look at is Page Avenue between King George and Pine Valley. It's the area right behind the George. There's a big parking lot there. That would be a perfect place to center some retail square. That's not on. That would be a perfect place to center some, a retail square that's not on arterial. Another place would be the center block in Woodbury Gardens. That would be an excellent place to create a residential or a village square within the superblocks. The other thing I'd point out is that in terms of residential zoning, Research Park is not an appropriate place to put residential. There are no parks, there are no schools, there are no libraries, there are no stores there. And most importantly, there are no pedestrian paths across I-94 there. It is very dangerous. I do see people walking there a lot. I drive there a lot and it's just not a safe place to put residential. So I, I would really, really encourage you not to zone that, to allow residential zoning there. It's just not a safe place. It's not an appropriate use of zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Do we have other callers?
Caller with the phone number ending with 534, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Good evening again, Tom Stalberg, 1202 Traver. I'd like to thank both the other callers, one for sticking with the whole meeting and two for making excellent comments, both of them. In terms of historic districts, I do believe you're painting them with a broad brush. They are not all alike. They operate differently, they were created at different times for different reasons. I happen to live currently in the Broadway Historic District. I'll let you do your own homework and look when it was created, much more recently than you might think, based on the comments that were made. I moved back to town in 1994 into a triplex in the Old West Side Historic District. That was an affordable housing option for those of three of us who bought it. And as we moved on and rented it out to others, we've made a business out of mostly duplexes, but that triplex included, as affordable and workforce housing over the past three years, I'm sorry, 30 years. A lot in historic districts and near historic districts up on the north side where we have the greatest concentration of the oldest homes in the city of Ann Arbor. I live in an 1839 structure with some additions on it as well that others did before me. In terms of your concept of taking a house, tearing it down, building a quadplex, let's say, and saying that those will be more affordable per land mass or however your calculations, calculations are, do the math for us, please. I want to see your numbers. Ralph McKee has gone through the trouble of doing the numbers and presented it more than once, where you tear down a modest house and put up multiple units, where each one is going to be more expensive than the original unit was built and it will not become affordable over time in the way that you've described it. Show me your numbers. If you're going to keep making that argument, because Ralph McKee has showed us his numbers. Last night, and please clarify between public comment and public hearings for the citizens on these matters for the comprehensive plan, there was confusion. Last time, people waited to speak, it did not speak at the public hearing because, I'm sorry, at the public comment at the beginning, because they thought there was going to be a public hearing on chapters one, two, and three, they were left on the phone, unable to call in and be recognized. I believe we had a substitute chair, so that might have been part of the confusion. If there's a public hearing for the comprehensive plan items, please make sure that it's clear, that it's a public hearing. If those are simply, need to be said at public comment, please make that clear. A lot of citizens were completely confused and unaware of how to handle that.
Thirty more seconds.
Create some clarity, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Do we have other callers?
Caller with the phone number ending with 556, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hello, this is Ralph McKee from the Fifth Ward. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I, I want to say a couple of things. I guess I'll start with Tom Stalberg was talking about because that was my, in, back in the start of A20, there was something in that plan originally that said, quadplexes on every lot would enhance affordability. I did the math, I talked to builders, I used to represent developers some, I have some idea of the math there. I worked up the numbers and it, roughly it was a $350,000 house would result in four units that would be somewhere between 5 or 550 as condos or would rent for 2,200. And this is part of, I think, what I view as truth telling, which is what I think you should be doing rather than propaganda, which is what it seems to me that is going on here. But the, this entire process is really a propaganda piece where you're, you have three goals to show that the current situation is very bad. Number two, density will make things better in a significant way. And number three, don't be scared because it'll all be okay and we'll fix, we'll deal with the zoning details later. And you're trying to keep anything that's scary out of this document. Let me give you a couple of examples. That was one of them that I started with, that, you know, those, those conversions will actually, I mean, you're trading one, one sort of affordable house for four non-affordable units. Maybe that's good, maybe it's not. You talk about research that, that shows enhanced affordability with increased supply. I've read those studies too. The, you might get that result, it's going to take 15, 20 years out. You need to say that in here. Otherwise, you're misleading all the young families and all the students that, that want affordable housing and want to live here. Their kids might, might be helped by, by all the densification, they will not. You need to say that. That, that's just the fact, the truth. And, and another example of, of what I'll call propaganda, you're, you have your, your chart, your, or your bar graph. Oh, it shows a precipitous drop in, in construction. You've got, you've got a bar graph that you had really two years, 20, there was no, nothing built in first two years of COVID. You've got two years, 750 times, times five is, there's no drop at all. And you, you guys are social scientists and professionals. That, that should be pretty obvious. Last point, Mr. Norton, if you can find me a litigated case that says you could really have our whole zoning code thrown out, thrown out because we're not densifying fast enough? Did I hear that right? Can you, is there somebody from law school that said that to you or your city attorney?
Ms. McKee, thank you. Ms. McKee, uh, thank you.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Appreciate ya. Thank you.
Ross Smith, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hi, Ross Smith from 1607 Charlton. Sorry, I have a cold. Keep this brief because we're here very late. I mostly just want to express my eternal gratitude for you sticking this out, doing all this hard work and putting up with all the spicy comments that have been thrown your way. I promise you are appreciated by lots of people that aren't sticking around to call in at 11:00 PM. So, thank you.
Thank you.
No other hands raised, Shirley?
Okay, with that, we are going to close public comment. I think there is generally commission proposed business, are there any?
I think I removed it from the agenda so you wouldn't be allowed.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you. With that, we are going to the final item on the agenda, which is adjournment. Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Councilmember Dish. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.